Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 28th, 2023 regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can please take your call.
Dave Abdallah?
Here.
Zuhair Abdalhak?
Here.
Hassan Ahmad?
Here.
Moby Dun?
Here.
Here.
Nancy Brier?
Here.
Robert Hasden?
Here.
And Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Your one.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. This one's gonna be...
Hold on, time out. Phone ringing. Your mic's not on.
Okay. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. This one's gonna be led by Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up on our agenda is Agenda Approved.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Agenda of the regular meeting November 28th, 2023 as submitted.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Councilman, go ahead.
I would like to remove from the claims item number nine with the attachment because we need to discuss the contract before we approve a payment.
Okay, item number nine is Bowles Brothers Services?
No, I'm sorry. It's A.M.D.
A.M.D., okay. So it'd be item number eight?
Number eight.
Okay, so repeat your statement again. What was that again?
I move to remove item number eight from the claims because we cannot pay anything before we approve a contract with the city to allow us to pay.
Okay.
You did it during fund transfers and current claims. Wouldn't be with the...
Yeah, there are claims and transfers. Okay, but here's... So let me just ask the clerk about this. Madam Clerk, so I'm just thinking out loud here. If we remove that right now, let's say we approved removing that, we couldn't go back and pay that claim right now, couldn't we? Because we're gonna be talking about the contract. The councilman's suggesting that we speak about the contract later.
We can, we can give that contract in the papers. We can give it the number and we can discuss it later today. It doesn't have to be removed forever.
Okay, my concern is when you have claims, they gotta be paid. So if we're not gonna pay it because we're gonna be looking at a contract, then you can't come back and pay it, at least not during this, and then therefore it'd be another two weeks. That's one thing I'm throwing out there.
Okay, then I, I change my motion to remove it until we get the contract approved.
Council Chair?
Ah, Mayor.
Again, you know, this is another thing that we're trying to disrupt city operation. Okay, you know, we, we've been talking about this for the last two, three months, how much money we're getting from FEMA grants. You know, we have a lot of issues with water sewer. Mr. Deeb was out all day today, all day, you know, working, not even charging half that amount. This is ridiculous. This is a vendetta against Mr. Deeb. And, you know, listen, everybody's in the community. We're hearing what's going on. This is ridiculous. We have an employee, somebody working for the city, and not gonna pay him. Again, this is a, a personal vendetta against, you know, the, an employee. And when you come and try to FOIA records for the employee, just one employee, that's called harassment. And again, you know, you guys do what you have to do, but you know what? As administration, we're gonna do what we need to do, you know, to keep the city moving. You know, we have a motion here, again, to disrupt city operation, try to slow the city to a halt. We have millions of dollars that we're working with right now, and we're just trying to disrupt the city not to do what needs to do. Again, you know, we talked about the aging systems that we have with the sewer, water, all the water main breaks, and Mr. Deeb is the only one working on it right now. And he's gonna announce we have a grant possibly to pay for all the water meters. And you know what? Let's just mess with this guy so he can just leave the city and screw the city. And you know, this is ridiculous. Now, this is, this is called harassment. You know, they asked for a contract. We put something so we can do a quick modification organization for, for the city, you know, for an engineering department. We talked about it for, you know, twice already. We have a proposal. We gotta go in front of you for approval. And now this is like, again, this is, this is like, this is harassment.
Okay.
And when you come and try to FOIA, get some employee's record, that's called harassment.
Council Chair? Okay, Councilman?
I want everybody to know, Mr. Deeb, again, partially, we have to keep bringing up his name as one of the hardest workers in the city, in my personal opinion. But I want, with respect to the mayor's statement, as the councilman here requests information on any city employee, it's not harassment.
Personal. It's personal. You can't do, Councilman?
Again, look, I mean, please, Council?
Let's, let's let him finish first.
Yeah.
You know, regardless of whatever the back and forth is, Mayor, we sat here where there was times with you and the former building director had issues, and you were very adamant on wanting to make your stance. Nobody called it harassment. People defended you. People said it's okay that you had, you were investigating something. Then are they, we have to keep in mind that this body here is the check and balance of this administration. I'm not agreeing with Mr., with the councilman or disagreeing with, with him. I'm just speaking as an overall general. We have to understand about everybody's duties here. Your duty is administration. There's duty of this entire body. And so if a certain council member is requesting information, we can't jump to, you know, shoot the gun and say it's harassment. We gotta slow it down a little bit. First of all, those are serious allegations. Those are strong words. And, and I want you to know, you know, if, if you feel that way, file a report against the council member, but you know, I think sitting here and tarnishing somebody's name is two different things.
Councilmen?
Okay. So, so I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that, Council Chair, but I don't think we should sit in this room and, and without even saying point of order because to say that somebody's doing harassment, it's, it's a little over the edge.
Council Chair?
Okay. The mayor was next, then you...
No, he could say, he could go.
No, go ahead, Mayor. Out of respect to you.
No, our respect for you, go ahead.
Thank you.
That's good. We're showing respect.
Apparently, you can read the charter. I know you can read it. The charter allow me to work to any office in this city and ask for records related to my job. What I ask is about today. It has nothing to do with A.M.D. as person. This is an entity. This is a company. It's not a person. And I'm not harassing anybody who I respect and who I want him to be in this city, working for this city. And I said many times, he's doing a great job, and I will vote on it to accept it. So what you're saying, I have a vendetta, it looks like you are far away from the truth. You had your chance last Tuesday to come to the meeting. You chose not to show up to discuss it in study session. So don't throw stones on me that I am harassing. Do whatever this city gives you legally against me. If you have anything, then we'll see you in court if you have the courage to do, to do that.
Council Chair?
All right, we're, we're getting way off track here, so let's get back on, on this. I heard somebody say Council Chair. I couldn't tell who it was. Roger or Mayor?
No, I, again, when you ask for personnel files from HR, okay, that's, those are personal. I can't even, as a mayor, I don't even, I cannot go and ask for personnel files for individuals. Okay, it's protected. So when you go ask for personnel files, no, the charter doesn't say or anything that you can go look at personnel files, anybody other than HR.
That's not what happened, and I challenged the mayor to show anything. I asked for personal information. I asked for hourly rate. I asked for a contract which you have signed since July, and you kept us running in circles, not bringing it here to approve it. It's on you, not me.
No, Council Chair, it's been in the packet for a week. So you guys, well, we, we had to, we never had a contract. We just put something together as you guys requested from the last meeting, and we did. We have something typed up quickly, and we put it in a packet. It's in a packet.
Right.
It's not a contract. It's just a temporary contract, contract so we can just actually get approved to open a new department.
The next up is Councilman...
If I may ask, Councilman?
Councilman, go ahead.
I'm just trying to think of a compromise. So on the one hand, I agree with Councilman Zuhair Abdalhak. We wanna see the contract and so forth, but...
It's enough.
In fact, if the city employee, you know, for this month or until January doesn't get his paycheck, he might, might have some problems. So I don't know if there's any, you know, issues regarding the invoice itself.
Okay. So let's go, wait. I don't wanna keep, this will be the last comment because I don't wanna keep this thing going. We're gonna vote on it to have one removed. Yes or no? But go on, last comment.
I will ask the treasurer. Would you accept those papers as legal invoice to pay?
With all due respect, point of order, constitution, I'm an attorney. So ask Corporation Counsel?
I'm not an attorney, but it's treasure. I do have something to add. I can either wait to public comment if you leave it on the agenda, or I can answer it now.
It's true now, but I don't want you to give me a legal opinion on it.
No, it's not legal opinion. It's an opinion as a treasurer. And when it comes to signing warrants, according to the Charter, section 8.9, what you have before you in the agenda, it looks like a timesheet, right? It's a court record of the hours worked and where, which departments. My question is, we should be paying from invoices. The invoice should have backup, what work was done, where was it done? And it should be signed by the department head that ordered that work. That is clearly stated in this Charter, section 8.9. I don't see that here. So if I'm paying, again, paying for a timesheet wouldn't make, wouldn't meet the Charter requirement. And again, where are the invoices? Respectfully, and, and the individual that is, this is AMD Engineering Group LLC. That is a company, not an individual necessarily. It is a company, right? So that, I would imagine the company would be able to invoice, say, the building and engineering department. Invoice the water department. There's some hours there underwater department, which is what I would look for, and it would be signed by that department head over that department.
Okay. So at this point, there's no more questions or comments on this?
Hold on, I have, I have just one last thing.
Council Chair, if I may ask beforehand, I, I don't agree with her reading of 8.9 warrants. It does say, "No money shall be drawn from the treasury except upon the warrant of the mayor and countersigned by, countersigned by either the controller or the city clerk." It doesn't say what the treasurer just said. "Every warrant shall specify the fund from which it is payable and shall be paid from no other fund." Doesn't say the director, doesn't say anything that it authorizes the mayor.
Okay. So let me just clarify something here. The motion on the table right now is to accept the Agenda excluding item nine, I'm sorry, item eight, taking that out of the equation, and then voting on the contract separately. Let's go ahead and move forward if this is what we're gonna do, yes or no? So let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
Make sure that's okay with the maker. The maker was, Councilman Badun. Is that okay with you?
Before we do, I just have one last thing. I'm sorry. I know we're focusing on it, but I'd like to hear from our Corporation Counsel. And look, Corp Counsel, you do a good job here, and I want you to know that the question that we ask you is not an administrative response. It is, it is a response here for this council body. And I want you to answer it based on this council body, please. And I, and I know you are, and I, look, let me just finish. You can, you can say what you have to say. But I respectfully ask, answer as if you're answering for the, for this council body.
Can I just say, I always answer for the council body?
Okay.
I'm accountable for the people out here like you are.
Okay.
I have accountability over me, and I respect you and trust you. So what do you want me, what's your question?
My, my question is to you. The administration says that this is legal. A councilman here is saying this is illegal. We have a Corporation Counsel here to tell us what that is. Because we're hearing two different things.
It's not legal or illegal. It's whether it follows the Charter. That's what we start with.
Okay.
Council, Councilman Abdalhak was correct last Tuesday. He says, "We need to look at the provisions of the Charter." I've got the Charter. I've got the policies that we're supposed to follow as well that sometimes contradict each other and contradict the Charter. So we have to look at that. What the mayor is saying is, the council respectively asked, because we didn't have a contract. It wasn't signed in July. It was recently signed. It put in provisions that was asked for, and the contract has been presented to the city council. You asked to see it rather than having a person switch from an employee to a, to a, a person contracting with the city. The request, I understood, and I might be mistaken, but I understood, was we wanna see a contract.
It, it was my request, and I said, before we continue arguing about this thing, and I know you guys had been in continuous negotiations, I said, okay, while you're in continuous negotiations, let's have a one-month contract. So at least this way, there is a contract. That contract becomes void after the 30, 40, 45, 60-day period. And at that point, you could do your formal contract that you wanted along. That was the thought process.
With the input.
And that's what I received, and it's my satisfaction. So we're gonna go ahead and move forward. At this point, what's on the Agenda is what's on the Agenda with exclusion per the motion from Councilman Abdalhak for the removal of the contract only on item eight and continuing, I should make sure I'm clear, continuing the vote on whether it's paid or not. That's separate, correct? You're separating the two. I just wanna make sure it's your motion.
Council Chair, I, I spoke to Roger today, and I feel that a contract should be an item separate on the Agenda, not inside the claims. If we vote to pay this, that means we already approved this timesheet, and we approved this contract back to July, then we pay close to $60,000.
So that's exactly what I'm trying to clarify.
No, I want to remove AMD, the payment, until we have a contract. Then we pay, based on that contract, all the money to AMD.
It's not item eight.
It's not item eight.
It is here. AMD Engineering, item eight, in Claims.
The Claim. Not according to our agenda.
No, it's in Claims.
Claims, Claims, it's in Claims. I, I have the claim as the central wage sanitation.
No.
I do want to pay...
Okay, so let's go ahead and take this, let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
Council Chair?
I wanna pay AMD, but I want a contract, based on a contract.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
Let's, let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
Um, Council Chair, can we clarify then? We have Councilman Badun that made the motion. Councilman Hassan?
I thought it was Councilman...
But they, they did the original. They did the original. They did it as written. Now where do we go from there?
Can you clarify which motion you're making?
Yes, can I just ask one? I know, I'm asking you, not asking everybody else. Can I still keep this on, vote on when it come, when we come up to it? And if it doesn't pass, remove it?
So you're, what you're saying, keep the pay on the Agenda?
Leave everything on here.
On Claims?
We're gonna discuss it.
Remove the contract, and then if the contract is approved, then we'll continue with the payment. If the contract is unapproved, then we have to go to Plan B and see what happens from there.
Well, the contract's unapproved, you don't pay it, right?
I don't pay.
Councilman Badun?
That's up to you guys.
Where is the contract on the Agenda?
We have no contract.
It's in Claims.
No, it's in Claims.
We have to remove it from Claims and put it as an item on the Agenda.
That's what he's...
In order to discuss it.
I will do that. I will remove it up until we get up to a discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just to clarify then, the motion is to approval of the Agenda with the removal from Claims, item number eight. Is that correct?
Council Chair, do we need to suspend the rules to add one more item on the Agenda to discuss the contract?
Yeah, we have to do it, yeah. But let's just first...
Okay.
But if you approve the contract, Madam Clerk, if you approve the contract, we're locked into that contract. There's no wiggle room to change it once you vote on it. That's why it would not be on the Agenda as an item you vote on, negotiating, at discussion. Because once you vote on it, you're locked into the verbiage and the language of the contract.
Which it only goes through the end of the year.
But you wanna approve... Okay, yeah, and I think, I can't remember.
December 31st.
Okay, but you don't want to be that, it locks us in and no changes. And we may wanna change. You may wanna add.
No, but, but with all due respect, any contract can be canceled if both parties agree to it. So we can't, you can cancel a, even if you agreed to a contract and we signed it today. If tomorrow, Mr. Deeb and the city agree to cancel the contract, whatever has been signed, it's void.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm, I'm trying to go forward. I'm not trying to go backwards.
No, no, no. You're saying we'd be locked in till December 31st.
Now, with it, right.
And I'm saying, if, for whatever reason, whether as a council body or as administration, we decided, for whatever reason, let's say on December 7th, that this wasn't gonna work anymore, as long as all parties agree to cancel the contract, it's canceled.
That's true, but what if you wanted to add other terms to it? What if there were some things after we talk about it, and you say, no, we, we need A.D.M.B. We want you to have this in the contract, but you can't add it?
But remember, the contract that we have right now is only up to December 31st. This one's just, it's not the final formal contract. The other one would start effective January.
The date called was, 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 came up with, I guess the date came, the term, came up with a chance to, to not lock the council into what's here, but give you a chance to negotiate and go further. Yes, the time period is, is till the end of December. But the, but the verbiage, the, the terms, the conditions, may, you may wanna add things to it or change it.
We can do it when we discuss it, Council Chair. Yeah, it comes on the Agenda right now.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward.
We vote on the approval.
We had enough of this. Okay.
May I just, one quick...
Quick thirty seconds.
I just wanna read the last line from section 8.9 in the Charter. It says, "Each invoice shall be approved by the official incurring the expenditure." Again, who's the official incurring the expenditure for building and engineering, for example? Who has oversight of that? What about water department? Because you don't see those who I would think would be the official. And where's the invoice for the work? That's all. And I need clarification because I am sworn by oath to follow that, to follow the Charter.
So, so we're not gonna have no more discussion, but the word official can also be the mayor?
And the chief of staff. It could be anybody in there.
Just, I just, one quick question. Just one quick, I haven't said anything.
Okay, I know. That's only I'm letting you.
Oh. With this being, this contract being in the Claims, and if we approve the Claims as is, all the Claims... Yeah, we're, we're doing it right now.
Let him finish, let him finish.
Okay, if, by approving the Agenda, we're approving the, you know, if we approve the Claims, does that mean we're approving the contract also?
And that's where Councilman Abdalhak has a concern.
Yeah.
Okay?
I mean, is that, what's the answer? Do we have an answer to that?
So this is the motion on the table. Who's second that? Councilman Ahmad is seconding that. No more discussions on it. Let's go ahead and take that to a vote. This is, just to make clear, I'm gonna say in plain English.
Okay, good.
We are keeping the claim on there. I'm sorry, we're taking the claim and the contract off for right now. We're gonna vote on the contract only later, correct?
Correct.
Is that what you're meaning? Okay, so just to be clear. So we're approving the Agenda. We're approving the current Claims, except item eight is completely being taken off. And out of item eight, the contract will be placed on a part of the Agenda that, that, um, Madam Clerk would be the right spot.
Well, you, I think, Council, you have to...
Yeah, that's, that would be from the mayor.
If the contract, if the contract is approved and we'd go back...
Your mic, turn on your microphone, please.
Oh, I thought I had it. Um, the contract, you're not voting on the, approving the language of the contract. You're voting on whether we're gonna contract with this company. Now they're not an employee, and you're approving them or not, but you've got the backup, which is the contract, which defines for you the terms.
The current terms.
And, and amount, and value and everything, which you did not have before.
Right. And any contract can be amended at any day as long as all parties agree to it.
But you, you, like we normally do, subject to Corporation Counsel review, and that's what we normally put in.
Okay. At that point, we'll go ahead and add that in the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what would you want? If, well, let's just see if it passes or not first.
Okay. So that we're clear, you want to take both of them out? Or you just really wanna address the contract before you get to Claims?
The motion made by Councilman Badun is both of them, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, both of them.
Removing the contract and adding on the Agenda to approve, like to discuss the contract.
The contract by itself.
Number eight and adding a contract discussion on the Agenda.
No, no, it's... Yes, so you have two parts, two, two items, six, eight. You have the invoice and you have the contract, right?
We're removing the invoice because you're not paying anything because the contract hasn't been approved. And we're taking the contract and we're putting it on to, to a line item to be discussed.
This Agenda, so you want to move, you want to move the contract
by itself at this point?
From six, eight, to reports from the mayor?
And if it passes, then we'll follow the right protocols to make sure the pay is approved also.
So like 8B, you mean? Make it 8B?
Yes. Because then you can address it before Claims.
Okay.
But, but the approval is for what? Is for the language of the contract or a contract?
No, it's the...
Subject to Corporation Counsel approval.
It's the contract currently presented.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we pay the claim? We can discuss the claim in a future.
Okay, guys, I'm, 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 no, no, no. I'm not gonna take no more comments. So all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the Agenda is public hearings and, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes. Council Chair? Councilman? Uh, number four. I'm sorry. Here we are. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2023 as submitted.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair? Do we have to vote on putting that item in 8B?
Yeah. That's what she said.
You moved it to 8B.
We don't have to vote, no, we don't have to vote on it. She, the clerk just puts it in the proper spots, which is reports from Mayor.
You removed it from six, eight.
Yeah, correct.
And placed it in under eight.
Correct. No, the councilman's asking, do we have to vote where we're putting it? No, it just comes from Mayor.
That was part of it.
Reports from Mayor. Okay, next item on our Agenda is public hearings and comment on Agenda items only. Is there any comments on anything on the Agenda? You will have two minutes. Please state your name, city, and street.
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. About, uh...
Hold on, one second. We got two minutes here? Yes. All right, Haas, ready? Three, two, one, go.
About 9B. I'm fully supportive that any department in a city that has a limit, it should, the limit should be across the board. Like we've said this before, and I asked for it to come back, it should be across the board, the same amount. Just the last meeting, the Recreation Director came here asking for an increase. You guys denied it. So if you're gonna be fair across the city, the limits have to be the same amount across. Police Department is not exempt from that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on anything on the Agenda?
I have something.
Come on up. City's street name, please.
Um, my name is Cheryl Frank. I'm an employee with the city. Um, I am here in the capacity of the Union President of our TPOM, and I am in full support of an Agenda item, which is...
Eight, eight?
Passing our contract. Uh, so we would appreciate your full support, and all our city workers would, would expect that and appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys coming out here, and I see the smile on your face. So we haven't, you know, really got into depth with it, but I'm happy that you guys are happy, and I'm glad that we're able to reconcile this and find common grounds.
Absolutely. Yep. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
All right.
We, we do have someone on Zoom.
Anybody else on Agenda items?
Yeah, Dana.
Let's go on Zoom.
Yep.
Mr. Parrish, go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmen and women. Mayor Dana Parrish, Greenlee Park, Dearborn Heights. I wanted to address item 9B. Actually, actually, I'm gonna come out and say that I am opposed to that, and not because I'm a retired officer, uh, but the reason I'm opposed to it is because you sort of set a precedent by approving the $30,000, I believe it was $30,000 amount previously. So now it's, it's, the motion is, is gonna be brought up to bring it down to 1,500. I don't know what plans or preparations the department has made based on those, on those, uh, increase. Um, I do know that as a, as a retired officer and been involved in several critical incidents over my career, that sometimes when those things happen and you're involved in things, some pretty messy incidents, you don't have time to really prepare for those things. And you gotta see people, and you gotta go to classes, and there are things that come up that are totally unexpected. I don't know what all is involved in the chief's plans for use of this money. I can't really speak to those. But kind of keep in mind that police and firefighters and all your first responders need help. And when they need help, they don't need to wait two weeks or a month to get funds to be approved. Um, I also know that the Department of Justice is working with your police department. I don't know if Councilman Ahmad has spoken to anyone from the Department of Justice or not. I'm not picking on him. But before this, you know, before he brings up this, I wonder if he's spoken to anyone from the Department of Justice to see what their feelings are and how they feel. Our police department has come along, besides, obviously, the fact that, that we're getting more officers. Thank goodness. So I'd like you all to consider some of that, please. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I see Rachel. Okay. Rachel, can you go ahead? Please state city, street, and name, and you have two minutes. Rachel, can you unmute?
Oh, she was unmuted.
I know she had unmuted first, and then she muted back on. Okay, are you on?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Ah, there we go. Okay, fixed it. Rachel LePointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I only had a question, um, kind of a big one about the union contract. What's in it? Because it wasn't included in the backdrop, the backup.
Okay, so as before, Rachel, do all your questions, and then I'll see who's gonna answer what.
That's it.
That's the only question.
It's kind of why wasn't it included in the backup, and hopefully you guys can give us the broad strokes of what is, the raises and all that kind of stuff. And I am glad to hear that the union president supports it.
Thank you. Anybody from administration that would like to answer that?
Council Chair was added this afternoon.
Yeah, I know. But she's asking, why wasn't it on before? And just to, to be clear, the clerks can only add... And just to, to be clear, the clerks can only add what they're given, obviously. Yeah. So, yeah, it's not, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the public activist had his hand up.
But we have our HR director give an answer.
Good afternoon, I'm Margaret Hazel, I'm the HR director for the city of Dearborn Heights, and I'm speaking as an employee. So, we were negotiating the contract, you know, we started negotiating in the spring, and one of the key components that we were trying to work out there at the end had to do with the change in the schedule for the DPW department and how those crews were going to be configured. And so, that was the last piece that we were working on. And then in terms of going forward, the union was scheduled to vote on it for Monday evening, and so we were waiting for that to occur before we put it forward to the council. So, the tentative agreement that was submitted with another council motion about a month ago when we were trying to achieve this, the parameters financially have not changed at all. The piece that we had to work on had to do with the crew configuration in DPW.
Okay, thank you. As I understand from the mayor, it passed with eleven, eleven additional people that had said yes, basically, it passed by eleven.
We're happy that it passed, we go with that.
Absolutely. Okay. I'm sorry? That's not correct. Any, any other questions? Okay, we have, it looks like Hassan On, all right, go ahead, unmute, you have two minutes, city's street name, please.
Good afternoon, Hassan, are you on?
Hold on.
Go on, my field, bud.
Hold on. One second, sir.
Don't call me sir, please.
All right, what would you like to be called?
Never mind.
Call me Suzie today.
Suzie?
My name is Suzie.
All right. Identify as whatever you'd like, sir. Suzie.
Okay, I just wanted to tell you about the police department, the thirty thousand, I think we should keep it, because we're having a problem with the administration submitting the contracts and this and that and the other. I'm thinking that at this time, I would like to suspend the rules and take that off the agenda for today, because the police department, if there's something wrong, you can always know what they're spending, and you can always get a copy of an itemized thing that they spent on. You know, when it comes to police and fire, I don't think you should sit there and worry about thirty thousand dollars, but when it comes to some contract, cement, or, or any contract of any kind that's supposed to be approved by city council. But thirty thousand dollars for the police, I think that's fair. So, does anybody want to suspend the rules or amend the, and take it off? Anybody?
Thank you, Suzie.
Wait till we get there.
Okay, so just to clarify, for the council members, just in case, or even the audience that's not familiar. Yeah, stop for a second. So, what the gentleman, or what Suzie's suggesting here...
It was Tuesday.
Okay, Suzie's suggesting here is, we suspend the rules, because currently on the agenda that was approved was with that item on there. And what he said, based on what Suzie's suggesting, one of the council members would have to make a motion to suspend the rules, we'd have to vote on suspending the rules, and then we'd have to take it off the agenda. So, I just want to clarify for the audience what Suzie's suggesting.
Council chair.
Okay, so...
Point of order.
Yes.
I just, to answer the question, I think when the time comes to discuss it, that would be the best time, you know, to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. It doesn't seem like anybody's going to suspend the rules and take Roca on your behalf today.
Well, I'm talking to the chair, are you the chair?
Oh, I was just...
You're supposed to address me.
Okay, council chair.
Yeah, at this point, nobody's made a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, council chair, no problem.
Thank you.
But think about when you vote on it, please.
Okay, is there anybody else that's on Zoom or in the audience? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and move forward. Next item on the agenda is item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims and ACH wire transfer six dash one through six dash forty-nine as submitted.
Just to clarify, I just want to make sure...
We're eliminating...
Excluding item eight. I know, but, but when he says six one through forty-nine, that technically includes it, so. Okay, eliminating number eight. Okay? Motion made by Councilman Badun, seconded by...
A second.
Councilwoman Brier, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight A, Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association Agreement.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement between the city and the Dearborn Heights Public Employment Association, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city when a final version is provided as outlined in eight A.
A second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and seconded by Councilman Abdalhaq, is there any discussion on that? Council chair. Councilman? I'd like to thank this administration and the union on, on being able to find a tentative agreement. Good job to our HR director as well. Thank you for this, and thank you to our president, who is here in attendance with us as well.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I just have a question, if I'm not mistaken, there is an item on page two that said confidential secretary for HR and should be hired out of CBA. Can anybody explain what is confidential secretary in the HR, and what is CBA?
Okay, just to clarify for those in the audience, because I don't want the rumor to start flying around, the word confidential secretary is a specific in, in legal terms, so it's not like confidential as, as in like, we didn't want to tell anybody anything, not like that.
Yes. CBA stands for collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Okay.
But what...
Can you, can you, for the audience, what a confident, because I, I don't want somebody to think confidential meaning like, we're not trying to tell nobody that we have this person hired. So, can you clarify, please?
Yeah, I think that would be a different adjective. So, in terms of the human resources department, we deal with many sensitive personnel matters that have to do with leave requests, that have to do with preparations for some of our negotiations, some of our bargaining, and also all of our personnel files. So, we're looking for additional clerical help that isn't part of the union, so that we maintain that level of confidentiality in terms of those sensitive items that we work with in the human resource department.
I got a question.
Thank you, bud.
Uh, thank you, director, for coming up here. My question is, is this going to be a position, so an additional position hired for the HR department?
Uh, yes, and this position was part of the budgeting process, and so was approved. But at the time, there was some grievance filed on behalf of TPOEM, who's always looking to protect as many clerical positions as they can, as any union does, and so we worked it out at the bargaining table. But this position was budgeted for as we pass the budget for this fiscal year.
I don't, I don't, was it?
Council chair. Yes, councilman?
Um, as far as that being budgeted, I think there was a placeholder, and we removed our placeholders, I believe, that, all the placeholders that were agreed upon.
Yeah, I didn't think it was approved. I thought it was not. I thought all placeholders were removed and excluding all the five percent increases.
Also, this new position is a non-union position, all right?
That's correct.
So, this was in the collective bargaining agreement, and so you used that to give them something that they wanted, correct?
Well, the position was not in the collective bargaining agreement, and there was some question about whether it should be. So, then I bargained for it to not be in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, well, this is, that, that's why I have a problem with this. We're creating a new position, a clerical position, not being a union position, and this is a contract, and I, I didn't have a chance to speak, we just got this this afternoon. Ms. Frank, was it unanimous vote, yes?
It was. Speak for me.
Yeah. Ms. Frank, I mean, just, yeah, answer this question, if you don't mind, please. Can you come up there for me? But, and HR director, please, if you could stay around there, just because in case. But just, I just want to clarify something. I don't want to go into, we got to be careful here. We can't go into bargaining and negotiating right now on this contract. It's already, no, no, his questions will be answered. But I, we got to be careful, I just want you guys to watch, you know, walk on eggs a little bit. We don't want to start bargaining right now between the union and administration right here inside of a council meeting. But I'll allow the union president to go ahead and answer.
So, before she answers that question, I would also like to say that it was my understanding that three new positions were added to the staffing from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, the HR confidential secretary, the GIS coordinator, and a paralegal for corporate council. So, I thought we had those three positions approved. There were other positions that were spoken of that did not, but I've been functioning with the understanding that there were three additional positions added to staffing from one fiscal year to another.
Okay. Do you want to just answer, go ahead?
Councilman Wenzel and council, our contract passed by majority vote.
Okay. Can you tell us percentage?
I think it's unnecessary. We're democracy, and, you know, our membership by majority vote agreed with this contract, so. I think that's what's important, and I...
I would agree not to go further. I would agree not to go further into the collective bargaining agreement.
Correct.
Council chair correctly pointed out.
No, no, one second, one second. But he's stating something in case it's against the collective bargaining.
I know, but you should go to the chair, though.
I know. If you don't mind, just please go to the chair. Okay, just one second, one second, one second. But you're taking the precaution, so go ahead and give us the precaution.
I would agree that we don't want to violate the collective bargaining agreement, or interfere, or disclose confidential information that happened at that time. I think her answer is responsive. I agree with council chair's admonition or warning as the beginning of this discussion.
Okay.
So, I, I would agree as well. So, I'm here to, to advocate for my unit, that we did pass it, and there are rules that I, I don't want this body or my union, any touch on unfair labor practice. We negotiated, we came up with a fair deal, and we voted it in.
Okay. Council chair. Council Wenzel, go ahead.
Um, I, I just have a problem in approving this tentative agreement, and then it being tweaked after we agree, and then it doesn't come back to us. I mean, it could be tweaked, you know, we, we, we've passed contracts before where union, the unions gave up lawsuits to get a contract. I mean, I, I, I just, I'm not comfortable voting yes on a contract that's going to be changed once it leaves our hands here.
Okay. HR director, I assume you want to answer?
I would love to address that.
Who brought this, who brought this contract to, to an agenda?
The mayor's office.
The mayor's office did today?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, in the time that we've been bargaining on this contract, we've had language in there that, both of us included in our proposals when we went back and forth, that talks about contract maintenance. So, the last couple rounds of negotiations, there were some clerical issues with respect to the contract. We would also, so we include it, if you look at our TA, we have contract maintenance. And what we're talking about is that we want to number the contract using Arabic numbers versus Roman numerals, we struggled with Roman numerals. We also have places in the contract that just says, hold for future use. That's all it says. So, we want to delete that. When we delete that, then we're going to renumber, re-letter the articles as that occurs. We also, as you may recall from last year, we had a letter of understanding, because there was a mistake in the contract with respect to overtime hours counting toward final average compensation. We've had a letter of understanding that says that, so that going forward, anybody who retired from this group, that we could honor that. We're now going to incorporate that back into the body of the contract. And then the last thing is that there's an appendix in this contract, in which we update what your position titles are for the employees in the different employee groups, and we also haven't been able to address that to the last couple contract negotiations, so that's very outdated. So, those are the things that we're going to be doing. What you see as strike through and bold and underline, strike through language is removed from the body of the contract, and then the bold and underline language is replaced in the contract, then we take the bold and the underline off. We also always do a version of the contract that then the union goes through with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we caught everything and that something else, you know, conflued and didn't end up there, and then we go back and forth, so that we're both in agreement based on our TA, we're only changing and touching the parts of the contract that we've spoken about. So, that's what our plan is.
Councilman, let me make sure Councilman Wenzel's also up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this should be on the next, the next meeting's agenda, it was time to look at it. I mean, we just, we just got it, you know, we're going to prove something, I, I don't think anyone's read the whole contract.
Honestly, I didn't read it.
Yeah. Right, I, I get that we received it today, but, but again, just to be fair, too, this is a contract that's been going back and forth for quite a while, including multiple closed sessions that we've had on this, so I just want to make sure we're clear on that. The other thing I want to point out is, I hate to use words for the first time, but walking through city hall today and then talking to different members, at least from the union's perspective, they've been pretty happy with this, as far as clericals concerned. So, just wanted to point that out. Councilman, you were next.
Yes. This position secretary, is it civil service destined, or it is...
Yes. No, this is civil service.
It's civil service.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Badun, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, you know, I'm going to just leave a quick statement here. I just want to reiterate, I, I believe to my recollection, and I'm, I'm actually going to go back and look at it, no new positions were approved for, and I know you were probably with the understanding, and, and when we approved that agenda item, and we budgeted for it, but we didn't.
I'm referencing the confidential secretary.
Yeah, no, no position and no increase was giving out until we worked out things for the different parts of the union. But I see that, you know, this was approved, you know, amongst this body, amongst the union. I don't like the fact that this was kind of rolled in there, given to us a few hours before the meeting, and then asking us to make a vote on that. I think this was unprofessionally given to us. Ultimately, it was, actually, it's completely unprofessional, but this union went ahead and you guys voted on this, and if you guys are in support of this, I'm going to support the majority on this as well. And if you guys are in support of this, I'm going to support the majority on this as well. But I want you to know to this administration, this was not right, the way you guys rolled that in there. So you guys are going to have to come back for a budget amendment and so that we can afford to pay for that position because there was never budgeted for. And I will take that with me to the bank. It was never approved.
Hold on, Counselor Chair.
But I want you guys to know, congratulations, and I hope that this does pass because I know the holidays are right around the corner. I'm sure there's going to be some signing bonuses and, I mean, I wish it could have been unanimously, but congratulations to you guys on that.
May I respond?
Wait, hold on a quick, just a quick second because I know the HR director wants to say something first.
And the mayor.
Go ahead, HR Director.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I lost my train of thought. I apologize for that. Councilman Baydun, I believe our last bargaining session was past the deadline to get something on the agenda for council and we were still trying to work out so that, that's why you received it late. And because according to Public Employee Relations Act law currently, this employee group is not eligible for retro. So we were trying to do it as quickly as possible, knowing that we had worked out the financial components a while ago, but we had to work out the operational components of implementing the Tuesday through Friday schedule in the DPW group. So the financial parameters didn't change, it was this other piece that we were trying to work out. And again, we missed the deadline because we were still bargaining to work that out. And so that's why you got it late in the way that you did. We apologize for that.
Okay. Okay, we're going to have the union president, then we're going to have the mayor, then counsel Abdul Haq.
I just wanted to address the timeliness factor of it, and I actually appreciated the city and the administration for their willingness to put this through. Our members are in need of this and including the financial aspects of this. So their willingness to put this before you, we were very grateful of, especially right around the holidays. Like, the impact of this not passing is not great for our unit. So we appreciated it. So I hate that there's flack being caught for that. So we literally, I passed it, I was away from my kids last night to pass it, and I'm away from my kids tonight to compel you to pass it. So, thanks.
Thank you. So the mayor and then counsel Abdul Haq.
Actually, I was going to reiterate, I'm not going to reiterate, but I was going to say what our HR director and also the union president said. That's the reason why we have to put on an agenda. And they voted on it last night and first thing today, we're able to put it, send it to you guys. And also, Councilman Baydun, I'll send you, will send you, it was approved and I'll have the chief of staff send you the presentation for the position.
I'd actually, I'm actually going to ask the clerk to actually send me the video recording from that day. Thank you. That's what I'd like to see. And if it wasn't approved, I'd like that our comptroller to bring a budget amendment so that we can create that position so that we're following the charter on the proper steps. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Abdul Haq.
Question to HR.
I'll put it there.
We like to see smiley faces. What are the specifications for this position?
For the confidential secretary?
Yes, you bring in something we need to know. What the qualification?
Sure, sure. So we're looking for someone that has really strong clerical skills, software data management skills, someone who has some experience or exposure to HR such as familiarity with either labor relations or with contracts, with FMLA, things of that nature. And so what we had targeted, the salary range, I believe, was in the low to mid 50s aligned with the other executive secretarial positions that we have. We were looking for 40 hours a week in terms of the assistance of the HR department. And then all the benefits, time off, things like that would fall under the fringe benefits for the positions that are non-union in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Chair, I just, you know, this is like, you know, in Washington, they have a bill, they want to do a parks bill. And then one side, Democrats want to say, or Republicans want, whatever, and the other side says, we'll pass it if you put in repairing the building that we work in, nothing to do with parks. And this smells of that. I mean, this is a union contract, and in this union contract, they're agreeing to add a non-union job. You know, I mean, it's just, it's like, you know, oxymoron, you know, it's a union contract and the only reason they're doing it, okay, we'll give you, I don't know the details and no one does because if someone votes on this yes today, then you're not doing your job because you voted yes on something you didn't even read. And it's like, you know, we're going to give you, we're going to give you A, but you got to give us this and not relate to union people at all.
The only thing I'd ask you with, counsel with due respect, in any negotiations, I'm familiar with negotiations a little bit in my day job, that's how it is. You give, you take, you add here, subtract here, you promise to give this, but then they promise to do this. So it's normal part of any negotiations. So yes, I was not a part of the negotiations, none of us were, as we're not supposed to be, obviously. But it's not that abnormal to, in that negotiation, and I'm using hypotheticals here, to say, okay, we'll allow one person to be hired that's non-unionized, but in return or in exchange, we want X, Y, or Z. And I'm using hypotheticals here. So it wouldn't be illegal. It's all a part of negotiations.
He didn't say it was illegal.
No, no, I'm just throwing myself the word illegal maybe, but I'm just saying it's a normal part of negotiations. So it wouldn't be.
It's common.
Very common, very common.
And I would add, Counselor Chair, to respond to Mr. Wenzel's apropos question, if we're looking at confidential, it'd be kind of a conflict if we put a union in that position that's going to benefit from the negotiations as well. So then you would have a conflict in that position. That's why I think confidential means I don't want someone that has to go back to union or is accountable to union, but still subject to the civil service requirements and evaluation as counselman Abdul Haq said.
Okay. Counselor Chair, I don't know if you have talked to union people about this contract. I have almost all, clerical, everybody. And the major stumbling block was the DPW issue. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. You know, they wanted to, in a nutshell, take some union, DPW employees and have them work Fridays and giving them Monday off, sort of something like that, so they'd be there for five days, someone from DPW. And all I got from the DPW people were that.
You're going into the contract.
I sincerely apologize. You can talk, I just want to say, please be careful if you're having communications with union members in terms of the collective bargaining, if you're having communications with them, you can trigger some problems, counselman.
It's my job, sorry.
No, I think we can't interfere with that and we may trigger legal repercussions.
I never interfered.
I'm just saying.
I just listened to what they have to say, I'm doing my job, you know. We represent them, we hold the purse strings for their pay.
So he's not saying that he was negotiating with them, he's just listening to what their concerns are.
And I'd like to, I'd like to hear.
Communications back and forth with them, that is negotiations, that is communication. That's the danger. I'm just saying.
But that's part of his job to make sure you protect us in case we're saying.
Counselor Chair, I just want, I want to make sure that this issue is solved with satisfaction of these DPW workers that had this concern. I mean, if we're going to implement this contract and still, people I talked to said, there ain't no way we could do this. We don't have the manpower unless they hired 10 more DPW workers in the last, you know, in the last month or something, because they didn't have the manpower to do this. And I talked to everyone all the way up at DPW.
Okay. But the only thing I would say, and I had heard that the DPW segment of this particular union was not absolutely crazy about this, but at the end, democracy spoke and it did pass. And that's what we were hearing from the president.
I just want to say something.
So it is a majority.
I just want to say something to the councilman, and look, I'll agree with you, Tom, this is something that you're disappointed, but ultimately, like the councilman stated here, this was a democracy and the union has majority asked for this body to support this. And I'm going to be completely honest, I don't like the smell of this. As much as you don't trust me, I'm actually so bothered by this because I feel like truly it wasn't being transparent with us. That's the word that I'm really looking for. It wasn't being transparent with us. However, it was a win. It was a win for this, for both, for both the administration and this union, and we just have to agree to know that we can't leave them without a contract, especially during the holidays. And that's really truly where I stand.
I respect your opinion, counselman, but how do you know it was a win?
Because the majority voted on it.
Maybe their whole, you know, maybe their whole family hostage. I mean, how do you, did you read the contract? I mean, no one read the contract.
Okay, but again, on the contract, we've been going back and forth, including some closed sessions and council sessions on that. Counselor Abdul Haq, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to take the council members and the residents. Years back, the city council voted a couple times on contracts before they seen the contracts or kept the copy of the contract. Unfortunately, later on, we found out that some parts of the contracts were changed after the city council voted on it. And I understand the frustration of my friend Tom. I would like to ask counselman Baydun if you would modify your motion to approve it with contingent on receiving the full contract.
Well, I just want to clarify, you're talking about receiving and approving?
Yeah, the final contract.
Because there's receiving, we receive, note, file, and then there is, we vote on it.
Receiving and voting on it.
Okay.
So hold on, we're going to vote, we can vote on it today.
Yes.
Under the, under granting that they send us the updated version that's been all ratified by both sides to the party.
Yes.
So that we can make sure, well, I mean, if it's already been approved.
Then we're not filing approving.
If we have to vote.
Contingent on receiving and approving the final contract.
But I want to clarify, that means we're not approving it today. I just want to clarify.
Honestly, I'm not going to move forward with changing that. At the end of the day, it's the holidays, the majority voted, guys. You know, there was just an election in our community. Let me tell you something, I have taken a defeat and a loss on votes. I have lost an election and I had to accept and understand that it was ratified and, you know, there was a different honorable body here and I had to respect and believe in that. Now, if this administration does anything like that, let me tell you something, my eyes are going to be out now and I'm going to be asking for that contract right after. And I hope to God I don't see anything messed around with it after. I'm going to tell you right now.
Okay. So let's go ahead and take this, the motion made by counselman Baydun, the original motion, not the adjusted one right now, and seconded by counselman Abdul Haq. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
Do you hear Abdal Haq?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Mo Baydun?
Yes.
And Robert Kasten?
Yes.
Motion carried, seconded.
Okay, motion carried. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is item nine, I'm sorry, there's item 8B that was added. This is the one that we had a discussion on earlier and this would be AMD Engineering. So I want to clarify to council members so that we're all on the same page. At this particular point, whoever makes the motion, we are making the motion based on approving the professional services agreement between AMD Engineering Group LLC and the city of Durban Heights. After that, if and provided it gets approved, then we would be voting on, obviously, the payment or agreeing to have them.
Counselor Chair, I would say again, that is not in the charter that you approve the service contract. This is not a contract for public improvements, materials, or supplies. Now, you can approve the company, but for the contract, the approval is still with the administration.
I should say.
So I'm just, but I think what the council said to be transparent, and I think that was emphasized, we want to see a contract. We want to see the terms, the payment, when it started, what the conditions are, and that has been provided. Now, I would disagree with trying to say, I haven't looked at 8.9, I looked with 9.1, 9.3, 4, 9.5, and spoke with DAG, the ability to approve a service contract still rests with an amendment being approved to change or add that to it.
Okay. So I was going to make the motion. Well, no discussion yet. Now, first thing is motion.
Does she have the order?
No, not yet because this was added on. So what you would do is you would do like the old school way, right, Madam Clerk? The old school way, which is us council members had to come up with it. So I can help you with that if you'd like.
Is this the one which is attached to the claims?
Correct. So you'd be approving the company.
Temporary contract.
Yeah, temporary, not, no, just a contract between, for the services between the city of Durban Heights and the name of the company and contract signed on 11/22/2023.
Can we move it after 9A?
No.
After 9A?
Yes.
I don't believe so because this is, this is from the mayor's office and if you move it, you move it to city officials, I guess technically you could, but that's not the style it would be.
Because we're going to approve something before we decide what we've been talking about all this time and we have spent two months on it.
Okay.
Counselor Chair.
But just to be fair, we asked the mayor, and I personally asked the mayor myself personally, and said, and I talked to corporation council, have something put together, it can't be on a gentleman's agreement. Have something put together, even if it's just a memorandum of understanding and have it signed so that this way we have something to go on, and we do.
I have no problem. I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
Well, it's not approve, approve the company.
The company.
Okay, so motion made by counselman Abdul Haq to approve the company.
AMD.
A, let me just make sure the right name.
AMD Engineering.
AMD Engineering Group LLC.
I second.
And seconded by counselman Ahmad. Any discussion on this?
Counselor Chair?
Counselor?
What's that mean, approving the company? What the heck is that, I mean?
So typically, when there's services, the administration goes and gets a company X, Y, or Z for a particular service. The service is provided, they bring it as claims, we approve it or deny it at that particular point, correct? What's a claim?
Yeah, I mean, do we normally approve companies?
No, but in this particular case, counselman Abdul Haq, if you remember, we went back and forth on this in the beginning of the meeting, wanted this separated from claims because he felt a contract should not be a part of claims. And that's actually where he's coming from. But again, on the other hand, we asked for some sort of a agreement so that we could approve the claim that's been brought to the council body by AMD Engineering Group or for AMD Engineering Group. Off the top of my head, I think three or four meetings if I'm not mistaken. So I think it's at the point now, in my personal opinion, let's pay this particular LLC and then move on to either agree or disagree with using the services in the future.
Counselor Chair, and it's only for a few months.
Yeah, it's only through the end of December.
That's what's scheduled.
But covering from, originally from June, end of June or July, July 1st.
And again, that was requested by the council and we did exactly what the council requested.
Correct, I know, I know what it requires.
Exactly. And also, like I said, you know, we got to redo, reorganize that department to separate engineering because we've been paying a lot, even though we never had a contract with a company, I don't want to mention names. There was a company that was working with the city for years and there was no contract. So we put that, we put that together as requested by the council for a few months so we could reorganize what's going on here and try to bring engineering in-house to save the city money and the residents.
Sure.
And also, the other thing, I'm sorry, and the other thing is, there's federal grants that we need a city engineer to sign off on it. That's why we're doing a reorg because not a contract, there has to be a city engineer that actually signs off on the grants.
Okay, counsel Abdul Haq and counselman Wenzel.
Go ahead, counselman Wenzel.
Okay, thank you. Now, when we brought in our own engineer and put him on the payroll, Mr. Mayor, you said this was going to save the city money because we didn't have to have a contractor that we're paying. How's this differ now than what we hired him in the first place for? Now, how we, before it was, we're not going to hire an engineering company, we're going to hire our own person in-house to save money, but now we're going back and hiring a company.
Counselor Chair?
Mayor?
You know, again, I don't want to get into the specifics, you know, about some, a company that we dealt with and some of the issues that we found. Under my administration, there's a lot of issues and we talked about them in several meetings. You know, we, again, you know, we have several projects that were worked on by a specific company that we're finding out there was issues. You know, even businesses and residents that came up and they said that they've had concerns or issues in the past. So we corrected that, we brought an engineer, and we just changed the way that the individual gets paid, that's all. So we, I mean, you guys, as a council, you guys approved the person to come in and become engineer for the city. So all we did is we changed it and then you guys requested to put a contract. So with that, you know, again, you know, I keep going back to the fire department, you know, the fire station. You know, nobody was monitoring the fire station and it's going to cost, it costs, I don't know how much it cost the city back, I don't refresh my memory, Mr. Deeb, and it was millions of dollars that the city paid for a fire station, the one on Beach Daily. But that station has to be torn down and has to rebuild because there was no engineer looking at the project. Even with the company that we were paying was not looking at the project. We have projects that we allow, you know, we had somebody overlooking at something, but they were not looking at the best interest of the city. We have the best interest of the city right now. We have an engineer that is finding out a lot of things. You know, I mean, just to give you an example, we've been overpaying for water sewers for years and Mr. Deeb just found out, you know, that we paid just in three years that we're able to bring back was $350,000 that we overpaid. That's just only, only, less than three years. So this is the kind of stuff, like we're arguing about just a few months, but he's finding out a lot of things that was not done. And just something, $350,000 we're able to get, we can't go backtrack, you can only backtrack about three years of money. So that's, I mean, I don't know.
But just to be fair, Mr. Mayor, not one council member that I've seen or recall has questioned Mr. Deeb or his services. Everybody's done nothing but praise him. So this is not a question of whether he's good or bad.
I'm sorry, if I may, we're hearing from community members, they're trash-talking Mr. Deeb because they're watching this. And I want to go on record that he is God-sent to the city, you know, because a lot of people are watching this and they've been trashing him. I've been, I've been hearing it, okay?
Okay, I haven't heard it.
No, I have, I have. People are coming to me and I'm sure other people, you know, have heard it, but a lot of people come to me and they're saying, you know, is it true, blah, 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 you know, about Mr. Deeb? This is ridiculous. You know, he's going to talk about a grant that we're able to get millions of dollars You know, he's gonna talk about a grant that we're able to get millions of dollars for the water meters, and he's gonna talk about it in, in few minutes. But I can tell you, you know, this is something we're working on, trying to help the residents not to pay extra money. Or, you know, before, you know, we, we took the twenty-seven million dollars for the water meters, and Councilman Bedun says, okay, let's get the money, replace the water meters, but we had no money. Okay, take it out of the, the general fund, but then you have to have the, the residents pay for it. So he's able, him, the Chief of Staff, and also the Funding Scout were able to get the money, and he's gonna be talking about that. So again, it, it is, it is personal, and I've been hearing a lot, and this is embarrassing, that we keep hearing bad things about our city engineer.
Councilman, what else, Councilman Wenzel?
No, I mean, I, I asked a simple question, how it, how it differs, and I guess it's just everything but my answer. I mean, why is, is A, AMD, are they working exclusively for the city of Dearborn Heights only? It's only, our only customer?
Council Chair? Yes. And again, that was created just to change the pay status from one to the other, that's it.
Now, this invoice is for which month?
Uh, I don't have the invoice in front of me. Whatever the invoice is in front of you, Councilman.
It's October.
October, yeah, it's all of, uh, October.
And, and he's paid up for all the months prior to that, since what, May, was it, or?
Well, somebody was, was withholding checks, his checks, and I think, I believe that he was just, he just received that from the last meeting.
You're, you're paid up completely?
Well, somebody was holding his checks.
All right, and then his contract is only good through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three?
Yep, December twenty-third, thirty-first.
Now, that, some of the things in the contract, I mean, are they negotiable? I mean, I mean, it's, in, in the new contract, I know there's some things in there, I had some people, residents calling me, concerned residents about some of the fringe benefits in the contract. Is that all gonna be up for negotiation in the next contract?
It doesn't get any fringe benef- benefits, Councilman. This is a contract, contractor. Contractors don't get fringe benefits, medical, dental, anything like that.
What about vehicles?
Nothing.
No, there was something in there mentioned, there's something in there about a vehicle.
Well, I mean, drugs, when he's on city business, yes.
Yeah.
Not, not a personal vehicle, not a vehicle. For takes home. When he's on company business, yes.
Okay, any other questions, Councilman?
Council Chair.
I know, you're next, I just want to make sure, Councilman Wenzel's also.
I'm good, thank you.
Also, okay, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Uh, the mayor keeps going back and saying it's personal, it's personal. As I promised, I made the motion to approve this contract. And the only one who was really delaying this for two months is the mayor in his action by hiding a contract which he had since July.
Point of order, Council Chair.
Since July, you did not want to bring it to us.
Okay. Council Chair, there was no contract, and I don't know what part he doesn't understand. Council Chair. There's no contract.
Let the mayor finish, let the mayor finish.
There's no contract, Council Chair, I don't know what part he doesn't understand. Maybe he should show you the police, police report that he filed. He thought that in his heart, maybe that, he thought that in his heart on this one too. But anybody wants a false police report, he did, I have it here.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the police.
No, it does, it comes, it does, Council Chair, it's just their reputation.
Okay. We all sat with you, Council?
I'm not going to comment, because it's going to get ugly, so let's move on.
Okay. Councilman? Okay, guys, better wrap this up. All right, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just, I just want you to know, guys, let me tell you something. Let me tell you how, how majority of everybody here feels. Ready? Phones off, I'm just gonna tell you how everybody here feels. We just approved a TPU AM contract, congratulations to all of them, but in there, there was thrown a little dagger in there. Right, inside that little dagger was something that the council had already denied. One hundred percent it was denied by this body. And, you know, but it was a win. It was a win on both sides. Go on, move on. This contract going out with Mr. Deeb, look, Mr. Deeb, I want you to know, uh, you are top-notch, but clearly, this body here from the council members feel like this is something that's not black and white. There's always a little bit of gray. And regardless if you want to see it as, uh, you know, harassing, or if, if the councilman wants to feel like it's been going on since July, this body just wants things in black and white and nothing in gray, nothing in between, just give us everything. And if you gave us everything black and white, we wouldn't have the issue of bickering back and forth. Our meetings wouldn't be going on, something this small shouldn't be going on past seven o'clock. This meeting should be an hour long. There's, there's eight things on the agenda either. But let me, guys, I don't even need a round of applause, I just, I'm just saying, moving forward, you know, there's, there's gonna be a new body coming in here in January, we're gonna be losing the honorable council member, our council president for life, who would be my council member for life, council president. Uh, but really, let things just be black and white. I mean, if this whole big fiasco is all because of, you know, from ten nine nine to W two, well, guess what? It shouldn't be put in a, a wrench between this administration and this council. Mr. Deeb, stick to being W two and keep it moving, guys. I cannot believe we've spent three meetings arguing back and forth, talking about police reports, and talking about this. Stop! We, we look embarrassing.
Okay.
That's all I gotta say about this.
Thank you. So motion made by Councilman Mobidun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.
I didn't make this, Councilman, I wasn't even, I was using.
I, Abdul Haq?
Abdul Haq.
No, 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 I made the motion.
Yeah, you did, and Ahmad seconded it.
Ahmad, okay. So Councilman Abdul Haq made the motion in regard to this particular company, seconded.
Well, one less, one less thing, one less thing.
No.
This is, this is a temporary contract to December thirty-first?
Correct.
I don't know who wrote this contract. I don't know if AMD wrote it, I don't know if our administration wrote it, I don't know if an attorney wrote it. Well, let me finish, Council, please.
Wait, let, let me finish.
I'm speaking. Whoever wrote it, this is not a great contract, all right? The, I, we've read many contracts, this contract sucks, to be honest. So I'm gonna tell you something, come January, have a more transparent, black and white contract for this body, because I'm gonna tell you right now, if you're gonna get my support this time, it's because it's a thirty-day contract. Don't bring us a contract, a long-term contract, that looks anything like this. And, and, and whatever these numbers are here that's broken down from ten-one to ten-thirty, to, to Halloween, the, the breakdown of the hour, the, the breakdown of AMD Engineering hourly. Uh, just, look, hand us something a lot better than this.
Well, if you can insult the weight of wording is, please be specific and give a chance to respond, because wait, now I'm talking, if you don't mind, Council.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
With all due respect.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to be disparaging if you're attacking a contract. The contract was requested by council members who've talked to me, and we put the terms in to reflect what you say that you like, Mr. Deeb, okay? It's not reflective of anything permanent, because permanent has other connotations and other things that have to be included in a contract. I appreciate you saying for thirty days you'll, you'll approve it, but really, it's the company that you're approving. The terms are subject to change and improvement, and that's what we're trying to get at, but I'm not wording something for you just to say, that's the problem sometimes.
Okay, I, I respect it.
You may not agree with me, but we won't go any further.
I, I respect it, but what I will say, and I just want to give you my last rebuttal, if I'm approving the contract, then we should be going out for FRPs, and we should be approving an FRP based on the top three people then.
You're approving the company.
We're, we're, we're approving a company without going out for RFPs. So technically, we are, we're not, we're approving Mr. Deeb as a person. You may say it's a company, but in reality, he's an employee.
You're not, you're not a, a port pursuant to the charter, saying that you, you've got the power to do that contract or when the bidding, when the, where the, where the charter doesn't say you do. Now, if you're looking at approving the company, okay, you're approving the company, then you can do another RFP, you can get another engineer. Look at, but he went through that vetting already. That company went through that vetting already, yes, yes.
And every single thing you're moving forward?
The second one, the second company that we picked turned it down and recommended Mr. Deeb. And then he came the third one, yes.
Corp Counsel, Counselor, do you mind? Corp Counsel, can we say we're approving way of payment? Instead of, like, just a way of payment?
Way, you're approving a way of payment?
This contract, instead of like approving a company or approving a person, just approving a way of fame, of payment for the employee?
That's fine.
That's fine?
A way of payment? I don't, I don't believe so. No, 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 no.
You're referring to the company like we put together.
I, I know he's referencing, no, it, it, I, I know that Councilman Ahmad is referencing. Um, I, I don't believe personally it would be appropriate.
Honestly, you want my honest opinion? I think way of pay sounds better?
No, no more.
I mean, this is.
So, again, at this particular, okay, so let, let's, let's backtrack. Okay, I didn't want to go backtrack, but the only reason we have this particular, um, understanding in place is because a lot of council members said, we can't pay an LLC, we know nothing about it. We know Mr. Deeb is involved with it, but there's nothing official as far as an agreement. I personally asked the Corporation Council, and I said, okay, you don't, he said, because we're still in the middle of talking about the specifics of the contract, obviously HR would be involved, the mayor would be involved, administration would be involved, and this LLC would be obviously involved. There were still too many things being juggled. Because of that, I said, why don't we put together at this particular point, just a short agreement for a short time period until such contracts eventually finally put together?
Counselor.
That's what we're.
Counselor.
Yes.
Since you mentioned that, just when I mentioned to everybody can know, this is till December thirty-first, but it has a condition of, uh, renewal for another ninety days, if nobody, uh, cancels within seven days before the expiration of this contract.
And that's where the mayor, according to the mayor.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm fine with it, I'm just saying, like, I let everybody know that come January, don't ask for another contract, but, because this is gonna renew for another ninety days. So that's all I'm saying.
Right.
Counselor. Okay, this is what we got here, the schedule of hours he worked. I would like from AMD to bring me at least like any other company, what they worked on, what kind of a project, what kind of business they done. Not just the hours on building, engineering, major streets, local streets, water, and so on. I would like to know the specific of those things, like lawyers, like any other company who brings you detailed invoice, not just hours, and here it is. I would like to see that from the heads of department where he worked, because the money, according to what I have in front of me, is coming from those four departments. So I need the signature from somebody there to verify the time Mr. Deeb and
Okay.
AMD worked on and what project he worked on.
Okay, so at this particular point, we're gonna go ahead and go with the approval of this company. The motion was made by Councilman Abdul Haq, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
I guess we just like to, we just, we'd like to just maybe press a little bit, I guess.
Okay. Now, on that, I'm gonna ask either the clerk or Corporation Council to comment on this, because we could use presumptively, it would be also okay to pay, but I just want to make sure we're following the right protocols. Is there any specific protocols? Do we have to either vote on agreeing to pay right now, or is approving is good enough to go ahead and move forward with paying the claim?
I think approving the.
Put it back on the claims.
Sorry, approving the company where the contract has been signed and approved, I think would allow us to make the payment now.
But I just want to make sure we're following the right protocol.
Approve the claim.
Okay, so is it okay then, just, then it's, then is it okay then, just for transparency purposes, and to just make sure we're all clear and on the same page? Is it okay to count that as claim, just additional claim, number fifty? We'll make it a new claim.
No, keep the original.
Suspend the rules, add this claim on there, and then approve it, or deny it? The one claim?
The one that didn't hear my speaker.
Well, we'd have to do, we'd have to suspend the rules first, we'd have to add a new item, a new claim, in this case, we'll call it, uh, we, we could call it the same number again. Claim, uh, claim, just one quick sec, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. I want to make sure how council members like to do this. We'll bring this claim, I don't want to say we'll bring a claim back, we'll add, we'll suspend the rules, vote on that, provided the rule suspension is approved, then we'll go ahead and, and, and add a claim, suspend the rules again, and add a claim on it, which in this case would be claim eight, and then we'll go ahead and vote on it, and then if approved, would be okay to be able to pay this particular LLC. Is that correct, Corporation Council? Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Now, that, that's clear, now go ahead, Councilman.
If I can just suggest, I can modify the motion to add that including the payment, which was number eight in the claims. That is very simple.
Uh, we'd have to say, if that's the case, you want to go that way, you'd have to say formerly, uh, a part of the agenda, item eight, whatever it was.
Because you removed it, so you just want to give it.
Is that okay? That's fine. That's fine? Okay. So amendment by Councilman Abdul Haq to re-add claim eight.
Are you suspending the rules, Counselor?
You don't need to.
I'm sorry.
Do we have, we don't have to technically, we're just making an amendment.
Well, you removed it. You can put it back.
And then we're just saying that.
So it's not on the agenda right now?
Right now, no. You want, you would rather have a suspension of the rules? Okay. So who would like to make a motion to suspend the rules? Motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq to suspend the rules.
I second.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next now, you'd have to suspend the rules to add a new item on that agenda, which in this case would be the payment of item formerly.
I make a motion to add item.
Former item eight.
Former item eight.
Back on that agenda.
From the claims.
Okay.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, now this just added it back. Now we're gonna go ahead and vote, we've already approved this particular company, now we're gonna vote on actual payment.
I, I'll make the motion to approve the payment, uh, formally, AD and.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two and fifty cents. Motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq, seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is.
Council Chair? Can, can we put something in there from the, the invoices from now on to be, you know, to be, uh, in line with what the treasurer's asking for on these, on these payment requests?
For charter.
I mean, obviously, there's an issue with it. Treasurer has an issue with it, and, and I don't think it's cleared up, you know, from what she's been saying. We're getting one opinion from Corporation Council and then one opinion from her. I mean, can't we just do it the way everyone else does it? Have, you know, the department head submit, you know, the work done to their department? I mean, it's easier for us too.
I get it. So I presumptively, I presume you're asking basically for a more detailed, uh, list of, um, work done by this particular LLC, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Is that doable? Okay, uh, Mr. Deeb, Mr. Deeb, if you don't mind, because nothing's gonna be on, on Zoom, they can, well, let, let me.
With all due respect, Councilman, read the claims you have on every, um, every time you submit, we see claims, read them. None of them have what the treasurer indicated, not one. They do not have it. You have, uh, you have one signature for a pavement, and you have stuff that is, uh, engineering work, yeah, from one, one department. It does not have, it does not have the work that, that was done for other departments. Do you see the signature of, uh, no, no, it's not, absolutely not. I can circle them and give them to you, I'm the one who signs them. They do not have the department head's signature for every piece, they do not have it. You're wrong.
Okay.
Read them. I mean, it, it's so, so if, if a consultant is doing work, and the work in the, included water sewers, in, included engineering reviews, and included other things, she wants every department heads to sign them. That's not even possible, that's not, because that's one consultant doing, I do work for almost every department, I do work for parks.
Correct.
I do work for, for, for engineering, I do work for building, I work for, you know, multiple departments, so I'll be spending half the month looking for department heads to sign every invoice. It's not even practical, you know, it's not like I work for one department.
Counselor Chair, I know we reviewed, we reviewed his.
Okay, let me, let me, Councilman Wenzel, he was speaking first, Councilman Wenzel, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Um, may, maybe what I'm looking for is, is more or less of a breakdown, you know, I mean, say, say if, say if it's ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
We don't know if it was ten, nine thousand, seven thousand, one.
This invoice, the, the way that my invoice was developed, it was actually, uh, uh, I took all the shortcomings from other invoices, and the controller can help me, because that invoice was developed in the controller's office to assist in trying to assign and allocate costs to each department. So when, when you see, uh, uh, GL numbers and, and actual work hours worked for a particular GL, it was developed in there, that's a spreadsheet on an Excel that was developed by our staff to assist in allocating cost, and other consultants don't go to that level of details. I have all the information you need, so you can allocate the cost all in one spreadsheet. And it's ta- it's tallied by number of days, number of hours, uh, uh, you know, what, what it was for and what GL number it corresponds to. It has a hell of a lot more information than any one sheet invoice would have. And again, I don't take credit for it, the staff, our staff developed it to aid in the allocation.
Basically, you're saying you're, you're already doing what I'm asking.
That stuff is developed and, and, you know, it's the staff of, of, our controller's office developed it for me. In fact, they keep the, the, the main copy, I just fill in the, the blank. And again, so that it can hel- help allocate the cost, assign it accordingly, instead of sending an invoice, because we're still struggling now on invoices that came from our consultants that were trying to allocate the cost to the particular GL, because they don't know what GL number is. They just tell you what they did, plan review, you go figure, was it, was it pavement? Was it water sewer? Was it the building department? They just say plan review. That's what you approved on their, on your, uh, claims. It says, you know, project, uh, management, okay, what does that mean? What is a project management, what was it for?
Instead of having just a general ledger number, could we put down what that department is? Maybe instead
Well, that's what, that's what building, that's what, I have building and engineering, I have all the, the cost on, you know, rows and columns. This is an Excel spreadsheet.
General ledger, I mean, we have to look up what that general ledger is.
Specify what the GL number is?
Yeah, I mean, that makes, I mean
Specify what the GL number is? Is that what? Yeah, I, I mean, our people know, I know it, because again, her staff is the, the one that developed it for me. I'm just trying to make it easier, so
I understand that, I, I see where you're coming from now on.
Mr. Deep, gotta be careful, her staff is the city, you're the contractor.
Yeah.
We're using, yeah.
So they develop, I asked them what format will make it easier for them, so they can allocate the cost, the cost. And that's what they came up with, they gave me a blank format, I need to allocate the cost this way, and I'm following that. I mean
Okay.
I thought it's making it easier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with a comment?
Just a little comment, at the end of the day, Mr. Deep, the same employee, he's, he's been working for the city, we didn't ask about that before. He just, we're paying him different, that's all. Thank, that's it, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, um. So this is for item
Eight, eight A B.
A B, that's what I thought, okay. We've already voted on it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we're good. All right, oh, that's right, Councilman once, we had it all set up, and you had to add something on, threw me off. All right. Now, next item on the agenda, item nine A, Councilman Abdul Haq, City Charter, Competitive Bid Process Affirmation.
Okay.
Well, you gotta make the motion first. Yeah, whoever wants to make it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council affirmed the City Charter provisions regarding the use of competitive bids to buy all goods and products that exceed fifteen hundred dollars, and to extend the competitive bids to all services provided by consultants, vendors, and any other services to the city. In addition, direct the mayor to get the council's approval for all contracts involving employment, contracts, contractors, vendors, consultants, engineering, planning, construction, and legal services before making any payment from the city treasury as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq, and seconded by Councilman Badun, any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Uh, Mr. Abdul Haq, I know this is something that you guys went back and forth, I was not able to be able to attend the last study session on this, forgive me. All right, I want you to know, I think fifteen hundred dollars is way too low. Um, I think fifteen hundred dollars is not even doable. I just looked up different municipalities, I think a more doable number should be closer to ten thousand dollars. At the end of the day, this is the mayor of the City of Dearborn Heights, and I think that we need to be able to give and take on certain things. Now, do I believe we need to know about every single employee that comes hired here in the City of Dearborn Heights? If it was budgeted for, maybe not. But do I believe every single director needs to come before the city council? Before it's publicized to different media? Absolutely. So I just want you guys to know that I did my own research. I reached out to some of my friends in different municipalities, Malvinale, this actually Wayne County, uh, and, and Wayne County was one of the main ones, and I said, do you guys hire any directors without the approval of the commission? And, uh, they said absolutely not. Uh, so this is our county executive, Warren Evans, the CEO of Wayne County, is not allowed to hire anybody without the approval of this commission. And so this city is just as great as all of Wayne County, and I wanna make that very clear. So I support certain things on this, I don't, I don't support the fifteen hundred dollars. I don't think the mayor needs to come to us over fifteen hundred dollars. And I know the police chief, for example, had an issue in Dearborn Heights where it was cold temperature, uh, the generator went bad. And, you know, he was running around not knowing what to do, and imagine them having to come, having to wait on something like that. There's no generator to represent, the entire city hall, or the entire police department is gonna cost fifteen hundred dollars. Let's just be realistic, I think there needs to be a, a, a more reasonable number. And I don't think fifteen hundred dollars is a reasonable number. Um, we can have, we can open it up to discussion, uh, maybe ten thousand dollars, maybe fifteen thousand dollars. But I think to ultimately say fifteen hundred dollars, too low, way too low. Uh, but that's, that's, you know, I know I supported this, uh, but I, I think the number needs to be reasonable. Look, at the end of the day, Bill Bassey is the mayor of Dearborn Heights. Um, so we need, you know, the mayor needs to have some type of leeway and some type of control. You know, at the end of the day, we're all part-time here. He is the full-time person with his staff. And like we spoke earlier, a democracy, the people have voted him in, the man should be able to make certain decisions, uh, for, that he feels are gonna be best for the city that he was elected to do service for. But fifteen hundred dollars is not gonna give him that capability.
What is the maker of the motion?
Let's, go ahead, Councilman.
What does the charter say?
The charter says in five point three B, except as otherwise provided in charter, the mayor shall have the power of appointment and removal over all directors, controller, commissions, and boards, which are in charge of the several departments of the city.
What does
The power says in the charter is given to the mayor, now if we wanna change it, my suggestion, not, not, and we talked we talked, I think the proper way to do this, the people, the community, passed in two thousand and seven, the procurement policy by vote. And then the ordinance followed it, and this, this language, in this motion, thing affirms the charter, links it to amending the charter. And I think if you're gonna amend a charter by a motion to amend an ordinance, you're circumventing what the people have decided. Take it back to the people for a vote, do the proper amendment. And the reason I say that is because I want, like you've said, and emphasize into my head, transparency. And that's what I want, if the people vote to do it, everything the way it is, then let them do it. If we wanna amend the ordinance to change the amount, as Councilman, um, Pro, Pro Tem, Chair Pro Tem, um, Badun has said, the amount fifteen hundred is, is too low, yes, you have a right to do that. But where you're changing the structure of the government here, where you're changing the, for instance, two parts of the charter. One is this part, five point three B, the other part is, uh, the, the duties and, and, uh, of the, um, of our Corporation Council. In, uh, five point thirteen, I, um, appointing assistant Corporation Council, that's left to the, to the, under the charter, to the Corporation Council. Not the service contract to be approved by city council, not the money and everything is approved by the city council. And I, my position is approved by the city council, but pursuant to the charter, it says that how the service contract is left to the Corporation Council. That being said, I think transparency, based on this motion, and you've got like five different changes in it. Five different services, changing the mayor, it, it's too, it's too broad. And if we want, and if we take it as an amendment, as opposed to, um, to revising the charter. If we take it to an amendment, we specify every term, yes or no. And we make it impartial, the language, that this is what we're asking the people to vote on, impartial. The language here is partial, the language is confusing and broad. But we are definitely, when it says the language, we affirm the provisions of the charter. What that is saying is we're tying the charter into this motion. And the ordinance, according to Gary Miyake's letter in two thousand and seven, prior to the, the vote, November two thousand and seven, prior to the, the people voting on the amendment, his letter said, I put a tentative ordinance for the procurement, which upon a, a vote of the people in, in the November two thousand and seven election, then the ordinance H R, um, not nine point one, H R O seven O two, was appro, was approved. We can't separate and, and use a motion to change in ordinance. Think about it, I have talked to, and as councilman, I did my research with the AG's office, even talking to Corporation Council, they Maru, Marui, for the, for the Hamtramck City, who passed three ordn, three, uh, amendments to their charter this summer alone, for the ballot. They put it together, they got the governor's approval of the language, they got the attorney general's approval of the vote, making sure it was correct on the ballot, and they voted on it, but everyone had a chance to vote on it, not four, not a majority of four people, or five people.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman?
You finished?
Yes. Uh, you're next, you want, want to say?
The fifteen hundred dollars is clear in the charter that anything over fifteen hundred has to come to the city council.
The ordinance. Sorry.
Ordinance.
The ordinance, that's the part that gives you the leeway to change the numbers.
So, uh, I don't mind to change it to hundred thousand dollars, the issue is transparency again.
Right.
And the second part comes from the charter that five thousand dollars has to go out for bid. I'm not inventing the wheel, I'm just following what's in the ordinance and the charter. And I am willing, if seventy-five hundred dollars is okay, or ten thousand dollars, and, uh, my colleagues agree to it, I don't mind to say yes on it.
Nine point four.
My issue is transparency in following what's in the ordinance and what's in the charter. I'm not trying, you don't see anything here, I'm changing anything in the charter. I'm not even touching the charter, I'm just asking to affirm what's in the charter.
When, when you use the word affirm, no disrespect, you are changing the charter, because the charter goes to public improvements, supplies, and materials. It does not go to services. So if you want that, and you want, and the people vote on that, fine, that's, I'll help write, and I talked to Council Chair about writing and helping, and you and I have talked about that.
You and I wrote, uh, talked today about it. And we agreed that you're going to bring something from your department and the mayor's that we're going to establish commission to revise the charter of the city. And the public will have the say what to change, instead, we amend, you know, just band aid, I don't like band aid.
Right.
I like something to be done once and for all, after nineteen sixty-three, we done nothing. So it's time to change this charter, and I count on you, I'm not going to be on the council pass December thirty-first. But I, I trust that you will bring this to the colleagues here, so they can put it on the ballot for people to be elected for a commission to revise the charter. And again, we'll have Mister Bob, you know, on it, because he's the only lawyer here. So that's why, and I'm not going to discuss this more than we did already several, couple months. I'm going just ask to take a vote on it, up or down.
Well, I, I, I would just add to, Councilman, we also talked
Corporation Council, if you don't mind, Councilman Badun was next.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Uh, thank you, uh, it's all right. Uh, my, my question to you is, in, in the five point three of the charter that you stated, or the five, five point three that you stated in the charter, you're telling me that the mayor has the right to be able to hire anybody to himself, correct?
If you're talking, you said, I said five point thirteen.
Five point thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, five point
Five point three or five
I'm just going on the duties of the mayor. You said direct, I'm saying that in the charter, on the five point three, section B, um, the mayor shall have the power of appointment and removal over all directors, controller, commissions, and boards, which are in charge of the several departments of the city.
Without that
Now, whether I agree with that or not, that's what it says, it doesn't say
Okay, 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 I'm, I'm just going Okay, okay, my question is, can he create positions of directors?
Thank you.
Now, if you wanna create, I think the city council, I think it does not
Roger, the question is, does it stay in there that he can create positions of directors?
Okay, what do you want to say? Does he have the power to do that?
Josie.
He shall exercise and perform all the administrative functions of the city that are imposed by law. This charter, but if any other city ordinance a resolution, can you show me where it says that how, that he does not have the power to do that?
I can show you
I'm not arguing
I'm saying
Roger, I'm not back, I'm not going back and forth with you.
I, I want
I'm, I'm getting somewhere with this, I want you to
Agree with you.
I want, I want you to do, I just, I'm getting
You asked me the question, and I answered the question about the mayor's powers. You said that
Can he create
Any director, now if you're creating departments
Okay, I'm sorry, Corporation Council, just one second. And the audience, please, no talking, cause we're running a city council meeting here, and this is very distracting when we're hearing noise from the audience, please, thank you.
In the two thousand and seven, uh, vote by the amendment, also on that ballot, was the separation of the library and the parks and recreation. It was not up to the mayor, it was the vote of the people that set up in that division four point two, that was on the ballot of two thousand and seven, and approved. So it was not the mayor, it was the people that voted on it. If you wanna create departments and divisions, you bring it to an amendment. Uh, I'll, I'll read to you the amendments by, by Hamtramck, which dealt with raising the salary
I'm, I'm taking your word, I'm trying to get somewhere with this, can you give me a sec? So can you just answer yes or no?
I'm confused.
Can you answer yes or no for me?
I answered, I think the how if you approve, it's gonna need amendment
Okay.
Set up director
I, my question to you is
Of the people.
I'm now getting, I'm, I'm, I'm way off from this guy, my question is, can you hire the mayor, according to the charter, five point three B, is that the mayor has the full autonomy to just, to appoint, withhold to a director, commission, and everything else that you read to me just now, correct?
To, to point or remove the director.
Okay, okay.
That's all I can say.
I'm gonna ask the mayor, I'm gonna ask the mayor
Please, guys, no talking.
Guys, I'm gonna ask the mayor, please, that Josie from the Eaton Center, through your autonomy and according to five point three B, to please hire her as the new full-time director at the Eaton Center, like this entire body approach. And according to five point three B, you're telling me now that that's doable, and so if we've already budgeted for it, and the mayor has the autonomy for it, why have we waited almost six to seven months? Hold on, because I'm, uh, let me finish, Roger, Roger, please, point of order, point of order, point of order. I'm speaking to the mayor right now, I'm going directly to the mayor. And so I want the mayor to hire this position, because I'm gonna be honest with you, we're gonna be, we're gonna hire a new secretary in the H R director, and, and the new, and in, in the H R department, and I can't imagine how fast that's gonna happen. Cause I promise you, nobody's waiting one year for, for us to hire a secretary in the H R department. So let me tell you guys, if you have that autonomy, Josie from the Eaton Center should be hired here full-time, because you can make that decision. All I have to say.
Okay, can I?
Cause you gave me some new information today, Roger, that I had no idea on. I'm gonna be lapping the mayor for a long time, I'm not even going to H R no more.
The mayor wants a comment.
Thank you.
Okay, so from the last meeting, you guys mentioned to bring a specific person without following the civil service process? This is a, it's, it's not in our control.
Send her to the civil service, just hire her.
Okay, excuse me, there's a process you gotta go to, so a, again, you know, the charter, point of order. The charter is written for, okay, we also have policies, procedures, so we have to follow. And those policies and procedures, you know, it's like for hiring police, fire, you know, civil service. We have a process we have to follow, we have commissions for those. I cannot deviate and hire anybody from so, uh, civil service position without going to the process. It's already right now, so it was discussed, uh, it was on agenda, I just gotta find out what happened from
December fifth, or seventh, it's supposed to be, supposedly, it's supposed to be published online, then you're gonna be able to apply for it, and then we're gonna wait for all the applicants, and then we're gonna open it up
Okay. It's a process, I, we can't, we can't
I'm just, I'm just saying, mayor, here on today, on, on November twenty-eighth, at seven forty-nine P M, according to my watch, I know I'm a couple of minutes behind. I, Council Chair, hang on, I just wanna put it for the record, that if I, I'm gonna think it's so comical, that we're gonna hire somebody in the, in the H R department so quickly. We've been waiting, how long? Two years, I think former Councilman Muscat was talking about this, mayor, look, I'm asking you respectfully, nicely, I'm smiling at you in good faith
Me too, I'm smiling
Good faith, fix this problem. Thank you. Okay. So, so we're not gonna have no more discussion on, on the recreation department at this point, no, I'm, I'm gonna stop this, because we're way off track now, we gotta get back No, no, that's part of the session I, I know, but this is about a specific person, let's go back to the motion by Councilman Abdul Haq. Any other discussions on that particular motion?
You
Let, let's have, again, somebody else.
I really just want to say something, that the city council passed resolution and asked within thirty days that person to be hired, and going through the process. And I didn't care, I didn't care who is the person. We asked to go through the process, we didn't ask to plug somebody just because who he is or she is.
Okay, thank you.
It's been you.
All right, any other discussions on specifically Councilman Abdul Haq's, City Charter, Competitive Bid Process Affirmation? Not a specific person
Council Chair.
The process, Councilman.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor a lot of, you know, approval of the contracts, and I'm not sure about the mayor's authority or the power to appoint, um, a, a director or create director's position. But the bottom line is, is no matter what he, who he appoints, or what position he creates, the payments, the funds, the, the payroll checks this person have to be approved by city council. And there are some recently appointed people that was not brought, their pay was not brought before city council. And I don't think anyone up here knows how much, uh, these, these people are getting, or the contract, never seen an, an appointment agreement. So that's what, I mean, this, that's a big part, you could, you could direct, you know, you could appoint all the people you want, and if we don't approve payment, they don't get paid. So the bottom line is, this is all about us approving the payment for these positions. Mayor can appoint a thousand positions, but it's up to us to determine if they get paid or not, and the amount, the amount they get paid. And we, we've been neglected and, and, and looked over as far as some of these positions go. And I, I think that's, that's a big thing, cause there's positions created that we have no idea what the pay is. And we didn't approve a penny for the, the salary. Not saying anything that these people do is right or wrong, I'm saying, it's our job to, to, to watch the citizens' money, taxpayers' money, and some, someone's getting paid, and we have no idea what they're getting paid, or what their contract is.
Okay, so for myself, in, in concept, in concept again, um, I, I, I don't want any directors hired without going through city council. I don't want any new positions created without going through city council, provided this is okay and approved per the charter. Where I do have a problem with this, and I think it could become problematic, is at the fifteen hundred dollar level, it's gonna make it very difficult to do day-to-day operations of the city, and to have to
And to have to go through city council every time there's a sixteen hundred dollar, seventeen hundred dollar, uh, uh, bid of goods or product that has to be purchased. I, I think it would become too problematic. On the other hand, on the other hand, though. I was concerned because if you remember, this thing went into a longer process or longer conversation in our long, in, in our last council meeting. And I created, uh, not created, I put together a study session for the next Tuesday quickly. So we can have a full and detailed and constructive discussion about it. Unfortunately, I was disappointed honestly that the mayor was not there, the chief of staff was not there. And what we were left to negotiate and talk with was Corporation Council, Roger Farinha. And with due respect to him, obviously, he's an attorney, very knowledgeable attorney, but he's newer to the city. So we didn't have anybody to be able to speak on behalf of the administration as far, as far as why this could be problematic. In addition to that. I know the mayor wanted to keep waiting until Plant Moran would come in and they were not able to come in until December, I believe, fifth, if I'm not mistaken. It sounds like a close time right now, but I've been trying, we've been trying to deal with this thing for about, I think, six, seven weeks or eight weeks or so. But we were told by the person from Plant Moran, Moran. And I'm just gonna take it at face value right now that they were not available because of vacations, et cetera, et cetera, until December fifth. It's close now, but it wasn't close sixty days ago. That I found that to be problematic and it just raised a little bit eyebrows with me. But then I asked, per the Corporation Council, you said you had an Attorney General's opinion. I asked the mayor and I know he emailed you and said, sent, because I want to see this Attorney General's opinion. I want to see who wrote it. I want to see what they wrote. And we asked for it and none of us, as far as I know, none of us as council members received it.
I mentioned it last week too.
When something is read during the council meeting. I can't speak on behalf of all the council members. But when something's read to me like this, that Dearborn Heights City Council affirms that city charter provision, there's no way I can sit and assess. The Attorney General's opinion just based on somebody reading it to me and I did not get it.
Well, if you're saying it, I did bring it yesterday to our meeting with us, but we had other issues we were trying to discuss. Basically, they've outlined the laws, but I have no problem. I just don't.
So, so my, my end part to this, on my end, and I'm just gonna say for my fellow council members. Although, again, I'm in favor of this in concept, I, I don't, I don't like directors being hired. I definitely don't like finding out about them either A through social media or B through resident call me, hey, what's this new director you've got? I'm like Director of what? Director of ice cream. Hypothetical. And, and the first thing I say, I, I, I don't know what you're talking about. That doesn't, that's honestly, even though the charter may allow any mayor, I'm not referencing this particular mayor, any mayor, to be able to do that. I still think it's good business. I think it, it, it looks so much better to just send an email out to all the council members and say, hey, I'm hiring a director of, I don't know, vacant land, whatever it is. I think it'd be just so much better personally. That's, that's, that's my personal opinion. So at this point, for me, I'm gonna hold off on this. Until I hear from Plant Moran. But little side note, Councilman Badun pointed out, it's a tree lighting ceremony. So I don't know if they're still coming in.
I won't be here.
Yeah. Okay, that's my take. Any other council member comments?
Chair, if you guys want Plant Moran, you let me know. If you want that day, we can have him come in early.
But I did.
Okay, no, 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 you just, we said, yeah, before the tree lighting. We can do it before the tree.
Guys, I got work. I got a full-time job. I got two kids.
And I forward you, Councilor Chair, I did forward you the email from them.
I did get it.
So this is something.
But I, but I, but then I asked, and I did get it, absolutely. But then I asked the, uh, Plant Moran, I said, maybe I'm thinking wrong, but this is how my brain works. Plant Moran is an organization with four thousand, five thousand employees. And there's Ryan Camilleri, I believe his name, was going to be coming in on behalf of Plant Moran. Side note, we're talking about sixty days ago, couldn't come in until, maybe thirty, forty-five days ago, couldn't come in until December fifth. You know, I found it problematic. So I said, okay, he can't come in, he's got vacation, I'll take it at face value, let's move forward. Can you send somebody else on your behalf? Anybody? Come in and talk to us and give us their opinion. Because again, with due respect to the Corporation Council, and I don't mean that in any type of disrespectful way. Cause I'd probably be in the same position if I was the attorney and haven't been here one year. I may not know all the answers as far as everything. Cause I may not have enough experience at the municipal level. But nobody else was able to come in. I just found that to be problematic and I don't have enough information to be able to vote on this. But I'm in favor of it in concept personally. Any other council members?
Councilor Chair, so are we, are we still leaving it at fifteen hundred or are we as, uh?
Well, the, the maker of the motion was Councilman Abdul Haag.
I can amend my motion to make it five thousand dollars halfway between what the Councilman Badun suggested. And just to be flexible, so we give the mayor a little flexibility.
I think we can go more than five thousand.
We, we can.
Let's do seventy-five hundred and you got my vote. I'm, I'm like HR out here.
Okay.
I think we can do seventy-five hundred. I think five, even five is.
The only thing I'd like to add, no matter what the amount is, just to be fair, just to be fair and legal, would have to be subject to.
Council.
This abid, this abiding, this particular motion abiding by the charter. Because if it doesn't abide by the charter, we can't change the charter. We're here right now.
We'll ask that.
Now, I didn't ask like with the.
Yeah, I mean.
Seventy-five hundred within the charter.
It's not, it's the ordinance.
The ordinance.
That part. You can change that part of the ordinance, but you can't expand it to service contracts by this motion or legal contracts. You can't do an amendment to do that. But if you want to change the amount, that part, but the rest of it, it goes together.
You can, you can keep the five. Go ahead, keep it the five.
I'm changing the amount just so we can move on. You guys can do it after December thirty-first.
Subject to the charter.
Anything you guys want, you can do. But inside my heart, I am convinced with that amount is very.
Subject to this being within the approved guidelines of the City of Dearborn Heights Charter.
Those violating the charter.
Conflict with the jury.
Yeah, not in conflict.
Yeah, but that's an opinion that says it's a violation.
Well, but again, that's why I asked for the Attorney General's opinion. We didn't get it.
You're not gonna get an opinion saying how you make the decision on it. They, they're just gonna outline the law and the procedure.
I know, but Corporation Council, none of us got it to be able to know what it is, honestly.
Let's summarize what we agreed on, please, and, uh, take a vote.
We're spending too much time on this.
But same motion.
Yes, we change it to five thousand dollars and not any in conflict with the charter.
All in favor?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so motion amended by Councilman Abdul Haag.
Seconded by Councilman Badun.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Yeah.
Nancy Brier. Yes. Tom Wensel.
Yes.
Dave Abdallah.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Mobaidun.
Does this mean that the mayor can not hire Josie as the Eaton Center director?
Yes or no? Come on, move it on, man.
Okay, not, nothing from the audience, please.
Yes.
Zuhair Abdahak.
Yes.
And Robert Caston.
Yes.
Motion carry six minute.
Okay, motion carry.
Councilor Chair, I got a question for you.
Yes.
What was your reasoning of voting no?
I don't have enough information, but I made it clear. The reason I don't have enough information and honestly, I'm disappointed. Because at the last, like I mentioned, at the last study session, which we did for all of us, there's nobody here on behalf of administration. I mean, with all due respect, Roger Farinha represents the city council and administration. So he's not really the go-to person to answer me as far as how this could be problematic for administration. I also said Plant Moran didn't show up. That's a problem. And Attorney General's opinion, I didn't get it. I don't have enough information to make a decision. That's all the reason I'm voting no. But I agree with it in concept, yes.
So Councilor Chair, so do you still want to have a meeting with, uh, with Plant Moran?
I mean, not as issue of the time, but yeah.
Think we should, next week.
Propose some dates, you know, with the council, send it to me.
Okay.
Cause I know this is an odd season for Plant Moran, obviously, so.
Okay, the only other thing, council members, is we can set it on a different day, other than Tuesday. No, wait, wait, wait. We do it on a different day.
In January, let the new council members come in.
You got it.
Okay, but, but here's the thing with this, and, and it can be done in January, but I want to make something clear. If nothing else to administration, I'm just gonna be totally transparent. If nothing else towards the administration, even if this passes, doesn't pass, if it is, if it does go with the guidelines of the charter or it doesn't. A message has been sent. Directors should not be hired without some conversation or some transparency or some communication with the, with the city council.
Councilor Chair, Councilor Chair, I think the message that was set was very simple. Uh, this body is asking for transparency. That's all it is.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nine B. Councilman Ahmad, reconsideration of police department credit card amount.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I would like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council reconsidered the amount of the petty cash credit card line for the police department.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Mad. Ahmad, seconded by, seconded by Councilman Abdul Haag. Is there any discussion on this?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Uh, uh, this motion was approved back in, uh, March of, March sixteen, twenty twenty-three. By this body and I was one of the people that voted yes on this motion. Uh, the only reason I'm bringing this right now, because it's been on my mind since then, especially when another director came in last time and they asked for an increase. And we didn't give that director what they asked for. I think at this point, uh, Councilor Chair, we need to be fair across the whole city departments with all the directors. Uh, but let it be on record by all means. I'm not here to defund the police, like I'd heard, heard some rumors. This is only the petty, uh, the petty cash credit card, which is supposed to be used for, uh, like minor emergency. Uh, I'm not, uh, defunding the police. I'm not moving, I'm not decreasing any amount of their training.
On a new police chief.
What's that? Or I have a new police chief. This is all rumors. Uh, I'm, I'm all for the police department. I'm all for their training. Uh, I'm all for whatever they're doing, great job with the, the new training they're doing. All I'm saying is just a way of payment should be different. Uh, anything over the fifteen hundred dollars has to come to this body for approval. I think we need to do something like we did with the other director. Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that one. Maybe, you know, put a limit and maybe they can, if they need something in an emergency, they can send it to the Councilor Chair and Council Protime. And, um, we can take it from there. Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Councilor Chair, was, was there any evidence presented of any wrongdoing or any?
No, no, I mean, I said it to be on the.
I didn't finish, Councilman. I didn't finish. Was there any evidence of any wrongdoing or any change in circumstances that from March to now, as presented by, by the councilman? That would support, has that been presented to us? Cause I've not seen, like you said, I've not seen any evidence of such. I've not seen anything to that effect. So we can properly review it, other than we want to change.
Nothing was presented to myself.
Councilor Chair, no, no, I mean, I said it to be on the record. I'm not bringing this because if there's a mismanagement of funds whatsoever. Uh, I'm just bringing this to be fair across all city departments and city directors. Uh, I'm, I think we need to be fair. I understand the police department is a bigger budget. I mean, we can work with the number. But I think above a certain number, which this council body can decide today, I think it needs to come back to this council body or.
What you're saying is you made a mistake in March and there's a reason. We got any evidence to say what the mistake was in your analysis and your votes.
Wait.
I'm just saying. And then I've not seen anything to support that mistake and why it needs to be corrected now. Other than I want to change it. I get it. I want to change the police department. I want to take away their money. I want to do something. I haven't seen anything and that's why I asked. Did, did, did the, uh, did the councilman have the evidence to present so we can properly review it?
Okay.
Like you said. Councilor Chair.
Uh.
Councilor Chair, Roger, uh, with respect, man. We're not, one, we're not in a courtroom. Evidence and this and that. The councilman made it very clear. This has nothing to do with evidence or mismanaging funds. To be honest with you, I haven't seen anything from petty, uh, from the petty, uh, petty fund. I honestly haven't. Uh, but I also voted no on this in March. Well, hold on, let me finish, let me finish. The councilman started his message because he has heard rumors and phone calls and emails and texts. He's trying to defund the police, that, uh, that he wants to put on a new police chief. It's because somebody wasn't, uh, hired as a director or somebody wasn't promoted. These are all lies, guys. Well, let me finish, please. This is something that brought, was brought to light because Director Lawrence Hall showed up here and somebody ended up emailing the councilman saying. Well, you guys approved the police department thirty thousand. I forgot what the number was. But yet you guys gave, you know, the, the, uh, uh, building or the Parks and Recreation Department thirty-five hundred. And you guys put restrictions and whatnot, anything over, anything over fifteen hundred still needs to come in front of it. Why isn't it like that with the police department? So the councilman took it upon himself, saying, you know what? You're right. I wasn't being fair. This isn't about evidence and mismanaging and doing anything wrong. This is somebody that he's saying, I made a mistake. And look, this might, this might even still not even pass today.
I don't want to forget what you're saying. What you're saying, when you say court, when you say a court of law, that's not what we're talking about.
No, we're not in a courtroom.
No, no, we're talking about documentation and supporting evidence or rationale. You, I just heard, well, we didn't have this, we didn't have this, and we need this information. Yet, when you say it, it's because people have called in and complained about things. That's why you're making a decision? But wait a second, did you look at the, contact the police department? Did you ask? You said you didn't see any wrongdoing?
Yeah, I just.
So what was the mistake in March? When you made the vote as opposed to now in November, what circumstances changed? That's the legal side of things. What is the rationale and legal basis or evidentiary basis for this proposal? What is the wrongdoing? What is, why am I changing other than people lobbied me?
Hold on, hold on. Councilor Chair, Councilor Chair, hold on. Please, uh, I want you to know something, Roger, and I know you're very, very smart. If I wanted to put a resolution tonight and it was approved, that I want a pet dog for the City of Dearborn Heights. And this body approved it for no other reason, the fact that I love dogs, well, then it's gonna get approved. There doesn't need to be a certain.
Well, that's scary. That's scary when you're saying you're not dealing with the people. You can do it just by yourself without input from the public.
Okay, well.
That's the problem. We want to avoid transparency means.
But Roger, point of order.
Transparency among the board.
Roger, I want you to know.
You guys are humping each other one at a time.
He works for the people. That's it. So if the people call him, he's gonna do what the people say.
Take it to the people and get a vote on it.
Okay, let me, one second, one second. First of all, I want to make something clear. Um, Councilman Ahmad had a conversation with me. It's not necessarily a mistake. He just had a change of heart, a different thought process. He wanted to bring this back forward for discussion. Uh, Police Chief, I'm sorry, just before you start, because Councilman Haag had asked to speak first. So I'm, while you wait there for just a minute or two, go ahead and make a comment.
I have one last comment too before.
No, after the chief.
It's good to see you, Chief.
It's good to see you.
Lots of people asking where you are and, uh, I'm happy to see you here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
My colleague, Mister Hassan. He's just trying to be, uh, fair to everybody else since the recreation department got approved for thirty. Approved for thirty-five hundred dollars. He likes to see everybody at that point. There was no other reason whatsoever and nobody wants to do anything to the police department or take away whatever they have. So just to make that clear.
But each department is not equal. Each department has different needs. Each department pursuant to our charter.
We'll give them more money.
Be handled in a different way because they're unique. Now, give me the evidence to show.
Nobody.
What these departments.
Nobody.
They're the same. Let's let the people look at it and put a cap. You, you obviously either were not reading it when it came in March.
Let's go ahead and go with the chief. Go ahead, chief.
I don't know why we're debating with the core council though.
Okay, let, let the chief speak. Go ahead, chief.
Oh, you're all right. It's a good break to have.
Thanks, Lou. You're the icebreaker.
Lots of passion here tonight. So I don't want to get into the part of pitting myself against, let's say, Parks and Rec, right? But I do feel that it's a, a valid point, um, to bring forward the fact that our police officers have the ability to take someone's freedom. We operate a jail. We impound vehicles, right? We use force, right? The, the appropriate amount of force when, when, uh, we need to, right? We carry guns. We drive cars. We drive cars very fast on calls and emergency runs. So those all are very unique liabilities, right, that we have and that we carry with us at the police department. I, I'm not offended at all by this because I feel that this is your responsibility. And when I first came here and I specifically remember having the conversation with Councilor Chair Abdallah, that I don't want your unconditional support. You should question. You should ask, right? We should have these discussions. Um, I didn't know about this until yesterday when we were going over the agenda, uh, with other department heads. So it did catch me a little bit off guard. Because I did promise council that we would have a policy in place on when we use the credit cards. And I confirmed with our treasurer that, uh, we did develop a policy on, on the use of a credit card. Because you gave us a very wide, right, berth here of thirty thousand dollars. So we are a little bit unique and, um, I just want to share, in your mailbox, you should have your email. You should have a communication that, uh, I had drafted back on November eighth. Uh, and I just wanted to confirm with the mayor today that, that you had all. Uh, and I just wanted to confirm with the mayor today that, that you had all received this. And I feel that we all have a lot of passion. We want to move the city forward. And we have a lot of great work that's happening right now with, uh, the Department of Justice Cops Office. It's the Community Oriented Policing Services Office. We're working in a partnership with them, right? It's a partnership. We're the only police department in the country right now to undergo this organizational assessment. And in this memorandum, I've outlined, first of all, I thanked you all because without your support and the mayor's support and Margaret and our negotiation team, the contracts that you've approved, uh, for the police department, we have some TPOM members within our police department, uh, that were excited about this and ready to move forward this morning when I talked to them and their new contract. So I want to thank you for that partnership because you're removing a lot of obstacles that are, that are preventing us from moving forward. You're treating our employees with dignity and respect. They're getting proper raises. We're really looking at all aspects of the police department. So without your support, I can't move the police department forward because it, it's not my department. It belongs to the city. This is not my organizational assessment. It's not the mayor's. Quite frankly, it's not yours, but I do need your help and the mayor's help in moving forward. So I want to get us to a point where we see each other as partners, as we're more transparent, that you feel comfortable picking the phone up and giving me a call. Because there have been some great questions that Councilman, uh, Ahmad had brought forward to, on Sunday, I believe it was, about, uh, some, some, uh, invoices at Ollie Brothers, right, where the backup material somehow didn't make it, uh, through to you. That tells me you're reading the packet, and I love it, right? And you're asking those questions. So we're trying to build this consensus, this transparency and, and this partnership with us right now. And that's what my message on November eighth was, congratulating those who were elected or re-elected to council, and then coming up with ways that we can get you to come to our management leadership stuff. But really, our message moving forward is, and yes, I was gone for several weeks, right? I had a heart attack. I had an infected tooth. I had to have oral surgery, and I had cataract surgery, um, less than two weeks ago. So my check engine light came on hard, right?
Glad you're here.
Well, thank you. And, and, in that time, it just seems like things kind of, you know, took a nosedive. So I really, the mayor has challenged me to find ways where we can come together and move the department forward. So how do I need your help and how does this, uh, parlay then into the credit card? Is, we have six, uh, focus areas that have been identified by the cops office, and again, this isn't mine. I'm not part of these conversations. I believe some people were at a community meeting that the organizational assessment folks, and I see that you shared that, and I really appreciate, um, you sharing that. Uh, I'm, I'm left out of this. I don't make the room reservations. I don't sit down with the employees. This is, uh, subject matter experts, a team of about twelve people, and I'll get back to how the thirty thousand dollars is, really is needed. So through this organizational assessment, they've met with all the employees and, and myself and some community members, and they've come up with these six areas of focus. Community engagement and problem-solving strategies, accountability and oversight systems, recruitment, hiring, retention, and promotion practices, employee safety and wellness, organizational learning and data-informed practices, and internal and external communications. So if we were to reduce the amount right now on the credit card, it could slow down, right? We're just starting to get some momentum. I have an implementation committee that we've put together at the police department. There's, I believe, nineteen employees that are on the implementation committee. We've recently, um, identified our mission and our mission statement, and that is in, uh, the email that I sent to you, and it's going to be on our website very soon. And pretty soon, on the back of our cars and on our, um, business cards, our mission statement is partnering with our community. Uh, so we have also developed our core values together through this implementation committee. And we're really starting to, to move the organization forward. And I get it, thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money, right? But please understand, we are at risk if we don't properly train. If we, if I have to use my credit card again, right? And I think I shared that story about Frankenmove. Well, I'm in the hospital for a few days, and I was supposed to go off to the chief's conference. I used my credit card last year to secure the room, and I took a four hundred dollar hit because I couldn't go to the conference. But now it's on my credit card, and I paid the bill. So there are so many unique areas here where it's challenging for us if we take this, this amount down. If we have a couple people that go to a community-oriented policing school, right, and we have to get them rooms, we're above our limit.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
And then, by the way, you got me so inclined with you, and like, I didn't even want to interrupt you, but, um, I mean, I, one of the reasons that when we spoke on, in the March, and I don't remember what it was, it was that emergencies, things happen where you need to book a hotel, and so I need to, you know, the petty cash, a petty cash, whatever it's called. And, uh, you know, my stance was on it. And so my question to you is, I want to move this organization forward. You're doing a great job, this organization, things you guys.
We are. We are.
We're doing a great job, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we, uh, why aren't we just not planning ahead? Saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. I need council, this is going to happen in two months. Council, I need you to approve of it now. I mean, and I, and I, one of the reasons that I also argued with it, and I know you have a policy plate, and let me tell you, chief, I honor you. I know you do great work, uh, but I've not seen anything spent out of that card. I don't even know what was spent. I, I have sworn a fiduciary duty to the city, and like you said, thirty thousand is large.
Yeah.
Um, and like, I don't know what was ever spent on that card. I don't think anybody in this body was ever informed how much was spent on that card. It, it passed.
Yeah.
Uh, but I want to go back to Roger. The councilman feels a certain way, not because there's any legality behind it, uh, but feels a certain way that, you, this, this might still pass today. It might even get, might not even pass today. But, but if he felt a certain way.
Are we running it by emotions? Are we running it by feelings? Because I have feelings. I don't agree with certain things, but I respect what you say. And I look at the evidence to back it up, and I present you with evidence, or I sit down with you to show you evidence, but I don't go by my emotions and feelings, although I care. So you're saying that you don't, just go by emotions and feelings?
Well, I'm going to give you quick evidence.
Yeah.
Our very own honorable, one-of-a-kind police chief just said that it is an extremely large amount.
That's not the whole sentence, because he didn't finish what he was saying.
I understand that.
He asked a question to you.
But we can take that.
You asked a question to him about where it's being used or what's being done with it, and he hadn't finished the answer.
Look, I didn't, I'm not going to win the debate with you, but I can tell you is, if we wanted to approve.
I don't want to debate you.
For pink carpet in City Hall, and it gets approved, we're going to get pink carpets at City Hall.
No, you want to check with the people? Do we need it in here, I guess?
Yeah. So I, I think, I mean, emotions are. When I first saw it, quite honestly, I looked at it, and I'm like, what have we done wrong? Right? That's what was, that was my first thought, is, did we do something wrong? And I asked the, the treasurer, um, is today only Tuesday? Yesterday, um, you know, hey, listen, we, we developed a, a policy. We're following the policy. Have, have we had any issues with it? And I believe your answer was no, right? We haven't had any issues with it. I don't believe we spend thirty thousand dollars, right, every month. Yeah.
And you do get the statement emailed, by the way, the councilman, which I've been doing that for like a month.
Yeah, but it, it, and, and it does. It, it brings back a lot of.
Check with me, because I don't have a machine.
And it also brings forward a lot of other questions, right? Like, your question about Ollie Brothers reminded me, we don't have, we've never gone out for a bid for uniform contracts in the police department. That's wild. Towing services, right? So these are all big things that are on our list that we're trying to give that transparency piece and go out for a bid on. So what this, what this credit card does for us is it allows us to get that training in those moments where we can, you know, people are really not into invoicing much anymore. Yes, sir.
But I think the, the councilman's main question, first of all, in, in answer to Rogers, due respect, you don't have to have evidence to bring a motion forward. You could, you could just bring a motion forward just because, nothing else. They can, they can.
That's not what I'm saying.
I know, but.
I'm saying something of this, in, with the motion of challenging something like this, as opposed to pink carpets.
Yeah, but, but they can. It was just, they can, they can. It's part of their rights, and he did. But all I need from you, uh, Police Chief, is, there's been some discussion amongst council members, really not so much whether, oh, do we give the right to the police department to spend? No, that's not the issue. The issue is, should the amount be X, in this case thirty thousand, or should it be Y or Z? So if you don't mind answering for us, what is the amount that you do need? And it could be thirty. I don't know. That you do need to survive and get your work done, as opposed to going through city council body. Like, let's say we say, I'm just going to use a hypothetical number. Let's say we set five thousand dollars. But anything between five and twenty-eight, I'm just using hypothetical numbers, you have to go through, kind of like we did with the Recreation Department, you have to go through and get approval through the mayor, the, um, chairman, and, uh, council chair pro temp. So this way, there is transparency and there's checks and balances. That's where Councilman Ahmad is coming from, yes.
Yeah, and I don't dispute that one bit, and this is, this is fully within your purview. This is what you're supposed to do, right? Set these limits. This is where you sit down and have these discussions, right? The part where, uh, personally, right, because there's a lot of emotion, there's an emo, there's emotion in just about everything we do, right? We've had a lot tonight, is, did I do something wrong? Have I violated somebody's trust, right? So I just want to know what the rules, yeah. I just want to know what the rules are. I could tell you, I, the communities that I've been involved in, there's a very quick and dirty sheet, right? And it says, anything under, uh, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents or less, you have to have three quotes, blah, blah, blah. You fill out the information, you send it through. From a thousand to five thousand, uh, department heads can do it, but you have to have three written quotes, a, and then anything above a certain amount. That's what I would love to see, because no one has really been able to provide, like, a, a quick and dirty one sheet. This is our purchasing policy. That, that rule is missing. That, that guidance is missing for me.
But for today's motion, is there an amount that you could live with, or do you feel you still need the thirty? That's what I, the main question is.
May I, Councilor Chair? Uh, thank you, Councilor Chief. I mean, I respect all the stuff that you said, and I salute you for all the great stuff you've been doing at the police department. But are we doing training for thirty thousand every single month? I don't think we are, because today, we just, uh, approved a claim for thirty-seven fifty for training for five officers, which was pre-planned, which is, I agree with Councilman by doing that. We, we do need to be planning stuff, and we do need to know about it. So like I said, I didn't bring this here with any bad intention or any mismanagement from your command, uh, office whatsoever. Uh, I just wanted to be fair across the board with all city department. I mean, we, we need to treat, and I just said, I said the police department budget is way bigger than the other department, but we have to be fair with all directors and department as well. Uh, but we, we, you just said, we need to work as a team. So, uh, by you telling us exactly what you're looking for, we're going to approve it, but at least we're on the same page, working as a team, knowing exactly what you guys working on, what you guys looking to train on, all this stuff.
We don't even know. You need to know what you're voting or you're training on.
I'll do the channel.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I mean, I would love to see it, because this makes me proud, to be honest with you.
Council Chair.
How about we just do ten thousand?
There you go.
Can we just do ten?
There you go.
Because thirty seems to be kind of the, it's not a goal of mine to hit thirty, right, every, every month. That's certainly not it. But I feel ten is something that's very manageable, right? It's, it's being fiscally responsible from your, from your perspective as well with the citizens', uh, money. So it, if something happens where we need to address that, then I can come back with you and I can ask for it, right, to be readdressed.
By all means, Councilor Chair, I mean, we can do the same thing we did with, uh, Director Lawrenceal. I mean, they can just email the council chair and council pro temp for, uh, anything extra.
But, okay, so I spent time, I was military police, so I know, okay, actually, you know, just some of the stuff that, you know, the police officers do. Okay, so one of the things that we're not looking at, okay, so the police department is responsible for the safety of the whole city, you know, residents, businesses, non-residents that come to the city. So if anything happens, okay, the police department should be able to, you get, you get, I mean, the chief mentioned it, but they didn't really go too much in details. You have a shooting, you know, the officer is the first thing, you got to send the officer to, uh, to training or even just go, go somewhere that they can actually talk to someone, because it's, it's not a good situation for an officer to get into a shooting. So you, you guys, what you're saying is you want us to wait for something? Those are emergencies only. This is not something like, okay, you know, we're planning on getting into a shooting a few, few days from now. If it happens, the chief or the directors, they want to send somebody to, to anything, like training, or, you know, have to see, seek help. You know, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be constricted, or anything that happens, you know, there's, you know, you, you purchase parts for vehicles, that we have to get vehicles up and running. You have holidays. You know, we, you, you can't get through us, you know, to go through the chair or whatever to get approval. You know, so they are, the police is responsible for the whole city, the, the whole safety and security of the whole city. So if you guys put limits on the police department, just be cautious, because this is very, very careless. I just want to make sure that you guys really think about the repercussion of limiting how much money. And again, this is not, we're spending thirty thousand every year or every month. This is a max. And, you know, obviously, you know, the treasurer said that she's sending you guys the invoices. You guys can look at that.
Okay, Councilor Chair.
Councilman, uh, Ahmad first?
Councilor Chair, thank you. With all due respect, just I want to mention to the mayor, with all due respect, if you're sending somebody for, uh, help after a shooting or whatever, we're not paying with a credit card. They're going to send an invoice that we're going to pay later on. We're not paying, you don't pay a doctor with credit card.
That's not true. Uh, well, Councilor Chair, I just.
Councilman.
I, I want you to keep something in mind, Police Chief, uh, Hart and Samir. I've been on council for three and a half years now. December will be, uh, man, wow, that's old. Three and a half. So, so I want you to know, in those three and a half years, one time, I have voted on no on a police department thing, one time. And it was just this year, and it was on the chairs, and I felt terrible. I swear, I went home and told my wife, man, did I make a big mistake? Because my wife is watching right now. And, and I said, I wonder, like, I made a huge, did I make a mistake here? And, uh, you know, after further discussion, I said it was just chairs, like, I even said, buy chairs, just don't spend whatever X amount of dollars. I forgot what the number was. So like, you know, to tell the mayor, I don't think whomever moving forward is, like, the chair or the council pro temp or the mayor is ever going to vote no on saying, an emergency fund, hey, guys, I need to do one, two, and three. I don't think anybody's ever going to say no to you. I think it's more of just being able to have, be had that transparency. I think you spread about something today. There's a lot of emotions in today's room, and I think it all goes back down to just this council and this administration and this body all here. Everybody just wants transparency. That's all they're asking for.
What about the public?
Uh, and, and the public. I think that's all they want.
So there are, there are some, and I appreciate, um, your comments, and the chairs, yes, have a lot of upset dispatchers, right? So how, what the mayor's challenged myself to do, and I've challenged the directors and, and the other executive staff there is, we have to tie all of our budget requests to these six areas of focus, right? And that gives direction, uh, for council. Like, where does this fit in? Where would these chairs fit in, let's say, with these six areas of focus, when you guys get this, employee safety and wellness? Because our dispatchers are sitting in those chairs for twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours, right, day in and day out. Um, and, and the lease program was a really cool deal. Hey, listen, we could have done a better job presenting that information, right? So that's the challenge to us. The mayor challenged me. I'm challenging our directives. So anytime we have a request for you, uh, look at the Star Chase that you approved, right? How much national attention we've had on that program? That falls into employee safety and wellness, so many different, um, you know, categories here. So we want to be able to tie that back to those six areas of focus. So when you get something, you could say, hey, listen, this means something because it's part of this, these areas of focus.
Okay, let's go ahead and take this thing to a vote, unless somebody has.
Councilor Chair, I just have one question. But this credit card is used for repairing police vehicles?
I believe we get purchase orders for those. So we now, um, what was happening before, uh, for those that may not know, is we had a certified police officer driving our cars around to get them, to get, um, them fixed. Was dropping them off for oil changes, tire rotations, and what have you. So we were able to, uh, work with TPOM. We posted a mechanic's job. We have a two, two-vehicle maintenance bays at the police department with vehicle lifts. So we had a mechanic, Glenn, transfer from DPW to our police department. So he's taking care of a lot of those issues right now. We were able to redeploy a police officer back to police duties. So I can't give you an answer right now whether it is used for the repairs of the vehicles, because I believe those are on purchase orders, right? They're, they're separate. But if we did have an emergency, but if we did have an emergency, yes, right? There is one auto shop, I believe in Westland, that won't do business with, with us anymore because we owe money, right? Because of the invoice system. So I don't know the history there, but if I had to get a car fixed, yes, we would, we would do that.
Okay.
Councilor Chair, so it's ten thousand dollars, dude?
Well, I, I, that's why I was going to ask Councilman Ahmad if he's changing, because the.
Well, I, I, that's why I was gonna ask Councilman Ahmad if he's changing, is, is, he's amending his motion. Are you amending your motion, Councilman Ahmad?
Yes, Councilor Chair. Chief, you're comfortable with ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, yes. You see great communication, everybody's fine, felt transparency. Look, you might even get a man of the vote right now.
Positive energy.
Roger, you see that, Roger? We're not in a courtroom, we're not arguing. You're supposed to work for me as well. I'm impressed, I work for you, yes. Are you sure? I want pink carpet.
Motion by Councilman Ahmad, motion amended by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilman Abdul Haq, for the amount to be ten thousand dollars. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item.
Thank you, please read that communication I sent, because there's a lot of opportunities.
I didn't, by the way, I didn't get no email.
You didn't get it today?
You sent it to the wrong, you're sending to the wrong Ahmad.
Well, I sent stuff directly to you guys, so, because I know that there's that city community, there's city council.
Remember last time, when you said you had it in some sort of a group thing?
Yeah.
It didn't go through for whatever reason? Maybe that may have been the reason. Because I checked my emails all the way up to about five o'clock, and I didn't receive that.
I, I received it at five twenty-two PM.
Okay.
Uh, but I was getting ready to come here. And so I told the councilman whose car is broken down, I wonder if they're in Westland, I don't know where it's at, but... I asked him if he was, you know, did you get the email, like, you know? And so he goes, no, I never got it. I said, let me see if you're on there. I think respectfully, you put in the wrong Ahmad.
Yeah, all right. I'll check for it.
Chief, Councilman Abdul Haq has a question.
Chief, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
I noticed that there is a At Milliken contract, I believe, around fifty-nine hundred dollars for repair of police cars. Is this monthly payment fixed, or depends on the repairs we do?
I, I would have to look at the invoice to find out exactly what it is. We have, we have found some really serious issues with some of our cars, right? Which I, I think I've shared some photographs.
That is true, I hope you, you come up with some new.
Our, our mechanic has, he's just been a godsend to us. He really does a great job. And it really helps our internal customer service, and it helps our citizens, because who wants to be driving around if a police officer has to drive with lights and sirens on, and we have a hole in the frame, right? And bad things happen. So, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys, all right? Now we got, uh, next up, we have nine C, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, City of Dearborn Heights Remote Collection Sites.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following, the following city revenue collection sites. Caroline Kennedy Library, John F. Kennedy Library, Kenfield Recreation Center, Richard A. Young Recreation Center, Eaton Senior Recreation Center, Berwin Senior Recreation Center, Dearborn Heights Police Department, Twentieth District Court, Department of Public Works, as outlined in nine dash six.
Supported by Councilman Abdul Haq. Uh, open up for discussion.
Just a question, what is the benefit of having all these places?
The benefit is for convenience of our residents. So for example, say the Berwin or the Eaton Senior Center, when they go to, they can pay for a trip there. They can pay for their ticket for the holiday party coming up there. And so they're passing it, and they have internal controls that we've already approved. And it's part of the process of the internal controls that we have in general for the City of Dearborn Heights. And it's approved by the Department of Treasury for the state of Michigan. So it is really a matter of convenience, because otherwise, if you only have one payment center in your city, which is the treasurer's office, they're gonna have to come here. They're gonna have to come Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four PM. It really limits it, even though we do have online presence as well as kiosk. But we're trying to make it convenient for people to pay and participate.
Thank you for that, you're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Uh, Councilman Ahmad.
Madam Treasurer, so these collection sites, are there's people there, or are there like machines you're talking about?
No, these are people.
People.
Yeah, so that's part of the, the process, but yeah. And these actually have been around for, I don't even, way before my time, by the way. Um, it's just that we put the internal controls more in place, and working with Michigan Department of Treasury, on that, they have an internal control checklist that we work through. So, you know, just making sure we're compliant.
So since we have the two libraries and the, I guess, the district court, are they open on, like, they're taken on Friday and Saturday too, or?
Uh, the libraries can, because they're open Saturday and Sunday. That's normal, library doesn't do a lot, but like, paying for fines, for example. You know, you get a library fine.
So they can do Sundays too?
Sure, yeah, yeah. So, and the only thing that, that I require through the internal controls is that they're coming in weekly or frequently to, you know, bring us the money and the records.
Thank you.
So we can reconcile.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we got nine D, Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deeb, CDBG-DR Round Two Grant Design Agreement.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposal for CDBG-dR Round Two Grant Writing Services and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement between the city and weight trim on behalf of the city as outlined in nine dash D. Second.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Uh, any discussion on that?
Who's doing, I'm sorry, Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Who's doing the writing services?
Mr. Deeb? Weight trim. I think it was sixteen thousand dollars for weight trim. From what I read, correct?
Yes, sir, so, um, what you have before you, council, um, is, councilman, is, is the round two of the CDBG-DR. I, I believe two, two meetings ago, we brought in the first round approval. And we met with the staff of CDBG Disaster Recovery, and we were, became aware, or they told us, that round two is coming available, and, and we got excited, because round two is where we actually wanted to do the actual mitigation efforts of the Ecorse Creek. Things like the dredging, possibly, the stability, the capacity enhancement, the outfall modification, as well as CSO improvement. So we got excited to go after round two, because this is where we actually have shovels in the ground, really. And, and so this is the application process. The memo itself, where it says, grant design agreement is, is not really clear. This is just the grant going after the grant. This is the efforts that it takes for us to make the case to go after the grant. And the amount is ten thousand two hundred, not seventeen thousand. So that's, that's basically going after the phase two of the same grant. That's the fee, that's the fee the consultant will, will, will charge to go after the funding.
Councilor Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, how come this wasn't dealt with through the scout program?
It did, it was.
So I thought it was six thousand dollars per grant.
That was phase one, this is phase two.
This is, what's it been, ten thousand? Why is it not six thousand again, or, I don't understand what?
No, this is different efforts, we're going after more. So the first phase was completed. Now this is a second grant, this is a new, a new effort. And the new effort requires more work, and that's what the fee is. So I mean, this is just going after grant money.
Yeah, I, I understand now, I'm all for that, for, but when we approved the scout program, it was six thousand dollars per grant. That's all I remember, I don't, I don't remember anything additional for next level grants.
There, there is no flat fee per grant, I don't recall seeing that at all.
Yeah, it was six thousand dollars for every grant that they get.
Application, sir, not, not, not to make the case, this is the engineering effort to make the case to get the money. That's not the grant application.
They found the grant for six thousand, and now we're paying them ten thousand to write up the specifications.
Well, we cannot, we can, we can skip looking after the grants, but as the mayor indicated, I have an update later tonight that, that shows great efforts, results of, of major money that we're getting. I do not suggest we, we skip. We have, we have, we have a, a policy now, that we're going after most of our infrastructure needs through government grants. And, and I don't suggest we stop that.
Oh, no, I, I didn't say that, I mean, I, I was, I mean, having them find the grants was, and then applying for them, I, we, I wasn't aware of that, there was an additional cost for the, the process, I mean, why don't we take care of that at house?
Because, because there are, so the next, the next grant application, there are specialties, and you don't have the staff to do that. There are things that are basically are very, very specialized. Even, even, and the next, the next item on your agenda, even our consultant had to hire specialists. So there is a sub consultant to the consultant, because they are specialists. So, they, they require things, if you want their money, you gotta do it their way. And they require things that you can't even imagine. I'm doing, I'm doing citywide historic preservations, archaeological study of the City of Dearborn Heights. Yes, sir, that is a requirement, if you want their money, you gotta do it. So, yeah, I'm doing one.
So we paid them the six thousand initially when they found this grant, correct? And now they're...
They got the first phase, now, now we, we, we became aware of a second, uh, uh, you know, grant becoming available, and this is what it will take to go after it.
Is this the first time we did this process?
Yeah, yes, yes.
That's because I'd recognize it.
It is, it is the first time. So there, there are a lot of things that you're gonna see that we're doing for the first time, but they're paying off. And I'm gonna go through details later, and you'll see, paying off quite a bit.
So, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Deeb, I just want you to know, it's fifty-six thousand dollars that we signed up with the grant program. Uh, or it could be just north of fifty thousand. And, and now we're giving weight trim sixteen thousand dollars on the second phase of, of, of doing this right here.
Where did you see sixteen thousand? I don't see it. It's ten thousand.
Oh, we paid six thousand prior to it?
We paid six thousand for the first phase, and this is ten thousand for the second phase, it's not...
So it's a total of sixteen thousand dollars?
For two, one for six, and one for ten.
I understand, so two, it's costing us sixteen thousand. Plus, we have, we have another organization that we approved for, just this year, to do our grants. And we're gonna, remember, remember the, uh...
Talking about the scout program. Scout program.
That was, that was the six thousand. The scout program was the weight, weight trim. It was weight trim six thousand, so it's not a second one, it's the same one.
I understand that, so why scout charging us an additional ten thousand dollars?
Look, you can deny this, I'm, I'm just saying, this is, this is, so each, each step...
Guys, why is it when we ask a question?
No, no, I'm just saying, the, the options are, we, we have a base contract, and every time you give them an assignment, we, 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 we get a proposal for what it will take to do that assignment. And I bring it over to you for approval. I mean, it's, it's not...
Director, I think what he's trying to get clarified, and I understand his concern, is why is this particular amount not within the context of what we originally agreed upon?
What's part of the contract?
Okay, wait, wait, so this, the grant, this CDBGR, DR, phase two, wasn't even on the radar screen? So there is no way possible that consultant's gonna give you a price, fixed price, for every possible grant that you come, you can come up with in the future, and that will be included. It's, it doesn't work that way.
I know, you know what they told us, that they were gonna go out and they were gonna find grants for us, and there was a certain percentage.
And they have, and I, don't get me to, so I'm, I'm not supporting a consultant. I'm gonna give you, I have an update later tonight, I'm following the program here, and, and you will see, you got a hundred times more than what you pay them. At least a hundred.
Councilor Chair.
So, let's go ahead and take this to...
Before, before, do you think we can go back and tell them instead of the ten two, just another six?
I don't have the time, no. You, you miss on the grant application.
No.
Councilor Chair? Just, just real, real quick.
Uh, Councilman Mayor was first, and you're next. Mayor, go ahead.
Councilor Chair, you know, I mean, Mr. Deeb just, I mean, said it perfectly, but also, we're talking millions of dollars that we have coming in. So they're applying, you know, the more they, they apply for grants, you know? And again, we're gonna talk about some great news for the City of Dearborn Heights, that's not costing residents a penny. And, you know, we're not increasing water rates, we're not increasing sewage rates. You know, so we got, we got a lot of money coming in, guys. And, you know, this is, uh, this is very petty for the amount of work that these guys are doing. And you're gonna see it, you know, we're gonna talk about it.
Why are we gonna call it petty?
It, it is for the amount of money that we're receiving.
We don't know what that money is receiving.
Well, we gotta talk about it, give us a few minutes, we'll talk about it.
Just say it.
No, no, we, we have, we have, we have, uh...
Build it up.
Councilor Chair? Councilor Chair?
I don't think anything here is petty.
I think, you know, I, I think what's lost, you know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of the scout giving them six thousand dollars, whatever, because our department has to do it. But the, the ten thousand is just like if Director Lawrence L found a grant for, for some big park deal, and they, so you got the grant, or you applied for, now you gotta come up with the specifications for that, so you gotta pay to have that done. And that's what this ten thousand is for.
So, no, no, this is for a grant that wasn't, so every time they identify a funding opportunity, and we wanna go after it, each funding opportunity has guidelines and things, requirements that you need to submit. And these efforts cost money. So that's what this is for. So when we hired the, the consultant, was to look for funding opportunities, and they're doing it. And they're finding things that you and I would never even think of. So, it, it comes with the cost, yes.
Basically, it's like a wedding planner. Each grant, you have to plan the specific plan for that wedding, correct?
It's not a wedding planner, but it, it's...
All right, let's go ahead and take this thing to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Nancy Breyer? Yes. Tom Winsell?
Yes.
Dave Abdullah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Doom?
Yes. I wanna be on the right side of history.
Is who here, Abdul Haq?
Yes.
In, Robert Cass?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item nine E, Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deeb, Engineering Services for Pressure Reducing Valve, PRV Installation.
Councilor Chair?
Councilwoman, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the pressure reading valve, PRV, design between the City of Dearborn Heights and Hennessy Engineers. Further, the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to sign this agreement on behalf of the city. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued from GL account number five nine two dash five three seven dash nine, seven nine one dot zero 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 for the payment of these services in the amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand five hundred. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council, the specific warrant and payment as permitted by, inconsistent with City Charter Section eight point nine, as outlined in nine E.
Support. Okay, made, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported and seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
I just have a question. Did this go out for bid?
Um, no, we, we, we are utilizing an existing contract that was, that was bid out with Hennessy as our water operator, because this is part of their, of the duties of the water operator. So the, the, this is installing two devices on six of our water meters, the main, the main master meters. This is, these are not the home meters, these are the six meters that we buy water from Detroit Water Sewers. So, two of them have proven to be problematic, and they were identified by the water operator. So we, the water operator works for an engineering company, and since he is our current operator, we asked him to design a solution. And this is the price to prepare documents to design the installation. So last year, I did a temporary installation on exposed above-ground water, uh, PRVs, in an effort to try to reduce our unbelievable number of water meter breaks in the wintertime. The system is old and obsolete, and it's, our water distribution system is antiquated and does not take pressure well. So we identified two out of the six and installed some temporary meat, uh, PRVs to see if they work, and they worked greatly. So this year, I'd like to put permanent PRVs, which are underground bunkers with proper pressure-reducing valves and bypass valves. And, and so I asked the water operator first to identify which ones are the culprit. Out of the six, two proved to be the problem, DH eleven and twelve, one on Warren and Inkster, one on Dartmouth and Pelham, um, are biggest, um, are the cause of the big, most of our water main breaks. So this is, I asked the existing operator to, to, to design it.
Okay, let's go ahead.
I, I didn't finish it. I gave him courtesy to talk and say what he wants.
Sure.
For the sake of transparency, I would like this to go out for bid. It's a twenty-three thousand five hundred and I wanna see if we can get somebody else maybe better, maybe less. Uh, I can't just because he's an existing person that, or company that we just give it to, to them. So my suggestion to the council, this goes back to bid for transparency as we all agree on.
Just keep in mind that I still have to use his services to work with the, uh, with the other company who's doing the design. He's the water operator, all my pressure reading are with him. So he's my water operator, I, so I will have to pay him and then pay a designer to work with him. But that's fine, it's up to you. Councilor Chair.
It is better just to go out for bid and follow just the chart.
Not a problem.
This is the twenty-three thousand five hundred not to exceed is the engineering part of it. What's your estimated cost for the material installation?
Um, I have, I've done some of those, but I've done them at an airport scale, which is a lot larger. Uh, for two, probably around about seven hundred thousand.
Where's that money coming from?
Water source. Because we're paying, water me, water main breaks are paid out of that fund. And so we're trying to alleviate water main breaks by coming up with a solution. Not a hundred percent, but reduce it. So I mean, when I'm, when I'm having, what, thirty-seven a weekend, um, water main breaks, they cost a lot in the winter. Our system is old, so we...
Real quickly, how big are the lines?
Uh, twelve and sixteen. And you do a bypass on the, on the sixteen, so you can shut it down and work on it.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yes. No, sorry.
No, okay, ma'am clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Robert Constan.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Dave Abdallah.
Yes.
Moby Dun.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Motion carries six months.
Councilor Chair, you know...
Mr. Deep. Councilman Abdul Haq said that, you know...
Wait, let him finish. Go ahead.
Councilman Abdul Haq, um, say that, you know, the three bids, and I think that's a good practice, just so we can get an idea. This is just for engineering right here, right?
This is only engineering.
And, I mean, just, I, I, I said myself before, you know, when I get into three bids, we'd like, we'd like to know how good of a deal we're getting, or is it just kosher? And I know we don't always go with the cheapest price. So this'll get three bids on things like this, you know, it's a big money item, twenty-three thousand.
Oh, I, I agree, I, I usually do, uh, but in this instance, the fact that I have most of my services coming from one entity and one contractor, and if I go hire someone else because he's ten thou, whatever, cheaper to do the design, I still have to pay this guy so he can coordinate with him, because the, he's...
Yeah, we're not saying we're gonna go with the cheaper one, he's saying we just need to know exactly what's the prices out there.
And we can do that.
Okay, the only thing is council members, keep in mind, just like in every business, you know, like this is always something that's kind of weirded me out by government. I get the three-bid thing, I get the transparency, I get all that. But also getting that in most businesses, um, or even in households, there's somebody, your, your go-to guy, or your go-to gal, or your go-to company. And, you know, it's, it's a company or a person you're comfortable working with, they get things done right, they come back for extra services if there's a problem, they're just, they just have the pat, like my landscaping, not landscaping, my grass-cutting guy, I mean, this guy's got the package, no matter what I ask him for, he'll get it done, okay? I'm comfortable with him. If I go out for bid, maybe there's somebody cheaper, maybe there's somebody with more money, maybe somebody even better. But I'm comfortable with this guy, so keep that as a factor, I think, with most things.
I just wanna add a few things, Councilman, you know how much I respect your opinion, but one of two things, the reason why we do the three-step bid is to prevent things like, and I'm not saying it is...
Favoritism and...
Favoritism, nepotism.
I get it.
Uh, uh, and then, you know, there's, there's a saying that I live by, get comfortable to feeling uncomfortable.
And I get it.
Because once you get too comfortable, the devil gets in the detail.
Sure, but I'm just saying, that has to be a factor, because sometimes there is that comfort thing.
For some, for government, it should never be a factor.
Okay.
Because you're representing...
Councilor Chair, I don't believe you don't cut your own grass.
I, I don't.
If he did cut your grass, he'd be cutting it in the sewer.
All right, next agenda. Item nine F, Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deep, Lower Rouge CSO L forty-two Sewer Separation Project, Change Order Number Four. Councilor Chair. Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, Bob, you have an app.
All right, Councilman Constan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Lower Rouge CSO L forty-two Sewer Separation Project Contract, Change Order Number Four as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? I have a question. Every time we do a change order, obviously more money, it's costing more money. And I do recognize that there are change orders, they do happen. We keep taking more and more away from the bond money.
Don't, don't worry about that.
Which is gonna create a situation... Remember November twenty-eight. That we're gonna take more and more away from even the slightest of chance of the water meters.
Can we table this until I make the presentation? I will, I, I'll, I'll answer you with, yes, I take, I take that very seriously because...
But, but here's the concern I've got, though. We're gonna table it because you got something coming, great, great to hear.
Tonight.
I get it, I get it, but meanwhile, we would have approved one point eight million change order.
No, no, it's, it's seventeen thousand dollars.
Then I'm thinking of a different one, so I apologize. We already approved the one point eight, that was the first one, right?
Yes, no, no, so we have, this is number four. And, and if you look on your backup material, um, we are in the close-out process of this project. We're closing the project out. So part, normal part of, of, of construction is you take, when you're ready to close the project out, you take, um, uh, true-up on the quantities. So you look in there and say, okay, I, the bid documents indicated seventeen tie-ins and we did sixteen or eighteen. If it's sixteen, we deduct unit price, if it's eighteen, we add. It's, it's an add-deduct. So we did, if you go all the pages, on, um, the final page...
I, I quoted the wrong one, so I'm good.
The, the final page is when you see deduct and add, deduct and add. So there were things that, that were added, um, um, to this project during construction that had nothing to do with the project. So we had, um, a missing gate, well, gate, um, at the fall, at the outfall, um, you know, on, on, um, on that project at the river, and it was at safety issues, so we added that item.
Actually, I did not misquote, I did not misquote myself. So if you look at the total, they, they, okay, so I was correcting what I was asking, hold on a second. You guys had this thing backwards, I hated that.
Who are you talking about?
No, 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 it was put in, it was a part of the backup backwards. There was nothing to spin it. But anyways, the total amount of the chair change orders, right here. The total amount of ch, change orders was one point seven-nine-five-four-three-three-point-one-six.
Previous.
Well, I get it.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is we keep eating further and further into the potential of the water meters.
I know that, I know that.
Okay.
Or something else. We've got that covered, so I know that.
I'll, I'll take you at your word.
We have it covered.
All right. All right, next, uh, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is Item nine G, Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deep, Michigan State Historic Preservation Office.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Since no one else wants to, uh, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office, known as Michigan, M-I-S-H-P-O, Cultural Resources Review between the City of Dearborn Heights and Wade Trim. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued from GL account number five-nine-two-five-three-six-eight-one-seven-dot-zero-zero-zero for the payment of these services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charter Section eight-point-nine as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Brier and supported by Councilman Constan. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
What's this going to benefit the city?
Ha, good question. So, um, as we indicated earlier, we're going after funding, um, federal, um, and state funding. And every program we, we approach for funding, they kept asking for the State Historic Preservation Act study. Does the City of Dearborn Heights have one? Archaeological, archaeological sites, uh, historical sites, um, assessment for the entire city? And I couldn't find one, we don't have it, and that is a requirement. Um, so what we decided to do, instead of doing one for each site, we're doing one for the entire city. And then I will keep a copy and use it for every time we apply for a grant. So it's the same evaluation for the entire city, the same evaluation to address historic preservation sites. And to my knowledge, I don't have any, but the states and the feds don't take my word for it. They wanna see a study that says that.
If, uh, the company comes up with something historic and we can submit it, what we looking for and how we can use it?
No, that's not, that's not it. If, it's not, we're not looking for historic, we're trying to prove that if we do have some, that our project is not going to impact them. So if we have, let's say, um, um, you know, a pyramid somewhere in the City of Dearborn Heights, that what I'm applying for today, you know, under the DWSD, is not going to impact that pyramid or not do anything for it, or, um, historic. Actually, I thought we had one.
We have the school.
The Ford, the Ford, um...
And the cemetery I'm born.
But apparently, it's not, it's, it's not. So anyway, we, we never had an evaluation done. And since every, every time we apply for grant, whether the drinking water or clean water or whatever, any grant I apply for, they keep asking for the SHPO study, and I'm like, guys, we...
What about River Oaks?
That's, that's what I, I had my, but apparently they lost their, um, designation when they changed the roof. They changed the roof with a shingle, normal asphalt.
Like how much a stable?
Yeah.
There was how many floors old home, or is Mr....
No, no, it was a stable.
The stable, I, we're gonna, we're gonna have a full citywide, uh, study, um, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll have, we'll have an answer.
So this is one time.
One time to be used for any, any application, so we'll keep a copy and use it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Corporation Counsel Perrinha, Wayne County Prosecutor's Office.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind motion twenty-three-dash-one-four-eight to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the attached revised Third Amendment sublease agreement and the Fourth Amendment sublease agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan and seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is comments from council members. Councilor Chair. Councilman Bedun.
Thank you so much. Uh, I have quite a few things here that I wanna discuss, uh, and so I just wanna put this on the record. First and foremost, I wrote it down, water bills, water bills, water bills. Um, there's definitely something going on with the Dearborn Heights water bills, and I'm not trying to scare nobody, I'm not making any accusations. Um, there is, please, sir, Susie, there is something going on. And I'm gonna tell you how I know this. I have six unique homes that have all six with the same exact issue. And when I was asked what is wrong with all six of them, I was told that it could be potentially, uh, a water leak, it could be some construction done on the house, it could be their sprinkler system, it happened from the spring. So what I did was I compared last year's spring and this year's spring. What is the difference that it went up double in those two months in this year, but it didn't happen last year? And so, not to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm, I'm just gonna say that there was an employee who was hired by Robert Heth, and I said, ma'am, what is going on here? She doesn't know who I am at this point. And she said, honestly, I can't tell you, but I'm told to say that you potentially have a water leak, you know, this or that. And, and, and I sat with this lady, said, you're told to say this? I said, do you know if there's this issue? And she said, no. I said, so why are you saying it? She said, because most likely it's this. I said, well, what if it's a broken meter? What if it's, it's not calibrated? What can you do to justify this? And she said, I don't have the answer. Now, yeah, there may be one or two scenarios, ten scenarios, but I can tell you something, there's something going on with these water bills, and it's not okay. Uh, I have a resident who's a doctor, well, well, you know, makes a lot of money. He's a doctor, he's quite a few money. He said, Mo, what the heck is going on with my water bill? His water bill is twenty-two hundred dollars. So I looked into this, I reached out to the controller, and the controller had agreed. She said, Mo, I can't tell you what's wrong with it. There's, we, you know, this is maybe a test we're gonna do for a meter. But then I was told, we, we don't have the capabilities or the financials to be able to check every single residence water meter that has an issue. So then now we're saying, as a municipality, that we're gonna penalize these people and say that, well, we can't test your water meter because it's too expensive on us, so just pay the higher water bill. It's not an answer. It's not the answer that I wanna hear, it's not the answer that I, that I should be able to tell to a resident. And, and really, this is something that I think ultimately, and I had this conversation with my colleague, um, we need to have an investigation on our water, water meters or our water department, and I don't mean the employees, let me make that very clear.
Water billing, to be specific.
Water billing needs to be investigated and not by somebody from those, from our city, not from the administration or from this council, and not from an entity that's approved by our, by our administration. It needs to come through our council. This council here needs to adopt something where we need to figure out what the hell is going on with our water bills. And I don't, and I don't believe, let me make something very clear. I don't believe that the administration or anybody in the water department is doing something that they feel is like, oh, we're trying to get the residents, no. I think there's something that none of us know is happening. Our water meters could be calibrated wrong, which it's counting, which somebody has told me, I think it was the councilman. It was counting at a faster rate, so the councilman, this is our Dearborn Heights Council president was being charged.
Not while I was on council, before I was on council.
But, but, but this is somebody who is...
No, he doesn't pay.
Yeah.
You get my email about the water bill?
Please, sir.
You didn't even answer me.
Please, please.
Still waiting for your email.
But, but I want you guys to know, there's something going on with our water department, and I, I'm asking that this council body figure this out. And it's not to point the finger on anybody, so at home, if you can't point the finger at the council and you can't point the finger at the mayor of the administration, because we really don't know what's going on. And I truly believe that. That's what I have to say, so water bills is top of my priority. And I, and, and, and I would like to, I would like for this body to adopt something where an outside third-party investigation happens on Dearborn Heights' water billing, plain and simple. I can, I have six pieces of evidence, which Roger, I'm gonna bring to you. Six people, pieces of evidence, and nobody can give me an answer for it. That's what I have on the water bills. Secondly, we just approved in July or August, whenever we did our budget, for CDBG employees to get a raise. That's not paid through taxpayers' money, even though it is, but it's through federal funding that's given to the city. It's been one year, and they still have not received their raises. Because I picked up the phone randomly, I was actually taking a shower, and I said, I wonder if they got their raises. And I called one of them and I said, did you get your raise? They said, no. I said, thank you. I hung up, I told Sarah to give me a notification reminder to write it down today. So administration, can you please contact HR to approve, council to approve, to give them their raises?
Uh, it's awaiting the mayor's signature from what I understood last.
Okay, mayor, can you please sign it? Thank you. The next thing I have here, again, I don't even wanna have this discussion, I just, and I'm gonna go through these, I'm actually gonna take a picture and go through this every week until these are done. The next thing I have here, Mr. Deep, two years ago, we had a discussion about public safety. A year ago, a little over a year ago, we lost a child in our community by the name of Joey Smith. God rest his soul. We've been told that you and our honorable police chief, we're gonna look into, and we're gonna do TIA studies, and we're gonna look into more studies, and we approved more things, and we looked at different things, and we've approved and paid and approved and paid, here we are. We are in, we're Christmas time, and we have still not honored Joey Smith's death in Dearborn Heights. We still have not seen any adjustments across any of our schools, other than painting the cross paths, because we were furious that it needed to be done. So I don't know who needs to speak to me on this, but I would like an update and I would like something immediately. Um, and, and I, and I, and we need to stop sleeping on the wheel here. The next thing that I have here, that I'm gonna pull up my phone, uh, that I've had a few residents reach out to me. And I, I don't want to do this. I, I really don't want to do this. I'm thirty-three years old. I know I seem young, but I'm gonna keep it professional. Uh, I'm actually gonna keep it very professional, especially because I respect my elders. And I want you guys to know that if at any point I feel like I'm being too emotional, I want you to know that no matter what, I respect my elders. And I respect every single person on this council, including the mayor, including Roger, including every single person in the city of Dearborn Heights. But I've received a few messages from family members who are watching on Zoom and from friends who are watching on Zoom that one of our council members, uh, while I'm speaking, is speaking under her breath and, and basically, uh, I don't know what she's mumbling while I'm speaking. But I want you to know, uh, that's very insulting. It's wrong. And I'm gonna respectfully ask you to please not do it again. Because when you're speaking or reading something or giving out anything, I'm not mumbling anything out of my breath. And if you would like, I can share the messages that I've received over the last two meetings, uh, at the, over the last two meetings. I didn't say now. No, no, no. And I wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act. Just wanna make that clear. So when you're doing that and you're insulting me, you're also insulting the residents that also voted for me. So I'm gonna ask you to please not, you can insult me. Don't insult the residents that voted for me. Leslie here.
May I respond to that?
You could do it during your time, ma'am. I'm still speaking. Leslie here, uh, Chief Hart. Chief Hart recently had a heart attack while he was at his desk here in Dearborn Heights. And he came back to work. This is a man that left two different jobs. He's here in Dearborn Heights. He's taken a lot of heat, taken heat from me. He's taken heat from councilman members here. Taking heat from, from some of our residents. And we all may not agree on what Chief Hart's uh, administration approval and non-approval, and what we may like or may not like. But for somebody that's in this office that's in Dearborn Heights, I'm gonna feel for this man. And he had a heart attack, not because he was unhealthy uh, uh, at his age, but he had a heart attack, I think, because of the amount of stress that he is under. And I don't just speak on, 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 on our, our police chief Hart, but I'm also speaking, um, to every single person here, from the mayor, Roger, Ali Deep, Director Lawrence South, our very honorable council members, our very beautiful clerk and our staff and our treasurer. This job is not easy, guys. It is so not easy. I'm, I have so much gray hair. My older brother is forty, thirty-nine years old. He's got no grace. And he said, how did that happen? I said, I'm on the city council. You're a teacher. That's the difference. Uh, but I want you to know that this job isn't easy. And sometimes it's easy to take your emotions out on somebody, uh, like our chief. And I want you to know it's gonna cause to somebody's health. And remember, we're all in this uh, for public service, because we care, because we want to do good. Uh, so, so we really need to kind of step back a little bit. I know emotions can be high. I'm the most emotional person, I think, on this body. Um, but, but I, but I have good intentions. I really do. And, and so to the chief, if you're watching this, really, I'm sorry that that happened to you. I'm, I'm, I'm praying for a speedy recovery. I'm praying for good health because your, your family, your children should never have to endure you having a heart attack here in Dearborn Heights. Uh, regardless of our political stance or how things we agree on or disagree, your health comes first. Uh, and then I just have these two last things that I'm gonna keep it very short and sweet because I already spoke on it. Uh, and I'm sorry that I'm, I'm going a little longer, Council Chair. The Eaton Senior Center Director, uh, position is coming up for December seventh. Mayor, I'm looking at you respectfully and please asking you from the outmost of my heart, please help figure this out. Let's just get this position full-time. Let's go through the civil service program. And let's stop begging for the same thing that we've been asking for, for a little over a year or a year and a half. And then I know our Director Lawrence South's gonna speak out on it, but December fifth is going to be our tree lighting ceremony. Um, it's a lot nicer of a tree this year. Bring out the family, bring out, you know, the children. It's, it's a great time. I attended it last year. Um, I know this choir with the Crestwood staff and students and band. And she's gonna speak a little bit about that, but I just want to say, please, guys, come out, bring your family, bring your children, bring your, bring your dogs. I brought Sophie last year. Uh, it's a really, really good time. Uh, and, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Six o'clock, I believe, or six thirty. I believe. She'll, she'll verify right now. It's at City Hall, at City Hall. Any other council members with comments?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to respond to Mo's remarks. Uh, part of the problem is the fact that you yourself do not go through chair. You just flirt things out and you do talk too long. And that is part of the problem that I'm having and so are others, Mo.
Thank you, Council Chair. That still doesn't make it okay to speak under your breath while I'm speaking. And maybe you should speak a little more and I'd speak less.
If I could, I would.
Go through the council chair and you can.
Mo, that's enough. And your tapping against the, uh, the paneling is not really good for the rest of us either.
Yeah, let's, if there's a problem, maybe people can address it beforehand amongst themselves. And I just hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Let's all remember, um, council persons, we're the policymakers. And, uh, some friction between the administration and the council is, is healthy. Uh, checks and balances, but, um, let's not get into a situation where, uh, we don't have goals and look towards our vision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a little bit from me, um, Councilman Bedun. Popped it off my nose, not messing. Um, but I had some very, very serious concerns towards the administration in terms of the water billing department. I know I talked about it many times before. I even asked for it in multiple budgets that more people be added for water billing. We are, that is just way too short-staffed. You don't have enough people there. And on a consistent basis, when residents call, they can't get through, not because they're not answering the phones. I've been there. I've watched them. There's just, there's not enough people there. There's not enough water meter readers. I know Director, you said you got a solution to this. I hope so. But then additionally, uh, G, um, G W, Great Lakes Water Authority, so G L W A raised the rates, I think it was either two point seven or three point seven percent. Which one was it? I'm, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, so just under four percent, three point seven percent. But yet the water bills, I'm hearing it from way too many customers are just way too high. Consistently having that problem. And, and, and we had a lady over here a couple of weeks back where she said she had an eight-some thousand dollar water bill. I've had, I had my own mother call me and complain to me about the water bill being too high. I had at one point a water bill that was way too high. And, and, and the problem that we're having, that residents are having, they get a water bill, five thousand, four thousand, six thousand. Even if you take those out of the equation that Councilman Bedun mentioned, there shouldn't be, you know, where they used to pay three hundred and four hundred and now they're paying five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred. And then the dilemma they've gotten, I as a real estate agent, I can tell you, we go through it all the time. We're leaving the burden, just like Councilman Bedun said, on the resident to prove that they didn't use that much water. It's impossible. It's impossible to prove that I, Mo, John, Julie, or Susie. You, you have to be called Susie. All right. Or Susie says, you know what? I've got a bill for nine hundred dollars. And then the water department says, well, maybe you've got a leak. Okay, they bring a plumber in. I've had this conversation with eighty thousand residents. They bring, they bring somebody in, they check it out, there's no leakage. And then they say, well, that's what was used. How, I, they're left with an imposs- impossible task. Is there, I've got a question. I'm gonna ask you just direct. Is there something going on where the water bills are way too high? Is it the meters?
Can, can I, can I, hang on. So I'm not in the water department.
I'm frustrated. But, but at the same time, for administration, we're gonna add more employees there. I've been seeing that for years. It's way understaffed.
I hear the same complaints, trust me. And, and we have looked at, all right, so let, let me start from, I'm trying to assist in this issue, but I'm not in the water department. But here's what I do know. Uh, as a water operator, what we usually do, what I usually do is, um, um, compare commodities purchased to commodities sold. If we have issues like, uh, Councilman Bedun was saying, that the meter is running too fast and we're charging ten thousand gallons for a two thousand gallon consumption, then when I do, is every time I do the, uh, pumpage report, and this is required as, as an operation. So I oversee the water operator that you guys hired, you know, the Hennessy operator. So when we do a pumpage report, I compare purchased commodities versus sold commodities. So if I buy a million gallon and sell two million, then I know I have an issue, like you said. My meters are all screwed up. They're, they're registering more. But I'm, I'm within the industry standard. From that level, I'm with less than ten percent. So there are losses. We lose ten percent, but that's considered acceptable. From that real high level, I'm buying a million, I'm selling nine hundred and ninety thousand. I know I'm not selling two million, so I'm not overcharging people. The issue with the cost is related more to water sewer treatment as opposed to cost of water. Now, as you know, we had issues with our sewers. We, we, we belong, and that was the first task the mayor gave me when I came to the city, is look at the sewer, uh, um, um, issue that we're having. Because it is the largest, it, it's, it's, it's large. So that is a large expense to us. So we've looked at the, uh, the, the city and how the sewers were, um, billed and paid and how they were calculated. Meter, uh, uh, water is easy in my way, because our waters have meters. The six master meters that I just mentioned to you, they measure how much water I buy from Detroit. So I know how much I bought for the entire year. I can add it up. And I know how much we sold for the whole year, and I can compare the two. So that's, that's easy. Sewers, on the other hand, are not easy, because one, they're not metered. And to make it more, more complicated, this city has two outlets to two different entities. I spent the morning today with DUA and the afternoon with Rouge Valley. Um, so today was my sewer day. Um, but literally, so the, so the, the, the. No, I smell funny. Yes, I smell funny. But, 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 but basically, what, the challenge we had all these years, and I was, I wasn't trying to recreate anything. I wanted to understand. Because my previous life, I had a simple issue, like Dearborn has one outlet and one inlet. So they compare how much water they buy and how much sewer they send. One, real easy. In our case, it wasn't. So what I found out, and this is the mayor initially had mentioned, that wait a minute, if the sewers are not metered, how do you bill me? And the answer I received, because you guys put me as the tech operator, no, on the technical committee for the DUA region. So I spent that year asking the questions. Well, the answer was, you guys report, you, the city, report how much you pay. Well, hell, how do we report that? If I buy, if I send sewer to two entities, how do you guys report them? And I have no meters on the sewer. So what I was told is that we, and I did some investigation, we basically report water purchased and we pay sewers to both entities. So we screwed up. And that was the case since twenty fourteen. So this is when the mayor indicated, I went and approached them, since I'm on the technical committee, guys, you guys have been rape, you know, raping us for a number of years. While the, the, the bylaws of this entity state, you purchased, uh, uh, ownership in the DUA system. You, Dearborn Heights, became part owners of that DUA system, twenty fourteen, I believe, or whatever it was, twenty fourteen. So what we're trying to do now is resolve the cost, the root cause of why the cost is so high. So they acknowledged overcharging that entity. So now I'm moving on to Rouge Valley. So what we did in order to find out, since I have no meters, is to start a coding system on the accounts. So all the accounts on the one end that have, that go to DUA have a D next to them and Rouge have an R next to them. So now we can calculate them. So we have some credit coming back for the three years. This is gonna help. This is gonna help, but it's not the main, main picture. Now, the meters have issues, absolutely. Now, uh, I met with a company that is going to replace our meters. And I, I, when it's my turn, I guess the announcement, I'll go over it.
But how does that answer, okay, so I had it at my house. I had a bill probably about ten years ago, twelve years ago, I don't remember. And I received a bill of like two thousand dollars. Nothing had changed in my house. And I knew as a Realtor that they say, okay, well, check the meter. Bring a plumber. I brought a plumber. I checked the meter. There's nothing wrong. I came back to City Hall. There's nothing wrong. Well, you must have spent it. It's an impossible task for a resident to prove how much water they spent. So then now, you're talking about where, how much you buy versus how much, you know, we're paying for. Yeah, but that could very easily be diluted, no pun intended, if it's one resident that has a bill of three hundred dollars and now it's like three eighty-five or four eighty-five or five fifty. It's gonna get diluted in that, those numbers that you're talking about. It's impossible for somebody to prove it.
You missed the point. If, if the meters were reading too much, then my pumpage report should so, should show a two million gallon sale on the purchase of a million gallon. This is what I should see if all my meters are faulty. If the meters are faulty, then I'm selling.
I'm not saying they're all faulty. But what I am saying is, we've got a department, specifically water billing. Yeah, I've said, it's not your fault, but I'm stating it, and I've stated it a million times, way understaffed. Number two, when a person has a problem with their water bill, it's almost rarely told or they tell them, well, you gotta pay to have it calibrated. For those that are not familiar with it, with it being calibrated, they take the water meter. That's why I finally ended up doing it on my house. I said, there's something wrong here. I said, I don't know what the hell to do, how to do it, but there's something wrong here. I had it sent out. They sent it out to the, the company. They calibrated and they see basically moving faster. Now, it's not gonna move that much faster, but even if it was a half a percent faster, it's gonna increase your water bill if it's moving too fast. But then again, we don't have enough people working in the water billing. So when somebody calls, they can't get somebody. Somebody shows up to the door here, they're gonna wait and wait and wait in line. There's something wrong when G W A raises the bills three point seven percent. And suddenly we have water bills. They used to be four hundred dollars and now they're five fifty and five eighty and six hundred. Look, honestly, mine, I, it goes up a hundred bucks, I didn't know. My wife pays it. But for most people, a hundred bucks and fifty bucks is problematic. All I'm telling you, all I'm telling you, Director, is just like it happened in Detroit. They kept telling people, no, your assessments are correct. Everything is good, everything is good, everything is good. And then eight, ten years later, they say, oh, we way overassess people for years and years. Meanwhile, people lost their houses to foreclosure. What I'm saying here is, we've got a problem and we as a government have to address this issue. How? I don't know. I'm not the expert.
Council.
Yes. Your, your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Cause I had a client that had a huge thirty-seven thousand dollar water bill in a short period of time, right? How the sewage hadn't been added in, sewage costs. And that's not what Council Chair addressed. I, I understand the meters and I understand that, that we need more workers. But the sewage cost, when we did point eight three for the runoff from rain and other things added on to bill, as well as previous court cases we've had, where we've had settlements and stuff, I believe, are also added on.
So, so there, there, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Council Chair. There are issues. Uh, and we're, we're starting to get into it more now that we actually believe we have a solution for the funding. That was, that was the critical part, because as you, we'll go through the details. I have numbers to show you that we actually have a way to, to address it.
Okay.
Um, but on the staffing side, all I wanted to, to tell you is, on the bigger level, we do track pumpage report to, to check to see if we're actually overcharging people for water. Again, I, I'm buying a million, I'm selling nine ninety, I'm within the ten percent losses, you know, leaky, whatever, fire department. I'm not, I, I haven't seen a number that will be so scary, like I sold two million, but I only bought a million, you know that.
But we've also, you just told me they're backtracking three years of payments for overcharging us. And that's money not for us. Those are residents.
Yes, I agree. I agree. But again, I wasn't here. I'm, I'm, I'm only discovering issues. You know what?
By the way, this is not you. We're just venting to you.
I, I know, I know. But just so you'll know, actually, I took it out on our, uh, financial people. When I found that out, I took it out on my financial people. I told them, shame on you for not doing, you're doing audit. Why didn't you audit it? Why? You know, and, 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 you know, because, because they, they're the expert. They're the one that set my rate. So again, I'm not trying to look back. I'm trying to correct things that were, that were there.
But, but here's where my ask is. My ask is, I think we should have somebody in that department where, when a resident comes in and says, look, I've got a problem with this water bill. It's six hundred and eighty. I had no change in my house that I'm aware of, and it was always four hundred dollars. There's, if you don't mind. So there's been an increase of, you know, thirty, forty, whatever it is percent. We should have something in our department that says, you know what, sir? Let me have that looked into. I'm gonna send Bob, Joe, Julie, or Susie, I'm gonna send them over to go ahead and test your meter or figure out what's going on and come back. But what we do instead, we say, you must have a leak someplace. I don't know what happened. Prove you didn't use that amount of water. It's an impossible task.
If you recall, Council Chair, a while back, I told you that our meters are prehistoric Flintstones type. I have to go to eBay to find parts. Okay, so what we did, and this is now that we actually are proceeding with a water, water meter replacement, I met with the vendor that is, you know, we met a couple of times with the vendors. And I asked for some of these things. What do we do in the meantime? If I can't buy, buy parts or do repairs on the meters? And they do have solutions. Now, the answer may be, and again, I, I haven't presented much to you because it's still work in progress now. Uh, but the answer might be to have, um, um, a replacement or a process to verify, onsite verify through a company, you know, the vendor that we use. We have a vendor for those meters. We have a company that supplies those vendors.
Residents gotta pay two hundred dollars at that point.
I didn't say the resident to pay it, but if we have issues like, I have, I have a gentleman that brought me in a forty-five hundred dollar bill for two months.
But there's a lady that came in, as I mentioned earlier, that came in with an eight thousand dollar bill.
I don't know.
There's, there's also, there's also an issue where they give estimated, estimated, estimated. It happened to my own mom. If, if estimated, 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 and then suddenly they say, well, because we have nobody to go read the meter, and then they say, oh, we read it. Oh, now you owe X amount of dollars.
You're not talking about outer drive, uh, outer drive mansion? Okay.
No, they're living in a mansion.
No, I, I didn't say names. It's just a street. Because that, that, that mansion was, um, um, correct. It just wasn't read for a number of years. But in any case, uh, um, we do have, we do have a possible solution.
Okay, I know you're gonna present later, so I'll allow you to do that. Okay, any other council members with comments?
Thank you, Council Chair. Since, uh, Mr. Deep is, can you give us an update on the master plan? I know you sent it for bids and.
So, so part of the grant, uh, uh, scout that we, we hired, um, his comment was, uh, if you wanted to finance, the way we, we, we financed the master plan, we put it out to bid as an R F P with city money. You put that in the budget, you guys approved it. You put that in the budget, you guys approved it, we put it out to bid. I've got a company, we did not award the company, because according to the scout guy, if you want a federal grant, you need to go with an RFQ, qualification-based federal guidelines, which we didn't, because I wasn't using federal money, I was using budget money. So it needs to be re-advertised. And this is, with all the stuff that's taken place, that's on my plate, that's part of my winter slowdown, it will be going back out using federal guideline. Now, I did talk to the successful bidder to see if they will honor it. But because of the requirements, the federal requirements with, you know, pay and all that, it will cost more, but it will be eligible for grants.
Okay.
So it will be read- Any idea how long it's gonna take?
This, it'll be all this winter. We have a lot coming up this winter, because we have a lot of construction.
Thank you, Mr. Devis.
Councilman Abdulhaq? Are you more? Very glad.
Actually, I have a request for the, from the administration, I don't know if we can ask the mayor. For the claims, can like every director who sign up on the claims to approve the claims, can they write their name? Because it's really hard to write, to read the signature, so that way we know exactly who to reach to.
So it's not like sign and print their name?
Yeah, just to write their name next to the signature, is that possible?
I'll look into it.
Oh, thank you, another.
I gotta see.
Just write their name.
Roger, can you send an email, please? While the mayor is looking.
Not yet.
And, uh, I wanna, there's an announcement from the assessor's office about the poverty application that needs to be submitted to the assessor's office by the 4th of December, where the board of review will be meeting on the 12th. Hopefully, you know, residents will have an answer before the, within a couple, two, three weeks. And for the veterans, for the exemption as well, they need to submit their application for 2023 by the end of December. But for 2024, they can submit at any time.
They have to be 100% though.
I mean, whatever the criteria is, I'm just saying for the application, though, I don't know.
Why I?
But, um, finally, just talking about emotions, when the corp counselor was debating about the credit card, I felt like he's debating the corp counsel credit card for some reason.
I don't have.
What's that?
He was at a preliminary exam this time.
Point of order. Thank you, Council Chair, Moussa.
Okay.
Councilman Abdulhaq? I have three issues. For Rick, if he's online on Zoom.
I haven't seen him.
Or the corporation counsel. What is the distance between any hookah to be open in Dearborn Heights? What is the minimum distance between the hookah place and the school?
I think we looked at it, I have to revisit it, but we were looking at it in terms of also a bathing, a bathing, which is a big issue, we've decided on the cover operation for businesses in store. So I'm still looking at it with the police department, but I don't have the right answer right now. I would like a chance to get it.
Can, can we have an answer within 15 days?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What is the ruling?
What is the minimum distance by law, state or city, to have a hookah place from close to a school? Hookah bar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hookah lounge.
The second thing is, I really feel that the city council need to have their own council. As needed, I would like to set $50,000 from the general fund. And the city council will recommend somebody who will be hired by the corporation counsel, because that's how the charter is designed. And it will be on need basis, because sometimes I feel, and I'm going to be very direct, that Mr. Rajar given us his opinion, which we may not agree with it, and we like to have a second opinion. And it will be a good practice, we've done it before, it's not the first time, to put $50,000 specifically for the city council to have second opinion on issues, if they need to.
Are you saying no emotional opinion?
Uh, I can, basically-
If there's emotion, you have to suspend the rules.
Suzie asked to suspend the rules, so I'm going to ask to suspend.
I'm gonna suspend the rules.
I'm going to ask to suspend the rules for a reason. We have passed resolution to give money to the employees, police, and fire. And we approved it 7 to 0, I believe. And I have asked the HR to create a list of people who worked during COVID from day one until the governor announced, you know, that COVID is over. And until now, I haven't heard anything, even we have the money, and even we're coming up on holidays. So I'm asking to suspend the rules, so I can put a motion to give the police and fire $1,500 each to those who worked during COVID, and they were on the, actually on the payroll. And every other employee who was on the payroll, not the retiree, not the elected officials, who was on the payroll during that time, to give them $1,000 before Christmas time. I ask to suspend the rules.
Support.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Abdulhaq, seconded by Councilman Paydun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, now you're gonna make your motion.
Okay, I make a motion that the city council direct the administration to basically distribute some of the money which was allocated by the city council from the ARPA money, from the general fund, to the police department, fire department, and the general government employees at the rate of $1,500 for the police and fire personnel who were on the payroll during the period of COVID, which is from day one until the governor issued statement that COVID was over. And $1,000 for every employee who was on the payroll during the same period.
Councilman, is that with the people, with employees still in the city, employed?
Yes, those are who still employed in the city, definitely. And that will exclude all the elected officials.
Okay, but I think you should amend that, including their subject to this being within the ARPA guidelines.
Council Chair.
That's allowed.
Council Chair.
One sec, just one sec.
That will come from the money, $7.2 million, which we put in the general account. And it, it can be used for anything you want.
Right, it was the original-
So there is no, no conditions or terms or any restrictions on that portion of the money.
That, the, um, the original, I guess it was a resolution that I submitted, was to take $700,000 out of the unrestricted part of the ARPA money. So it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to meet any guidelines, as far as-
There's no such, Councilman?
Yeah.
All ARPA is restricted.
Yes. There's ten-
No, there's nothing unrestricted about ARPA.
Quick question.
Yeah, it didn't have to, it didn't have to follow any, any COVID guidelines to distribute this money.
This, this would be for employees who work-
It's already been, it's already been, uh, the resolution's already passed. One second, one second. The resolution- And then we'll go to you. The resolution was passed to set aside $700,000 of the unrestricted or the non-trackable ARPA money that's, that the city has, to set aside for this, this reason. That was back about four or five months ago, we did that. Right.
Council Chair.
Okay. Corporation counsel.
Yeah, there's, no, I'm just saying, ARPA money is all tracked to the dollar. So there's no such thing as untracked or un-something.
And there's an untracked.
So all, all ARPA money is like, it has to be, or it's restricted to whatever guidelines ARPA has. And the other things with, the comment was mentioned, with the employees that work during that time, it's really hard, because everybody was getting paid. If they're here, or if they're not here, they were getting paid. So it was hard to track who was actually here. So that's something that our attorneys actually working on, trying to create a document that they have to attest that they were actually working. Because as of right now, there's no, there's nothing that tells us, hey, this person was working during that time. Because they were all getting paid.
Okay.
I can amend my motion to make the $1,000 for the, all the employees who were on the payroll during that period.
Except for the ones that left, the city.
Except the ones who left, they were not going to get anything. And this comes from the $7.2 million, which is unrestricted in the general fund.
Okay. Any other discussions on this?
Oh, I applaud Councilman Abdulhaq's passion for the employees. I do know that a lot of the employees, because buildings were closed, they got paid and they stayed at home. But I think it's per se, it, it, that's a violation of use of the ARPA money. Terms sometimes used as backfill, I remember I asked David Sabuda about this, and he, so, let's say, to redo the sewers, it's gonna cost $5 million. And so we use the ARPA money for that, so the city's got an extra $5 million. Use it to backfill, but I, I just don't know that it's gonna, gonna fly.
That's why all of it can be negated by what I added on, on addendum to this particular motion, subject to being within the ARPA regulations and guidelines.
I have a question, Council Chair.
Are you asking, because I, I apologize. You're asking, wouldn't it be wiser to have a study session on this, to make sure? With HR present?
Yes.
And their information?
And no.
And Plant Moran?
Yes, at face value, but no, because we discussed this and approved it, that was a four, five, six month back, maybe longer? So, that's where it becomes problematic, like, why are we now signing, doing a study session on it versus to have somebody from the administration come back and say that this can't be done?
I thought it was emergency workers during the COVID. Now, if you're changing it to say all workers, then what's the criteria? That's what a study session would focus, I'm not saying don't.
But, but, but I'm, that's what I'm saying. In the same token, I'm asking, why didn't the administration come back, five, seven month back, saying, this can't happen because X, Y, or Z? Nothing happened, so there's presumption that everything's moving along forward. And based on what he's bringing up right now, it doesn't seem like anything-
Well, I, I disagree with the presumption that nothing's been happening. First of all, you have to go through all the records that have not been kept properly with all the people who are here, to go back to 2019. That's what you have to ask HR, and talk to HR in a study session. What records do you have? What's missing? Have you been looking, which they have? Have you been checking everything else with the previous chief of staff, and where it was kept? With a previous HR director, their policies and procedures? Has that been checked in the meantime since she passed it?
But what I'm asking then-
And the answer would be yes.
Why would there have not been, if that's an important criteria, why would they not have been looked into in the last five, seven, four?
Why haven't been updated? Who says it hasn't been? Uh, Council Chair, I think it has been.
Okay, one at a time, one at a time.
So, I mean, if you want specific questions, then have you sent any emails or anything?
No, I didn't, this motion just started right now with Councilman Abdulhaq.
Okay, so, that's what I'm saying, a study session will give you a chance to get the questions, because a lot of work has been done, going back over the records just to reassure you. And I've brought in to look at some of the things, which I'm doing, and looking at the policies and procedures, and the tracking system, 2019, 2020, 2021, which is what we're supposed to do, to act in, with the feasibility and the due diligence we need to act in.
Okay, Councilman Abdulhaq. Oh, I'm sorry, you were next, then, Councilman.
I just, I just have a couple of things to Roger. 2019, there was no COVID, it was in 2020, March of 2020 is when COVID started.
I got sick in 2019.
Well, again, and again, and then, and his thing is states-
I know March of 2020.
He says, anything that taken care of during the emergency, state of emergency, by the President of the United States, and the governor of, of, of the state of Michigan. And I think that's where he's going, based off the state of, uh, the state of emergency. But, but, but I wanna get back.
Yeah.
I'm not even gonna go back and-
I'm just going back to the staff, and the issues that led before it, because you have to put it all in balance.
March 14th of 2020 was the day of state of emergency for COVID.
Not saying that, but, but, but what you're talking about is employees. And were there any other issues with the employees beforehand? I don't know. But I, I know we've been checking, trying to find the records to ascertain who was here before March 14th, 2020. To September, and then October, and it was reissued again with the governor, and, and that period of time.
So, Roger, I know, I know, I know, I'm just, my, my, my update to this here all is, my discussion is, it was cuz you said 2019, I'm letting you know it started in 2020, number one, that's my first thing, number two, man, I lost my train of thought, but-
Can I continue?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I have it here. The, the $10 million, we spent 2.8 of it to go into our, um, no, to go into our budget, to fix our budget, when David Supura was our controller at the time, we used 2.8 million dollars. And the mayor, I believe, he brought these two young girls here with us, who told us, if you take the remainder of, you can put $10 million in the general fund, and if you do that, they can't tell you how to spend that money. This is what I was, we were told, look, I got a great memory, Roger. And two girls sat here, and they told us, if you spend, if you move $10 million total, you could do whatever, the 14 million is gonna be restricted. This 10 million that goes into the general fund, and I can tell you, I see some nodding heads in this room.
I was here when they said it.
And how about this, let me finish. She was wearing a Michigan sweater. All right? I, I, I have a very good memory of this. And we can spend that, we can spend that money, but regardless of if we can spend that restricted money or not, that money was given to residents for helping them, and it was helping our first responders. So, I don't need a study session on this. Thank you for the administration for looking into it. The councilman's got a resolution. This man passed a resolution over here, and we still have not given any money. So, I mean, Roger, look, I'm gonna tell you this. Emotions are high, we've been talking about a lot of transparency emotions, emotions right now. What I'd like to see is, not one council member here pick up the phone and call and say, what is the update on it? We've already requested on this update. You should be giving this council body an update and saying, this is what we have done so far. Because remember, we're part timers. You guys are the full timers, and if I have to stop my full-time job to ask you guys, if you're doing your job, it's not right on us.
Council Chair. You, of course, know this is not your own job.
Yeah.
If HR is working on it, that's all we can say, they're working on it. And what they're doing, they can update you on it, that's not-
Okay, Mayor, then Abdulhaq.
Okay, so, we are, we are working on it, you know, again, there's priorities. You know, we have all these union negotiation, contract negotiations that we've done, and it's just the last year or so. So, we only have two people in HR, and they are working a lot of hours to do everything that we need to do to run the city. You know, we have a lot of employees. So we are working on it, and I'm seeing email traffic that there are, you know, there's a lot of questions that are being asked. And again, we're trying to make sure who was here. And we, we, at this point, we don't know, because there was no records, you know? Everybody was getting paid, everybody. If they were at home for a whole year, they were still getting paid during COVID time. So there was nothing, nobody can come to us and say, yeah, this person was actually working. We're trying to figure out, you know, what's the best way to do it within the guidelines? And the $10 million, there were revenue loss. It was not, you know, again, it was not allocated for anything. It was went to the general fund, but there were revenue loss that you can do for ARPA.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdulhaq was next.
I'm sorry, but just before he gives, so, Mayor, if it's revenue loss, is this money spent, or is it still there?
I, I gotta check the accounts.
Can we, can we ask the treasurer? Council Chair. I don't know if we, we're just asking the treasurer, cuz the mayor just said-
Well, because, I mean, we have 46 accounts, so.
You know what, and every one of them is accounted for.
Good for you.
Okay? So that wasn't necessary, speaking of professionalism, right? And what's good for the city. So let's answer the question directly now, let's get back to business. So there's $10 million from ARPA that the council has already appropriated, and that was for lost revenue, and that is allowed under ARPA. So that money was to cover cash flow, if you recall, which was something I flagged for you more than one time. And that has been spent. Just to let you know, right now, you're, and by the way, I know this, cuz I check the accounts daily. General fund checking is sitting at $3 million. We have over $3 million in checks written since October. The, what I'm working with Plant Moran on, and accounts payable, is the reconciliation, because I need to know what's truly outstanding when I run a report. And I'm not seeing a true number. So I go off of what we've accounted for, what's already out. So again, that 3 million needs to be in checking account for those checks that are written. Now, your pool count, that's what we pay payroll out of, Blue Cross Blue Shield. On Monday morning, it was down to $400,000. That is extremely low. You had a $1.7 million payroll, but that's understandable, because there's payouts and things, whatever's going on that happens in November. But we did do an inter-fund transfer on Monday as well, and that brought 1.5 million into the pool account. But keep in mind, we have two payrolls coming up. I just paid 700,000, close to 900,000 for Blue Cross Blue Shield payment for December. Again, clearly, I know the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you all set?
No, I'm not.
Okay, you guys are going to wrap. Go ahead.
Basically, just saying we have no money.
Councilor Chair.
Yeah, and, and, and that's not true. I'd like to have our people say we're not. Thank you, sorry.
I really want to stick to my motion, because the money is there. My logic for making 1,500 for police and fire is those two departments, they work day and night, 24/7. And they deserve to be recognized. Now, for the general government, it is a push of a button to see the pay loss, who they paid during that period. They all have the names, they have their social security, they know who was getting paid. And that's the reason I made the $1,000, just to be fair for them. Even they were sitting at home, they, they didn't come to work. So, everybody can have a piece of what the government gave us. And this is unrestricted money. It can be used for anything. And I did talk to the HR director, and I asked her to go prepare a list, if possible, before the holidays. If we cannot take care of our people, our employees during the holidays, then there is no other time we should take care of them.
Okay, let's go ahead and put this motion to a vote.
Yeah, just real quick.
Last comment, please.
The, the resolution that I wrote that we passed, I didn't state anything here about COVID. I just stated that we want to show our employees that we appreciate them and we respect them, we want to maintain them. With all the, the hiring issues we had with people leaving and not being able to fill the positions, this was for an overall, I figured $700,000, because that was enough to give every employee in Dearborn Heights a $2,000 bonus. That, that's what it equaled. Not just to fire, I mean, God bless the fire and police. This was to show our, all of our employees how much we appreciate them. That, that, that was my resolution. Not just for COVID. I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, they can get it, but the original resolution was to give every employee that's, that, that's working the $2,000 bonus, or 1,500 or something like that, we can come up with them. But there was enough money out of 700,000 to give everyone a $2,000 bonus.
Okay.
Do you have the money somewhere? But did we say?
Um, I respect.
Yeah, we passed it.
I respect what you said, and I would love to give 700,000 dollars out. But for the sake of this position we are in, and the holidays coming up, I really think we should show our appreciation just during this holiday season.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take this motion to a vote. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Sorry. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council members?
Was there a second on that motion? I seconded it. You did, okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
David, I have one more comment, please.
Okay.
Before we get to the announcements. Uh, there is a, a law that states that political signs are supposed to be taken down seven days after the elections. It would have been the 14th. There are still quite a few still out there. And it's three weeks past the election.
Thank you. Next up.
Councilor Chair. Councilor Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I have comments. I have comments.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Or a comment from councilmen, but.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Councilor Chair. This, this, the, is the end of November coming up. It's the end of the Native American Heritage Appreciation Month. And we attended a couple of events and really, really special things, and God bless all of our Native Americans in, in our country. You know, is, is the HR director still here?
No.
That she left? Because I had, she was up there, I was going to ask her these questions. The last time I, I talked to the acting coordinator at Eaton Center, she stated that the position hasn't even been posted yet.
December 7th.
So, what, I mean, that's the first step. And it's been a month to post it? And we, we, we demand it, see, see, you know what? I should have a shirt that says, "We screwed up, because we're too easy. We're getting taken advantage of." We're looked at, we're looked on at, at, from appointed people, appointed by one person. We're looking down at, we're elected by thousands, thousands of people, we're looked down on. These people are appointed, we're elected, and they're not doing what we tell them to do. That's BS. We told them to have this position filled in 30 days. And it, and this was last month, but this has been going on for months. And now, it hasn't even been posted yet. Yet, there was a, a confidential secretary that went like this, bam.
Has it been posted?
And I don't even have to have a job, it was posted. I mean, it was posted?
No.
Oh, it's, oh my gosh. And, and, you know, and we need, we need people in the water department. I never get a call saying, hey, Tom, guess what? You know what? We need more people in the HR department for confidential situations. No, you get water bill issues. And that's where we need to, we need to hire people in the water department, not in the HR department. That's where our priorities are way off, screwed up. Because we're, we're, you know, we're to blame here, we're getting, we, we dropped the ball. We got to start taking responsibility that we were elected to do. And, you know, a confidential secretary, and this was, she negotiated the contract, and she got a person in her own department. I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know? And, uh, well, I'm getting all excited. You know, the water bills, I think you should look at your water bills, compare them as far as water consumption from month to month, compared to the sewage treatment costs. Because I think the sewage treatment costs, we'll see a big difference probably. And, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm outside here now, but, um, I'm going to ask Director Deeb, not tonight, but next, next meeting, to explain the big hot topic, the sidewalk at the car wash issue. We went on it once and for all. What happened with the sidewalk, who owned it? So, be ready for next meeting, so you can explain everything to us, okay? So, we all can, we can, all the, you know what? You, just look here, right there, the phone blows up about that sidewalk, and I'm sure everyone here has got it, too. And, uh, speaking of family things, Councilman Baydo mentioned the tree lighting. Tree lighting is a pretty cool thing to go to. I, I think Lawrence, Director Lawrence L. is going to mention, so I'll leave that for her. And one other thing about a family issue, I always talk about family. The, uh, the Home Depot, uh, hard, uh, Home Depot shop, stores, the first Saturday every month, they have the kids workshop, it's free. And then this Saturday is, is the one up on Michigan, Michigan Avenue in Dearborn Heights. You go there at 9:00 AM, you bring your kids in there, they, they build, they get two or three toys to pick from. You screw it, glue it, nail it, and then you go into another station to paint it. It's really a good time, but don't wear good clothes. They give you a, they give you a Home Depot apron that you get to take home. And then each project you pick, you get a pin that shows that picture of that project out there. You see kids in there, like my kids, they've got hundreds of pins on their aprons. We've kept the same apron for years and years.
What's the ages?
I'll be at Home Depot tomorrow, I got you.
Okay, yeah, the age, there's no age limit.
No, my son don't have like.
Yeah. I, I do it. I'm the biggest kid there. And other than that, you know, I, I had a great Thanksgiving. God bless everyone, my family, and God bless all my family and friends, and God bless all of us here at City Council and every administration, and all our employees in Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is announcements. Any announcements from the administration?
I did wait.
Let him go first, it's important.
Oh, go ahead. All right, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, um, now that you guys know most of it. I'm gonna do a quick update on where we stand financially on funding some of the capital improvement, uh, projects. So, we all talk about the CIP, the capital improvement projects that we have, and, and how we intend to fund them. As we, as you recall, the city's last capital project funding plan was completed in 2021. And that was when the city had sold the 2021 Capital Improvement Limited General Obligation Bonds. I hope that's the correct name. Thank you. So, we sold the 2021 Limited General Obligation Bonds to fund four projects that the city identified as operationally critical. And these projects included three CSOs out of the six the city currently has. So, we, we funded three CSO separations, um, as well as the replacement of all of our city's aging water meters system-wide, everywhere. So, commercial, residential, two-incher, four, six, eight, all of them. So, the CSO separation was a commitment that the city had made to the Department of Energy and Great Lakes of Environment. So, this is a signed commitment. So, when I came on board, I was looking at a, a signed commitment the city made with a deadline and a timeframe whereby you needed to. And based on that commitment, the, um, Eagle had issued our operating permit. We do have a National Polluter and Discharge Elimination System permit. And this permit is renewable every three years. So, we just got the newest one, just, we, we went back and forth, um, myself and, and Eagle on the timeline. But the previous one was signed before I came on board and it was handed. This is our actual operation agreement. And this is federal, it's not even state, that's the Clean Water Act. This is not something that you have an option, say, don't do this now, we'll do it later. It, it's not, doesn't do, doesn't work that way. Now, uh, two out of the CSO projects are now completed, two out of the three. And the third one is in the design and, and, um, design phase, and it is due to go out to bid this winter. So, when I say we have a lot, I just received the package preliminary, the plans and specs. I'm going through them, intended to be out to bid in January, and construction, uh, immediately in the spring, because I have to meet the deadline. And the last one completed by the end of '25. So, that, that, we are on schedule and we are funded. As I explained before, the construction estimate used to develop the budgets were pre-COVID. So, keep in mind that these actual costs for the three CSOs, um, at today's cost is estimated to use 22 out of the 25 million dollars. Okay? From the revenue, um, uh, and the bond, uh, 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 sales. In addition, the water meters' original allocation, to add to all this, the original allocation in the bond sale was $9 million. So, the project from the start should have been, um, uh, and still is estimated at $12 million. So, not only that we don't have enough for it, but we also underestimated the, the, the project cost to begin with. Now, the administration had decided early on, and this is the mayor's direction to me, not to seek any funding to address the short, additional funding, to address the shortfall to make these projects happen. Meaning that we're not selling more bonds or request operating budget increases, because that will be a direct hit on the rates, and we will drive our rates higher, because you have to pay those back. So, working independently, our, our own, and that was the challenge. And, and our funding scout that you guys approved, um, for the last, what, since June? We have, um, targeted every possible funding grant or low-interest, uh, uh, loan available to address the short, um, the short funding on the drinking water. So, we applied to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. We applied to the Clean Water State Revolving Funds, and we applied to other agencies that will address it. Now, we, we both have, and both of these funds have a 50% because of our classification as a city, that both funds have a 50% loan forgiveness. So, in addition to having a low-interest loan, they will waive 50% of that. So, we figured, at least I get 50% of the project funded through the government. So, the rest of it will be 20 to 40-year interest, uh, um, uh, low-interest loan. Now, these are very, very, uh, uh, extremely competitive loans, a- as you probably imagine. Most communities throughout the state of Michigan aggressively, aggressively apply for these, um, uh, loans. So, they make the best case, which is why I needed a, someone like a professional, um, um, law, uh, um, grant scout to make the case for us. All right, so, um, our efforts on many fronts have resulted in the following. And I'm going to state actual approved grants. This is in June. Number one, Eagle High Water Infrastructure, um, Grant to Develop Options for the Ecorse Creek. Uh, we, I presented that a couple of week, a couple of meetings ago. That, uh, to address the flooding, you know, more, uh, work, 306,825. Number two.
300, what was it?
Number two, Michigan Clean Water SRF, um, to partially fund, now listen to this, this is important. Partially fund the CSO number L41. Now, if you recall, CSO L41 is the one that I haven't built yet, which is part of my bond money. So, they approved me for 50% loan forgiveness at $3.1 million of the estimated, um, of 6.2. So, I've got that to offset some of the costs. So, what I'm trying to do are two things. One is look for funding to, to get more of my cost to the government. And two is to free up some of the grant, to, uh, uh, bond money, so I can use it on, on the last projects that it's not.
So, they said they're going to cover 50% of what you spend, so if it's.
We haven't spent it.
I, I know, I'm saying if you, if it's a $6 million job hypothetically, they're going to give you 3.1 on the $6 million.
I gave them an estimate, that's 6.2, and they said we'll cover up to 3.1 in loan forgiveness.
Okay, and this is, this is, okay.
This is the Michigan, um, uh, Clean Water CWSRF. Third, Michigan, third, third item, we have more. The third item, the Michigan Drinking Water, uh, C, uh, uh, State Revolving Fund. The clean, the drinking water i- is, is more, uh, more restrictive than the clean water. So, drinking water, um, the, the, now, this is for the lead line. If you recall, lead line replacement, we estimated, we have about, um, um, you know, 600 left at 2,000. We need about $13 million for the remaining. What we have done as a city so far is every year, we put a few thousand dollars in our budget. So, we pay for it under water sewer, which is part of what's hitting our water sewer rate. So, we went after government money for that, and we got approved for 51% of, um, of $13 million or $6.76 million, um, towards the lead line replacement. Keep those numbers, because I, ultimately, I, I track them for a reason. Lastly, CDBGDR infrastructure, uh, for the replacement of the Hip and Polk, um, street bridges, which is also part of our, uh, bridge inventory, that is, infrastructure cost to the city. They approved $2,91,000, which is 80% of the estimated cost of replacing those two bridges. Now, as wonderful as these grants are, with 50% grant, 50% to offset L41 CSO, um, I'm still short on funding the water meter, $12 million, because I needed nine, I have, yeah, so we're still short. So, um, I'll be short $6 million, because, you know, I have three and nine. So, we, um, we, we took that, that issue over to Eagle. And it is my extreme pleasure to announce that on November 17th, the state Eagle representative met with us, it was a Friday, and took all day convincing, and they decided to give us a full $8,318,332 dedicated, dedicated only for the water meters. So, because in the past, in the past, they said no water meter, that's the city cost. So, we spent all day with them, trying to get that, because they said this is city cost, you guys pay for it. Bonded, do whatever you want. But this time, with the supervisor present, and I have the minutes from that meeting, 8, 3, 8,318,332, don't ask me how they came up with that number, but I figured 8.3 is, is good enough for me. Because if I take that, plus the money we freed up from the half, the CSO L41, I actually believe that we are in the black. We have two and a half million surplus. So, we are taking a, a, a current shortage, big-time shortage of your, um, you know, bond money, and you remove it. What's good about this, this particular grant, out of all of them, is that this is 100%, no payback, no loan. It's 100%. And so, this is, the 8.3 is 100%.
That's amazing, you got a big, I got a big smile on my face on this one.
Well, I, I thought about you when I, when I was talking to them, actually, water meters, because the challenge, the challenge.
What kind of water meters? Can you explain to us?
No, 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 nothing from audio, nothing from audio.
So, so the, the, the issue was trying to find, find an alternative that doesn't have to be paid back. Because anything we do, now, it, it, you know, we, we estimated 12 million. So, immediately after we, we received that good news, um, um, so, just to give you an idea, this will bring our committed, to finish up, our committed grants so far this year, from June till now, committed, actual committed money, $20,576,157. These are committed grants, 20 million. Now, add to that, we also put our city on the, um, federal, um, uh, list of roadways, because we never, we've never been on that list. So, federal aids that come to counties, to cities, Dearborn Heights was never on that radar. So, we already have an approval for 2026 Cherry Hill for $2,514,000. That's on their schedule. So, in addition to that, that's about 20, $2,514,711. That is for Cherry Hill, Inkster 2. That's federal. Inkster to Gully, Inkster to Gully, that's ours. Two, two point, two and a half million dollars, so.
The north side.
I can give you, I can.
I believe you.
I believe you, the 2.7 million, now will that be asphalt renewal or will that be-
Two and a half, 2,514-
Is that concrete or asphalt?
Asphalt, it's asphalt. It is, it will cover the whole thing. We're going to repair it. So before I leave, before I leave it, so in addition to all the, these are committed, so what you have now, 23 and some change, those are committed. We're not done, we're still applying for FEMA, BRIC, Safe Street, CWSRF, MEDC, and other grants. We currently have pending 7 and a half million. So those are not, we haven't received the commitment yet. So the, 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 the direction this administration wanted to take is not to ask, when you ask about capital projects, I can easily put our needs, but when I first hired in, I did a high level, um, uh, capital improvement plan, took all the directors and figured out what, what's needed, end of useful life, and the numbers were, were just, just scary. They, you know, you're looking at 200 plus million dollars, and you, this is not going to be funded out of our operating budget, we have to find, we have to find alternate source. This is what, this is, these are the things now, these, just so you know, next up, these things come with commitments. So when you, when you see me asking you for, for, um, you know, um, historic, uh, structure, that's not me asking, that's because I'm using their money, so they have, they have requirements. So sometimes I disagree with them, but I have to do them. Um, so with these, uh, grants, I mean, there will be more deadlines that we have to meet, so there's, there's gonna, they all come with a deadline. And as you know, ARPA money project come with a deadline. So all of these things have to be completed in the next couple of years. So we are going to have extremely busy staff putting projects out, um, which is why the mayor was looking at, you know, restructuring, trying to get, you know, right people in the right place, right people in the right places to get the work done, because I really don't want to leave any money on the table. These things are badly needed by the city, um, we want to take advantage of them. And we already started, uh, uh, council, not with the suppliers on the water meters, I know how important that is. I'm asking, I'm asking them, I'm asking them for, so, so we did internal, uh, uh, review with our people, like what, I'm not a, a water meter type person, but, um, so I asked what need, you know, what they prefer, and then I got a crash course on, on understanding how we do business and how it should be done. So we're still doing the things that touchpad, go to the belt, horrible.
One question, quick answer.
I'm done.
Quick answer.
Yes.
When do residents anticipate to receive these water meters? That's all we want to know.
It's not going to be passed on to me, so do you, okay, so, so here's, here's, so how, how do you replace water meters? The city of Dearborn took three years to replace them, right? So, uh, just to tell you, because you have to maintain operation and billing, and then phase out the replacement. You also have lead line, so I just mentioned, I have $30 million for lead line replacement, which is a, which is a requirement. So you'd need to do both of them. Um, and we're working on it now. So I, I, I have, um, I will be bringing you, I will publicly bid the contract, uh, to, to facilitate the installation. We know the supplier, the supplier can sell me the stuff today, but I'm not going to take, uh, 28,000 meters and put them in the basement and lose them. We're going to get them as we need them. I believe the mayor's indication was to, to start with commercial immediately, because those are the easy pick, they're always open, you go in, replace them, and then start residential after. There's going to be a lot of water-
At the city, we install them or we have a third party?
Um, this, so, so I met with Dearborn, um, to see how they did it. So Dearborn, and, and I like their process, because they, 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 they were able to do three things at once. So if you recall, part of our ARPA money is dedicated for water main replacement, the real bad old water mains. And we also have lead service line, which is the pipe from the city line to your meter in the basement, being lead you need to replace, and you also have the meter replacement. So what Dearborn did, um, they actually hired one contractor with three subs. So they told them we needed this brand, Neptune, that's the meter we want, Dearborn, that's the meter we want. So that the prime contractor will go in, so you have to start by sending survey to find out where are the lead lines? We don't know, and Dearborn didn't know. Some, some houses have lead, some houses have copper. So they did a survey, and we, I already met with, my consultant is actually writing the survey, uh, uh, as we speak. I like to be out, uh, immediately on the, on the survey part. So we'll send it to resident to schedule a, a survey, five minutes, we'll go in, find out what your line is, so we can put on the list how many are lead. So when they did it, is they did one area at a time, so let's say divide the city into five areas. Block A will be out, and the contractor will do all three at the same time. The prime contractor will do the replacement of the water line, next contractor was, is directional drill with a copper to replace your lead, and then the third will just do the meter. I'd rather have it all contracted out, because part of it is we're moving to a smart meter. Our, our technology is so old, we're not using, no one uses that touchpad anymore, we can't even find parts for it. So we're going to a smart meter.
Okay. So this was the 12 million, was just wondering for the meters, not for the installation, right?
12 million includes everything.
With the installation?
And the collectors, and wifi collectors. Um, we, we're looking at wifi smart meters, so similar to your DTE, wifi collectors.
Okay.
Ideally though, so for, for your, for your question earlier, uh, you'll be able to do final reads for real estate sales without actually having to go with the collectors. Ultimately, that's our goal, but we have to take baby steps to get there. But we do have the money to do it now.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, that's a really hard act to follow there, um, but I would like to invite everybody to the tree lighting this Tuesday. Um, we've got, start at 6:30, it's right here at City Hall, we've got all kinds of free, uh, kids activities, um, we're going to have singing, we've got Riverside Choir, we've got, um, uh, the Crestwood High School Band playing, and, um, we've got all kinds of, um, things going on, so. Um, I would like to, uh, remind the officials to be up at the showmobile probably about 10 to 7, um, because we plan on starting on time, so, okay?
And Santa's here to visit us too, thank you, Santa.
Any special guests going to be there?
I thought you were calling Susie.
Director, director, are there going to be any special guests?
Anybody else from it?
Any special guests?
Myself, please.
Director, are there any special guests going to be there?
There is a special guest, um.
Santa Claus is going to be there.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Okay, any other, any other administration? Nancy, go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, yes, tomorrow night, Wednesday, uh, we are having our, our Ecorse Creek meeting, and that's at 6 o'clock at 3, 3, 3, 5, South Beach Daily. And then of interest, uh, Friday and Saturday, December 1 and December 2, the Eaton Center is having a flea market and a Christmas room, hot dogs, et cetera, bake sale, and that's on Party Road, and that's from 9 to 3, both days.
Thank you very much. Any other administrative comments? Yeah, none? Next up, we're going to go to public comments, each person will have three minutes, please state your city, street, and name, please.
Hassan Yun, first of all, I want to ask, the meter that you guys are installing, can somebody buy the meter? Can somebody buy the meter?
City and street, you want P O Box, say P O Box.
Okay, P O Box, P O Box 1132 at Dearborn, Michigan. Okay, I just wanted to ask you, uh, so for the, uh, the meter, can I get a question? Simple answer. Can resident say, I want a meter, I want to pay for it? Yes or no? Suspend my time.
I, I don't believe, you're talking about where you could want one right, it's all that you-
Right there, tomorrow, I want a meter, and a resident, because it's, my daughter calls me, 7 o'clock in the morning, she got a bill for 700, four months you guys didn't come out. Come on, man, four, five months, six months, this is ridiculous. My daughter rents, my daughter, what's that called? You know, these people that rent houses, you guys own houses, you guys can afford it, but what about these people, four, five, six months? What are we going to wait, another three years for my daughter to, I want, I want a meter, I want to put it myself. I want her to go to the house, I'll pay for it. This is ridiculous. Bills are three, there's only her and her husband. I live in a location, every two months I pay, you know how much my water bill is? Three people, 140. 140! I can bring the bill, put it here, and you estimate my bill, and you estimate how many people live in their house, and it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. My stepson stays by himself, $240 for that bill. You guys, I don't know what you guys are doing. This is ridiculous. I want to suspend the rules at this time because I've got two issues. First of all, I want the water meters, every water meter to be checked, because I'm tired of it. What about citizens? What about the old people on, on social security? What about those people? Who's going to pay their water bill? To be thrown in the street? You get people 3, 400 dollars, a lady showed me a $2,000 bill, we had to come up with the money, whole bunch of five, six people. Why? For what? My daughter's bills do, 700, I still didn't pay, I'll probably come to the city, and they charge it, and a couple, a, a week later, two weeks later, she gets another bill for another two months. Like stacked up, she saved 400, now I got to pay the rest. Why? For what? You're going to tell me it's not estimated bill? Suspend the rules, I want to talk about the, the gardens you guys, every year you guys put. I want nobody to, from any place, to put any garden that represents any kind of pre people. I don't care what race they are, I don't care what it is, I don't want no gardens in the summertime in Dearborn Heights. Does anybody want to suspend the rules? Yes? No?
Okay, clarify your statement again, that's why-
I said the gardens.
Right.
There's gardens that, a certain group of people come and put gardens in Dearborn Heights, and I says, I don't want no type of person to put gardens in Dearborn Heights if it represents a group of people, because Dearborn Heights does not discriminate, but we don't want a group of people to come here and just put what they want to put in the city of Dearborn Heights. Does anybody want to suspend the rules? Yes, or no?
No.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, wouldn't it be better to have somebody talk to you from the city council?
No, there's nothing to talk about. I want a Muslim, what's it called, garden, you're going to put it for me, or yes or no, Mr. Zair Abdalhaq? You want to talk to me, I'll talk to you, and I'll talk to everybody here. I want a Muslim garden, are you going to put it for me? I'm asking you. See, you guys are new, you guys do what you want over here, but when people speak out here, you want to silence everybody. So here, you will be silenced when you're over here. You see, that's what I'm talking about, you guys don't give a damn about, rants about anybody. You guys want that? No problem, you don't want to suspend the rules, no problem. But remember, when your kids see that, and your grandchildren see it, you guys are going to sit there and say, you know what? It's okay, right? Like, oh, you guys want to see ceasefire in Palestine, right?
Time's up.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, thank you. Next up?
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. Got a few questions I want to ask. Number one was, um, Director Vanderplau, again, he's a contractor, why is he responding to calls in a police car, and he has a city issued, a department issued gun on him? Corporal Counsel, I've asked you this question before. Is he certified police officer in the city of Dearborn Heights? His contract says otherwise, he's a full-time exempt employee.
I apologize, I don't remember when you asked me that question, because I try to get back to everyone that responds or asks me. I will look into it, this is the first time I'm hearing of it. Your question's bottom, however, wait a second, wait a second. You also foiled some, uh, some of the directors, their contracts, so that information-
I have this contract, I have it.
Okay, so your question is-
Is why is he driving a police car with lights on it, carrying a gun, responding to calls? Responding to calls when he's a contractor?
See, what I don't do is respond to hearsay, because you're saying, you're saying a statement I have not had any one chance to verify, I have any evidence of such, and told to you by somebody else, or you saw it yourself, I can't respond to that, but just send me an email, and please put the date and time, and then we can check the records, because there's videos and there's cameras about everything in that department, and we'll check it out for you.
Please do.
Yes.
Uh, second question is, um, the canines, we're getting three dogs, a neighboring city, Dearborn, has two dogs, why do we need three? That's question one, uh, part one of this question. Question two is, the same three officers I came up here and said before the interviews that they were going to get dogs, they were the three officers that got the dogs out of the seven that interviewed. And my question is, why wasn't there a, uh, somebody from canine training or with a canine units or anything in these interviews? And what criteria were these officers needing to meet for them to get these dogs? That's, uh, that's another question I had, if you can answer that once I'm done.
Well, what you could do, what you could do is identify how you're getting the information for an interview, if you were present, please let me know. If somebody gave it to you, please identify who that person was that gave you this information.
So you guys can retaliate against them?
Excuse me?
So the administration or the police department can-
I don't think I disrespected you, I'm asking-
It's, I'm, I'm being blunt, it's not, it's not disrespect.
You can be blunt as you want, I don't care.
Roger.
You can be as blunt as you want.
See, that's, that's why, um, sir, ask all your questions altogether, out of fairness, I'm not sure if the Corporation Council can answer these, or if America can answer, but obviously more likely-
There's nobody here from the department to represent, I know.
I will forward it.
More likely police department answers, that's what's going to be able to answer it.
My next thing is, the, oh, you know, I have nothing against the chief whatsoever, I've never bought up the chief and anything, but the chief once said a statement, I don't reward bad behavior, but yet, they're into favoritism. This being one, they hired a police officer that came from another neighboring city, they had an issue while on the job. The same officer that got hired is a friend of a director, but the same person that was involved with this officer in misconduct was not hired. Now, if you don't reward good, uh, bad behavior, that's, you're rewarding favoritism. That's my question. My, one more question to Mr. D. Mr. D, when this contract is put out-
I think it's gone.
Okay, well, if this contract's put out for the meters, can we make sure it's actually put out for bid and not the same contractor the city hires for everything? And then why are civilians and the police department working in detective bureaus calling and checking on people's cases and not detectives? People that are hired in, in civilian jobs? Not through social, uh, not through, uh, civil services? Can I get an answer on that question also? Roger, or anybody?
Oh, yeah, if you could just send me an email with your questions, I will forward it, I'm not aware of what you're talking about, I don't know who's passing the information to you, um, so we just have to verify, please identify who's sending you the information.
Will do.
Guys, you got 32 seconds, sure. 24 seconds.
No, that's it, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. You want to speak as a resident?
Yeah, I checked with city of Dearborn, they only have two dogs, not the three, and they are larger than us, and they have a lot more police officers, so I, I hope that we look into that, if we really need the three dogs and three officers.
Well, it's paid for by grants, I believe, not by the city.
I understand.
However, the, the, the three dogs, obviously, there's different shifts and different workload, so, and then different days and schedules, but that's all I know.
Even if it is paid by grant, you still taking the three cars away because you have to dedicate the three cars for the three dogs. And you taking the three officers-
Think if the dogs are on patrol, I don't-
Okay, but just out of fairness, Roger, let's let the police department answer, if it's a councilman's question, and obviously it's, there are discrepancies, they can answer a resident's question. Because I, I honestly, I don't think it's fair for you to be able to answer it, because that's not, neither can I, obviously. Okay, next up, city's street name, please.
Uh, Gary Myatki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to speak quickly, I wasn't expecting to come. Okay, uh, first of all, I just wanted to applaud, uh, various people, including the council as a body, uh, for taking some very important steps towards checks and balances, transparency, and, uh, accountability. Uh, first of all, Councilman Abdalhaq's motion being adopted in certain form, Councilman Maad's, uh, motion being adopted, these are important steps towards transparency, there are some things that need to be done with regard to the motion from Councilman Abdalhaq, it should be an ordinance, and some other issues need to be addressed, but these are important steps. Councilman Wenzel, you have my kudos for basically saying something that needs to be taken into account. You, as a body, need to make sure that you are respected. If someone is going to end up speaking out of turn, they should not be speaking out of turn, they should be gavelled down, and there should be a point of order made. City Treasurer Hicks Clayton, thank you for basically standing up and doing your institutional role and informing the council of what they needed to be informed of. Councilman-elect Saab- Councilman-elect Saab, thank you for raising these important issues with respect to the police department. And I want to end up, I was contacted by someone, I wasn't intending to come here today, but apparently there was some reference that was made with respect to things that I purportedly said in the past. If anyone says that I said anything other than that you can adopt an ordinance allowing you to control the bidding process, that is incorrect, and it is inconsistent with the language of the city charter, which, Section 9.1, the city shall enact an ordinance, which may be amended from time to time by the city council with respect to setting up competitive bidding. So you have this authority, and you have this authority more broadly as well. I do have to correct something that Councilman Abdul Haq ended up saying, and I think that this is important, which is that if you are going to end up going into the route of having your own council, it should be done as a special legal council, which is specifically provided for under the city charter, under Section 5.13 of the charter, it has been done in the past, as recently as with Mr. Schenk and his firm, and it does not require any sort of involvement by the corporation council. And in this situation where you're concerned about independence, that's the way it should be done, and I appreciate your time, and again, thank you for doing what you need to do to make sure we have checks and balances, transparency, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up? City's street name, please.
Margaret King, Mafir Street. Thank you again, Mo, for bringing up Joey. Not this meeting, but the last meeting, I was hoping to hear an update, still have not heard an update. This is driving me crazy. I have gotten compliments on how patient I have been with this. It's been over 365 days since Joey's passing. All we have done is crosswalk paint. I, as a close friend of the family with Katie and the rest of her family, am just heartbroken that my very own city that I have lived in for 36-plus years now is treating children like this. I want everybody in this room currently and watching on Zoom to put yourself in our shoes. What would you think about the city that you grew up in, that you reside in? How would you feel if you lost a child? I'm gonna use the word neglect, because I feel that way right now. That's my emotions. I have waited a year, and I'm still waiting a year. Am I gonna have to wait another year? How long is it gonna take? I'm trying my hardest, I'm shaking, because I want change and I expect it. When I came to this podium over a year ago, and I'm still here. No updates, no nothing. It's ridiculous.
I'm so sorry.
It's not just you, Mo. But that's what I have to say. Sorry I had my emotions, but I'm passionate, and it's been a year, and I'm still here. Thanks, guys.
Council chair.
Awesome.
Mayor, can we get an update, maybe on something that we're gonna move forward, maybe tomorrow, please? Hang on one second.
Is there a difference between the black and the purple?
No, no, they're all the same. This is probably month and a half, two months overdue, but the last few meetings-
Are you starting right now? I'm hanging on one second. Council chair? Wanna start this thing?
Yeah, let's make sure all of them have been passed over. Okay, go ahead. Wait one second.
If we can just look at it for a second.
Yeah, give us, wait, wait before we start.
Go right ahead.
Because when you, you guys don't get us stuff ahead of time, we don't know-
I wanted to drop it off, and I was even considering seeing if it could be put on the agenda, because it's gonna go way over three minutes, but I'll do my best. I said I wasn't gonna let this issue go, and that's it.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I want to start by apologizing-
City's street name, please.
Tony Camilleri Midway.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights. First, I want to start by apologizing to council, and everyone at this meeting, at the last meeting, and everyone on Zoom for being on the phone, and I was, it was brought to my attention. There was a woman speaking, and I didn't want to get up and walk out to be rude as she was talking. So I thought by speaking low, I could kind of sidestep the issue, but apparently that, again, was one of the wrong moves or a wrong decision, and I was not aware that I was being told to get off the phone. So for that, and I did apologize after last meeting, but I wanted to put that up front and center now.
We're good.
That's done, that's over with. Second of all, I said that I wasn't gonna let this issue about the golf course, or excuse me, the banquet center at the golf course, go on the hazardous construction from day one. Those photos are just a few of the hundreds and hundreds that I have that will be put on my Facebook page in the next month, which would be Anthony Camilleri. It does show the hazardous conditions, it does show one there, I know it's a city meeting, but you pretty much know what I'm talking about on one photo that's in there, that, let's put it this way, it has been performed inside that building, and that's what was left behind, okay? And that's where I'm gonna leave it, and I've got text messages to prove it. The back, three, four pages of that booklet pertain to the gas station at Michigan and Gully that's been vacant for maybe 20 years, okay? And the blight that has been occurred by, which I call the realtor Sam Jafar, who, no disrespect, but is your brother-in-law.
No disrespect at all.
And hopefully you can do something more for the residents in the city than you could do with your brother-in-law to clean up the blight on that building for the last 20 years. And it's no disrespect to you, but that's the way-
Just for full disclosure, any realtor that has a property listed is not responsible for keeping it clean, so-
Who does?
The owner. The owner.
Then that would be the city or the realtors. I'm sure he's getting paid.
No, it could be the city or the owner, but I just-
Now it's sold, but it wasn't 20 years ago.
I just, I just want to make a few things, and Sam Jafar, honorable person in my family.
Well, I met him when I, four, five years ago, when I ran for office, your sister as well.
And I just want to make something clear, I mean, when you say things like, you know, do something like hold your brother-in-law accountable, at the end of the day, he's a grown man who's 55 years old.
But you're also city council.
Again, this is, this is something that's gonna come through ordinance and through this administration. I would never favoritize my brother-in-law or a resident or anybody for that matter, just want to make that clear.
Did you, you didn't though, as council, what, two years you've been here, a year?
Three years.
I'm not gonna argue this, I said no disrespect.
Yeah.
But anyways, I am still owed $9,100 from Osama Asa for the work I did at the golf course.
Time is over. No, he's got 30, he's got 30-
I still have 30 seconds, according to Mo.
Go, 41 seconds.
$1,100 worth of tools stolen, you guys authorized the invoice for Schenk, who did work at the golf, at city building and for the city, at the golf course, to get the liquor license, I believe I should be paid as well. My opinion, Osama Asa is a con artist, a liar, and a thief.
Okay, 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 sir, sir, thank you.
That's where I leave it, and most likely this will be my last meeting.
Can't make accusations like that, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right.
Take out on the report there. You mind your own business?
Okay, anything else? Any other comments in, hey, hey, come on. Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and go to Zoom. On Zoom, we have Director of Ordinance, Bill Dishrun, I assume?
Can you hear me, council chair?
Hello, go ahead.
How you doing this evening, sir?
Good, hanging in there.
Good to hear. Hopefully everybody had a good holiday. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to comment really quick, Mr. Camilleri made mention of the gas station on the corner there, I'm not sure, of Michigan Avenue and Beach Daily, or I'm sorry, Michigan Avenue and Gully.
Only Michigan Avenue.
Yes. I'm not sure when the last time you went by there, but they're working on that, and it actually looks pretty okay right now, so I'm not sure when the last time he went by there was, but it looks, it looks better and they're working on it, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to share that information, that's all I got for now, sir.
Thank you very much, Director.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Can I make the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman McBryer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.